Public meeting and ask that, actually, I should ask, do we have a pastor this morning? We do. Welcome. I'm gonna ask all to rise for invocation and and to please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance to the United States of America and the Texas flag.
Dylan Thomas called it "The force that through the green fuse drives the flower." Whatever your beliefs, may my prayer this morning ring true. Let us pray. In this century and in any century, our deepest hope, our most tender prayer is that we learn to listen. May we listen to one another in openness and mercy. May we listen to plants and animals in wonder and respect. May we listen to our own hearts in love and forgiveness. May we listen in quietness and in awe. And in this listening, which is boundless in its beauty, may we find the wisdom to cooperate with a healing spirit, a divine spirit who beckons us into peace and community and creativity. We do not ask for a perfect world, but we do ask for a better world. We ask for deep listening. Amen and amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag, our alleged allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
For the clerk, the time is 8:42 a.m. And I would note as well that we are in the Nuaces County Courthouse, third floor, Nuaces County Commissioners' courtroom. It's September 14th, 2022. And all commissioners, well, actually, he just walked out, but I know he is here. All commissioners are present, as well as, obviously, myself, and therefore, I do certify as the presiding officer that a quorum has been established. I'll move now to the announcement on disclosures of conflicts of interest. Any conflicts of interest or appearance of conflict of interest with items on this agenda shall be declared at this time. Members with conflicts will refrain from voting and are asked to refrain from discussion on such items. Conflicts discovered later in the meeting shall be disclosed at this time. Are there any conflicts to reveal? Okay, thank you. Now we'll move to Rebecca Ramidis, who will give us a safety briefing. I'd ask that you give her your attention.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Judge, commissioners, and attendees, our safety briefing for today, September 14th, is being held in the Nuaces County Commissioners' courtroom. The restrooms are located on the right-hand side of the third-floor atrium, past the Human Resources Office. There is a fire extinguisher located at the rear of the courtroom, and also five additional fire extinguishers located throughout the atrium area. Bleed control stations are on every floor. In the event of a cardiac emergency, an AED is located on the right wall next to the Human Resources Office. Participant for today who will be responsible for dialing 911 will be connie. In the event of evacuation, our aggress route will be slowly down the atrium stairs, proceeding out the doors located on the La Pan Street side of the courthouse and assembled in the parking lot across the street. It is important to stay together. Should there be a need to shelter in place, depending upon the severity of the shelter in place, the courtroom double doors will be secured and remain secure until given further instructions from the Nuaces County Sheriff's Office or other law enforcement agencies. And that is our safety.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. At this time, I'll move to public comment, and I do have a few here signed up in the courtroom, but also would ask that if anybody online wishes to make public comment, all we need is your virtual hand, the icon of the hand, to be raised, and we will call on you at the appropriate time. For those of you that have joined us in the courtroom, we welcome you to make public comment and ask that you take the podium when I call your name. There's a three-minute digital clock. It's just to help you keep time. It'll be in front of you. That's the policy that we have here in court. Try never to cut anybody off. Just keep thoughtful reminder about the respectfulness to make sure everybody has a chance to make their commentary. And with that, I'll also remind you that this is a time where we don't engage back, but I promise you, we're listening very closely in that beautiful words by our pastor, "listening." We're gonna listen very closely, and if there is an agenda item that relates to your comment, rest assured, we will be, you know, addressing it at that time. So with that, we'll begin, and the first person I have is, and I'm gonna try, is it Egnetowski? Very nice. Mr. Greg Egnetowski, welcome. Yes, sir.
So, can you guys hear me all right?
I'm gonna ask that you, it is a funny microphone, but see if you can move it up. Will that, much better, much better, sir.
Okay, awesome. Well, good morning, Judge and Commissioners. Thank you.
I would just ask and inform the, just please keep the comments very general and nothing specific about any bidding processes should be disclosed during this time.
Okay.
Yes.
A good precaution.
Thank you very much, and I will make sure I do that. Again, I appreciate you for letting me say a few words. I will keep it brief. My name's Greg Egnetowski. I'm from Workday. I live here in Texas. My address is 2704 Grimes Ranch Road, a little bit north of the county, up near Austin. But I've been working with the county on the ERP modernization project that is on the agenda today for quite some time, and wanna share a few important topics that I think should be important for the court's consideration. First, I wanna express my gratitude and say thank you in person for the opportunity to participate in this important and strategic project, and it's a long-term investment that the county is looking at making, and it's typically only evaluated every 10 to 15 years. It touches everybody, including leadership, employees, and, most importantly, the constituents of this great county. Choosing the right partner is critical for success. Last week, I did make a few public comments on the four areas that we typically see organizations like Nuaces County focus on in these types of evaluations. First is the functional and technical requirements, which I won't go too deep into. I think they speak for themselves. The value or return on investment, references, references are extremely important, as their experience will be your experience, and I hope that that's something that's taken into consideration as you continue to evaluate this project. And, you know, we're really proud of what we provide and what we offer and what we've seen with other cities, states, and counties across the U.S., proud of our 97% customer satisfaction rate, and hope that, again, as you evaluate this critical project for the county, you think about functionality, technical security requirements, references, the value that the county will get, and ultimately the cost. Hope you find this useful. Thank you for your time, and we wish the county the best. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Next, we have, is it Ted Moffett?
Morris.
Morris. I try my best to read the writing. I apologize. Welcome, Mr. Morris.
Thank you. Yes, my name is Ted Morris. Sorry, my mother told me that I should've been a doctor with my writing. I live on the island, 15869 Punta Zapatillo. It's about a mile from Bob Hall Pier, so that's what I would like to address today, is some thoughts on that. I know there's been some back and forth and investigation of the best way to go about this for our county, and I'd like to share some of my opinions with you. I have attended some of the parks boards meetings, and there's been lengthy discussions there, and I believe that they've come out of, with their recommendation, unanimous decision, I might say. But here's some of my thoughts on this. I understand that the foundation is, of the existing structure is engineered in such a way that it will support a second floor. I am pro-second floor. That's my stance for many different reasons. In addition, no additional footprint is needed, which would delay the construction due to red tape permitting. There would be an initial permitting. I'm gonna speed through some of this because my time is dwindling. There are many viable reasons for approving the build of the second story. Second story will be beneficial to the island because there are limited venues with the closing of the Schlitterbahn facility. This will also, by having the second build, will also promote and bolster tourism for events such as music events, destination weddings, charitable fundraising events, community club meetings, and the list goes on. It will also become a landmark like no other along the area of the Gulf Coast. We live on the longest barrier island in the U.S., possibly the world, and what better beautiful building to have right there for all the visitors and as well as the Nuaces County citizens to appreciate. I understand that the pier was approved for a $9 million build-out. I also understand that the second floor can be built for an additional $2 million, and that the dollars are there. The options, as well, I understand it by attending a parks meeting, is to add an additional single floor, stay on the single floor for the $2 million for about a little over 2,000 square foot. That same $2 million to go up with a second floor would give double that. I believe the number is like 50 to 50, a little over 5,000 square foot. On the flip side, I can't think of a reason not to build the second floor, second story. So please, as a Commissioners' Court, I'm asking you to listen to the Parks Board, their research and recommendation on this, and go with the second floor. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Morris. Next, we'll have Ms. Sandy Graves.
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners. At the risk of repeating what has already been said, again, my name is Sandy Graves. I live on the island 15802 Gypsy, and I am a half a mile straight shot to the beach. And I can hear the sea every morning. It's wonderful. I'm here to speak for Bob Hall Pier and for the second floor of the restaurant. As Mr. Morris already said, the $2 million, we would get double the space going up as opposed to expanding. You know, for the life of me, I can't imagine why anybody would want to spend the same amount of money for less space. Just doesn't make sense. The island needs a venue, a place where we can have our events, La Pasada, Barefoot, Mardi Gras, et cetera. Again, we would be a destination place for weddings, private parties. People from all over would come. Let me see what else. And this wouldn't be just tourist season. It would be year-round. And I'd like to speak on behalf of Ms. Nardum. She's proven herself. She has turned Michael Mays into a success in a short amount of time. And if she says that she can make the second floor a success, she can do that. And that's pretty much about it. And I would ask that you guys put this on the next agenda so we can move forward with that, and please consider following the Parks Board's decision. And, oh, I just wanna mention one more thing. Return on investment, I know that's very important to everyone. And I believe that the second floor would be more of a return of investment than the per-rod fee that you charge going on to the pier. So, thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to, I like to do this where I go online and then come back to the courtroom. Seems to keep it equitable. So I'll call on Mr. Steve Bonner at this time. Ask you to unmute.
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners. I just wanted to introduce myself as Steve Bonner. I'm here available as a resource and to answer any questions that you might have on item number three on your agenda this morning. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Commissioner Hernandez, you signed up, but not on any item.
No, ma'am. I just want to state. My name is Commissioner Robert Hernandez. I have been a Commissioner for precinct one for about a year and nine months. When I was elected to, I took an oath to try and do what is right for the people of this county. I have found it difficult to fulfill my duties because of interference in my precinct. In the beginning, I had the Hazel Basin Dog Park, which I am still dealing with, to the renovations of the Hilltop Center, to dealing with the illegal driveway along County Road 52, which would have already been removed, the epic road construction from County Road 48 connected to Pecos Lane. All these projects are in my precinct. There are three other Commissioners who sit in this court and do not see much interference in their precincts. I would like to, I would like the opportunity to complete these projects, as I have intended to do with so much pushback from the county judge as Commissioner of this above-mentioned project. I would like to have the direction from the Public Works Director that knows my precinct better and is in charge of all these projects. These projects proceed with the approval of the Commissioners' Court, but I depend on the Public Works Director, Mr. Juan Pimentel, and Jerry Garcia to guide me, since they are the experts in drainage and roads. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. We've got next, is it Alda Garcia? Yes, was I close?
Hilda.
Hilda, okay. I'm gonna have to improve these dollar store glasses.
It's our, my handwriting, I'm sorry. Good morning, Judge, and good morning, Commissioners. My name is Hilda Garcia. I live on the island 145 East Cabana. There's a whole group of us that are here this morning to support, we all showed up this morning, to support the second story of the restaurant at Bob Hall Pier. I'm not gonna reiterate and repeat what everybody has said, but I'm hoping it'll be on the agenda, the next agenda. We thought it wasn't gonna be on the agenda today. It's not. But it's no longer a want. It has become a need for us. So we do not have a place, a public place, like the, you know, City of Corpus Christi does for events. We have to hold our events at restaurants. So I hope that you guys will put it on the agenda and support the Parks Board. And we have, Patty will show you, we've got petitions, signatures, and like I said, it has become a need. It's no longer a want for us. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Patty Baker.
Good morning. My name is Patty Baker. I also live on the island. I'm at 15341 Tortuga Court. And again, I'm part of this group to support May and hopefully place this on the agenda for the next meeting, get this voted on so we can start the process to have this beautiful place, to have events for the future. There were also, in a short period of time, a grassroots effort where petitions were, names were collected. We have over 600, and this was just in a very short period of time, and it just of the community for the second floor, so we can use it for events in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. May Mendoza.
Sure, you can give it to the court administrator.
Thank you.
Good morning, Judge, County Commissioners. As you know, my name is May Mendoza. Back to my maiden name. Basically, what I handed y'all is, I always stay in close contact with the CBB, just because when we were open, we always worked closely with them, especially with conventions, and there are so many exciting things going on. And when I spoke yesterday to Meredith Darden, she was telling me that there was just this project that was completed by Texas A&amp;M Corpus Christi University students during their summer class for the marketing class 3315. And if you go through it, you'll see, you know, basically, the students that were on there, basically what they did is they did a survey, and they interviewed 93 visitors that were visiting Corpus Christi the week, the third week of July. They went to the beaches, not only on White Cap on the island, but they also went on North Beach. And if you turn to page eight, something I found very interesting, I kinda marked the tabs by folding them over. Which of the following types of vendors or amenities would you like to see on the beach? Lounging equipment and rentals, which we will be doing at Michael Mays. Also, they like desserts and snacks, which they can get from our gift shop, lunch and dinner foods, which we provide at the restaurant, and then beer and liquor, which, you know, people always usually like to have a drink. We're not a bar. We are a restaurant, but we do sell alcohol. I know that's been mentioned before about county facilities having it, even though we have the fairgrounds that sells alcohol as well for their events. If you move on to page 29, if you go through it, it'll do the breakdown and the age groups. It's pretty interesting. So I thought maybe y'all would like a copy of it. I know that Brett Oding presented this yesterday at city council. But if you go to page 29, in addition to what is currently available, what type of offerings would you like to find in Corpus Christi? Restaurants with seafood, which we do, was number one, and of course, bars. We're not a bar, but we do sell alcohol. But bars, they like to see that available. And then, of course, food trucks are pretty popular. Highlights, this is where I think it's important, and it was highlighted in their survey. They would like more waterfront restaurants. Well, we're one. We do have that one. But the other thing is, within walking distance from hotels and beaches, which we are also that. If you go to the next page, this is what we can offer with the second floor, because we will have the room with over 5,000 square feet. So basically, imagine, basically going to, goodness gracious, my mind is just going blank. I'll go back to it. But in addition, what they're currently available, what type of offerings would you like in Corpus Christi? Concerts, we can do live music there. Beachfront bars, again, we're a beachfront restaurant bar. And then overall, visitors want more outdoor entertainment, and we can give them with that, with the extra room. So I thought it would be on the agenda. I hope it'll be on the agenda next time, and support what the Park Board's findings were in their support of having the second floor versus the first floor, and use the $2 million that you already have allocated for a bigger restaurant, and use it towards the second floor instead. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll call on Ms. Lisa O'Connor online and just ask to unmute.
Thank you, Judge. Good morning, Judge, and good morning, Commissioners. Many of you know me in the community. I'm in sales. I live in Corpus Christi now downtown at 201 South Chaparral, here in Corpus Christi, and I work downtown. I have been part of this community since 2008, but before that, I've always lived in Nuaces County. And yes, I'm here to speak on behalf of Bob Hall Pier, and I say the pier as a whole, even though the restaurant is a major part of the revenue of that, and we've already heard the cause for supporting that, so I'm not gonna repeat it. But what it means to me is memories, because I have been going to that pier since I was a child with my father and fishing. So we have to encompass, how is this gonna improve? And I think we're losing that to our neighboring communities in Port Aransas, because it's taken so long for us to make decisions regarding repairing the pier. And they're saying that it won't be until mid-2023 until this is completed, but I'm concerned about that, because we still don't have it on the agenda here. I know there's been a lot of debate, but the reality is, is we're losing revenue and losing the opportunities for people that could be having venues and fundraisers. Not just about birthdays and anniversaries. I personally celebrated my 50th birthday there, and I have plans to celebrate a future big birthday there as well. But it's more important than that. It's more about how it's impacting our community, impacting our visitation of the beach, because there's not that much for people to do when they come in. And even though I've never lived in Corpus until now, I always made it one of the places I went to, and it still has a memory for me, for a very dear, close friend who passed away in January, who wanted to have her celebration of life there, and she didn't get to because of the destruction of the pier, and she passed away. So there is gonna be a memorial for her, and that's another big part for me personally. So just knowing that the memories and the ties are there with this pier, it's more than just a pier. It's more than just a restaurant. It's more than just a place to fish. It's very much a part of our lives. And I think for the time this morning, I didn't mean to get emotional, but I can't help it when she was only 46. So I apologize for that. And it is coming up for breast cancer awareness, which is why I'm wearing pink. So thank you for your time this morning.
Thank you. Thank you very much. It was very heartfelt. Carol Rettmeyer.
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners.
Good morning.
First, I wanted to thank you and commend you for your work you do in animal care. As co-founder of Star Group, South Texas Animal Rescue, we are really thrilled that you have such a terrific volunteer who's been with you for a really long time, and I just wanted to speak her praises. And that was it. I know you hear a lot of negative things. I just wanna tell you some very positive. You have a very active, wonderful volunteer who's been with you for many years, Lisa Bachhold, and it's up on, and one of your items will be a returning advisory committee member, and I just wanted to commend you for having such strong people and who really care. And thank you for all you do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And that concludes my list here, but I always ask if there is anybody else that needs to sign up?
I'd like to sign up, Judge.
Okay. On which subject?
On the pier. On the pier.
On the pier.
Just general, I guess.
Go ahead.
You know, I support the restaurant at the pier. I've always supported the restaurant. I've never supported, to begin with, some of you don't know how it all got started, but it got started very illegally. It was built illegally. You know, it was called a concession stand, and really, they were building a restaurant and a bar. And we got in trouble with the Department of Justice, so we had to pay for that. We had to build a one in Caldwell Pier to the same likings as the one over here in this other pier, because that was our agreement with the Department of Justice. When we're building this, it was always a concession stand. It was never a restaurant and bar. So I don't know there's a need for alcohol or none, but you know, I don't mind a restaurant. I think there's a need for a restaurant, and I support a restaurant. I don't support a bar, and I don't support the second tier. You know, we're in a hurricane area. If something happens in the second floor, it's probably the first to go. And I just hope nobody gets hurt in the second tier, because if you're gonna sell alcohol, you know, and you're gonna have weddings, you're gonna have that, you know, the most people with problems, it's always at weddings. They argue, and, you know, they have this, and hopefully, nobody falls into the water and drinks, drowns. That is my worry, you know? Maybe the Parks and Wildlife, and maybe the GLO, and maybe the Parks Board doesn't worry about that. But I would hold everybody accountable for that if something was to happen, you know, 'cause, and even the county, you know? I don't know that we actually sell any kind of alcohol in county properties. So, and this is really more county property than the fairgrounds. The fairgrounds is owned, is run by another company, and so is the restaurant. But we build the restaurant. This company didn't build the restaurant. We build the restaurant with taxpayers' money. I'm just gonna tell you now that, you know, while I support a restaurant, I just don't support the second tier, and I don't support the bar. So, and hopefully, nothing happens in the future. But I want, you know, I will discuss it more when it comes up, and I'll make it part of the record that, you know, that people should be held accountable. the record that, you know, that people should be held accountable if something does happen. Hopefully not. So thank you.
Okay. Are there any other folks that would like to sign up for public comment? Okay, how about online? Ladies, looks like we're clear, good to go. So I'll continue with our agenda this morning, and just, I, whenever, you can take that back and pass that to the clerk. But I do have a question for you. I understand that the county clerk could not join us. Is she asking us to pass on the public hearing?
No.
You've got it. Just wanted to double-check. All right. In that case...
You mean the district clerk? Oh, the Oasis County clerk.
The county clerk, sir.
My bad. You're right.
Yeah.
Sorry.
Okay. So at this time, I am announcing that we will go into a public hearing. This public hearing is to conduct pursuant to Section 118.025 of the Texas Local Government Code, a plan for the preservation and restoration of the Oasis County Clerk's record archives. And so I will turn to Lorenzo and ask him to lead us in this discussion, which is an important one, and is also one that happens every year.
Yes. My name is Lorenzo Hernandez. I'm with the County Clerk's Office. And the plan presented to the court will allow the county to, the county clerk to restore and fully preserve permanent and historical documents, as well as improved service to the public through remote access and through, you know, for electronic records. Basically, do you all have the packets that were presented from CO File?
The one from last time?
No, 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 this year. This year.
Okay, so let me...
I've got a packet from the district clerk.
And where's Michael? Is he here on this? Because we, I don't have a problem with your concept. And I thought we tried to say we were going to get away from these sole source deals and bid things out. So I'm trying to figure out how we got back to this spot. And my bad, I should have called Karen in advance. I didn't note that this was...
So this is the county clerk, Kara Sands, plan. She has been working on this, and why don't we let Lorenzo finish, and then you can ask your question? But this is really just the plan that already exists? That's in, her preservation already exists?
Yeah.
Okay? I mean, this is, this is not, I don't think, a new procurement or a new concept. It's that it's required under the law to pass a preservation plan each and every year, and this is who she does business with.
Correct. And the only reason...
This is just for the existing.
Yeah, the only reason we have to present it to the court for y'all's approval is because, for the $10 archive fee. That $10 archive fee goes through it, and we cannot collect on that $10 archive fee unless we present a plan to you. And the plan is...
So, this is the, okay, and that makes sense. And I'm sorry, I don't have that in my packets, so...
And I believe she's been using, you know, this company for 16 years.
Okay.
Okay? I might be wrong. It could be 18 years.
But is that in your contract?
No, no, not at all.
No, this is not. So just, if you read the document, it's about a plan, and it's about the annual plan for the $10. And if she doesn't have this, then she cannot raise the revenue that she needs for what we need as the preservation and record keeping.
I got you. That makes sense.
Okay. All right, Lorenzo, we'll let you continue.
Well, that's basically...
That's it, I think.
Yeah, that's basically it.
That's why I jumped in. He said, I think he was done.
Okay. So I'll make an opportunity for anyone to ask any questions of Lorenzo regarding the plan. Lorenzo, is the plan, the same plan as we've had last year?
Basically, but we're also going to start including, beginning of the school records. We haven't touched the school records, but that's included now. And we're going to go forward with that.
Some of the dollars will be utilized for the school records. That part is what we call, you know, different than last year.
That's correct.
All right. And in that case, Lorenzo, this is just a public hearing, so that's really all we need, is the background and to have an opportunity to ask you. Any issues here, Dale, that we need to talk about?
We've been doing this, like you said, at least the last 10 to 15 years. We have a special revenue fund to account for the funds. As Lorenzo said, the county clerk cannot assess this fee or collect this fee without this plan being approved by court. This is, as Lorenzo said, this is the records of the county clerk, including the school records that you just mentioned.
Okay.
Judge, I'd move...
Well, in this case, we're just going to close the public hearing. It's just a public hearing. If there's no other questions, I will move on. Commissioners, are there any other questions? Okay. I will just, at this time, for the record, and Lorenzo, I would call it 9:10 when I opened that public hearing. I looked at the clock. It was about 9:10. And now I'm calling it at 9:15, the closing of this public hearing and the opening of our, reconvening of our regular meeting, 9:16 a.m. And so I'll move to H1, Commissioners, in recognition of the 2022 inductees into the WB Ray, our alma mater, Commissioner Chesney, Modus, and myself, WB Ray High School Athletic Hall of Fame, and ask that you turn your attention to Belinda, who will read for us.
Whereas Howard Bouchong, Pat Rogers, J.J. Trujillo, Daniel Santorelli, and the 1959 WB Ray State Championship Football Team will be included into the WB Ray High School Athletic Hall of Fame on September 22, 2022, for their outstanding athletic accomplishments. Whereas Mr. Howard Bouchong, Ray High School Class of 1971, had a successful baseball career that included being a part of the University of Texas Baseball Team in 1975. Bouchong then became an incredibly successful high school and college-level baseball coach, including appearances at the Southland Conference Tournament, and he led the Southwest Texas team to their first-ever division championship in 1997. Mr. Pat Rogers, Ray High School Class of 1968, has been selected as an inductee into the Ray Athletic Hall of Fame for his incredible participation and accomplishments at WB Ray. Rogers' accomplishments include having outstanding statistics as a high school football athlete, as well as furthering his career at Texas Tech University. Rogers then went on to pursue law school and now presides as an Assistant Attorney General of Texas. Mr. J.J. Trujillo, Ray High School Class of 1994, was on the varsity baseball team from 1992 to 1994. During this time, he also gained the titles of First Team All District, Second Team All District, Inaugural High School All-Star Team, Inaugural Game at Nolan Ryan Field, FCA Vice President, and he graduated with honors. Trujillo went on to play baseball at Shriners College, Laredo Community College, and Dallas Baptist University. Trujillo was also a part of the 1999 Frontier League All-Star Team with the Johnston Johnnies, as well as received a contract with the San Diego Padres Minor League Team. Mr. Daniel Santorelli, Ray High School Class of 2008, was an incredible student-athlete in which he was a three-year letterman in baseball, golf, and two-year letterman in football. Santorelli was the first Ray Texan to qualify for the state, for the state golf tournament as an individual. He was part of the top five-ranked baseball team in his sophomore year and helped lead the Texans to the state playoff appearance in 2006, 2007, 2008, and district championship in 2008. Whereas in 1959, WB Ray State Champion Football Team is an inductee for the WA Ray Athletic Hall of Fame because of their accomplishments. Head Coach Bill Stages said, "The 1959 Ray Football Team will be remembered as one of the greatest teams in Texas football history. The team included four All-Star players, Jim Vesselman, Mike Kesley, Ben House, and Jerry Rogers, an MVP in the state championship game, Max Durdum, and an honorable mention All-State Players. The 1959 State Championship Football Team will be remembered for their skills, resiliency, and dedication that was instilled through their coach and athletic career at WB Ray High School. More than half of the team members were National Merit Scholars. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Commissioners Court of Oasis County, hereby recognizes the 2021-2022 inductees in the WB Ray High School Athletic Hall of Fame on their accomplishments and dedication to Ray High School."
So moved, Judge.
I'll second. With the motion, a second. Is there anybody here representing the group here today? No, because they're not.
No, ma'am, I'm just going to get them the resolutions. They're all coming in for the event.
They're all coming in for the event.
Well, some of them are, I got them anyway.
Yeah. Well, Commissioner, do you want to say anything?
I was just going to say, you know, this is an outstanding group of athletes and people, and many of them we know and have known, and it's always an honor to do this for our alma mater. And I appreciate them asking me to put this on, and I don't mean to jump into Commissioner Modus's precinct, but it's just one of those things that friends of mine who are running it asked me to do it, and that's, I put it on the agenda and got it done. So it's a great, great group, a great tribute, and I'll get a copy of these signed resolutions to all of them.
Well, that's wonderful. And of course, for those of us that went to Ray High School, the name Bouchong rings lots of bells when it comes to great athletics and great students.
Lot of Bouchong.
Including my classmate, Mickey Bouchong, who's a relative here, and also Daniel Santorelli. And for the record, and I hope you're watching, Daniel, it must have been all those great lunches I gave you every day in high school, because Daniel ate at my house at least three days a week. And just a fantastic family. And of course, his aunt was our tennis coach, Brent, Coach Wilson. So, anyway, wonderful inductees. WB Ray has great, honored Texan traditions, and it's wonderful to see that we're honoring the class of 59. Commissioner Modus?
Yes, I'm glad we're able to do it this week, since we're off next week. And next week is homecoming for WB Ray and also some other schools in the area. But they always do a big ceremony recognizing their Hall of Fame for athletics. And of course, each of these individuals are recognized for not only athletics, but academics and success in the community as well. So it's always an honor and privilege to be able to recognize fellow Ray Texans. And yes, as Commissioner mentioned, it's there in Precinct 3, and where I have a daughter who graduated from there earlier this year, and a son who is a sophomore. So we're always excited to be able to recognize all the schools, but especially, it's a little bit extra special when it's WB Ray. So congratulations to all these individuals, and look forward to celebrating them with them next week at the big Ray Miller game next Friday at Buck Stadium. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'll just pass these up whenever you're ready to the clerk. You can attest those. We'll have them ready for Commissioner for next week. Now we'll move to the recognition of September 12 to the 16th as being the National Disability Voter Registration Week. And I'll also turn to Belinda. Yes, oh, all those in favor signify by saying aye on WB Ray.
Aye.
All right. Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion passes overwhelmingly. All right. Belinda, pardon the interruption. National Disability Voter Registration Week.
Whereas in September, people with disabilities, their families and supporters, celebrate the anniversary of the American with Disabilities Act. And whereas there are over 50 million people with disabilities of all ages living in communities throughout the United States, with nearly 7,000 adults in Texas. And whereas the disability community has a critical interest in policies enacted at local, state, and national levels that affect the integration of people with disabilities, young and old, into our communities. And whereas involving the disability community in influencing public policies is essential if these policies are to meet the real needs of people with disabilities to live in the community. And voting is one way for the disability community to exert their influence at local, state, and national elections. And whereas there are multiple efforts to develop disability coalitions around the issue of voting. And whereas "Reb Up America, Register, Educate, Vote, Use Your Power" is a national effort to encourage local and/or state disability community voting coalitions and members of the National Disability Rights Community are organizing a National Disability Voter Registration Week, September 12 to 16, 2022. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Commissioners Court of Oasis County, herein supports the growing involvement of the disability community in the political process, and designates the week of September 12 to September 16, 2022, as National Disability Voter Registration Week in Oasis County.
Thank you, Belinda. I'll make the motion for this recognition, which is so important. And there is a second. Are there any discussion here? No. Other than, besides the voter registration, just a quick comment. We have curbside voting for people who have special needs and disabilities and always grateful for that service. If you want to hear more about that, contact the County Clerk's Office. And also, of course, we have the ability, it's being echoed here, that we have Regional Transportation Authority, our RTA, who often gets in the forefront of the public messaging on this, but they have free rides. And of course, all our RTA are accessible for folks living with physical disabilities. And if there's no other commentary here, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. Okay. And now we'll move to item number three, and it's in recognition of September 14, 2022, as being our Star Spangled Banner Day.
Whereas the Star Spangled Banner, our national anthem, was written during the War of 1812. And whereas by the dawn's early light on September 14, 1814, Francis Scott Key saw the American flag flying over Fort McHenry, signifying an American victory, and was inspired to write the words of the Star Spangled Banner. And whereas millions of Americans treasure and respect the words and the music of the Star Spangled Banner, which became our national anthem on March 3, 1931, when President Herbert Hoover signed Public Law 71823. And whereas sporting and public events begin with the singing or playing of the national anthem as a reaffirmation of our patriotism and love of this country. And whereas the National Society of United States Daughters of 1812, and the Old Bayview Chapter 479 of the Texas Society of United States Daughters of 1812, calls for a day to observe the historical significance of the Star Spangled Banner and to celebrate the words that Francis Scott Key penned in 1814. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Commissioners Court of Oasis County does hereby proclaim September 14 as Star Spangled Banner Day, and urges all citizens to recognize and celebrate the anniversary of the birth of our country's national anthem.
Thank you, Belinda. I'll make the motion for such an important recognition, and we'll have Kathy Wimmer come up. And there's a second also on the floor by Commissioner Gonzalez. Kathy, what great history.
Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am. A little closer, maybe?
A little closer.
Oh, actually, Connie, it just sounds like it's been turned off. We're going to catch up with you right now. Give us a second.
I don't have a teacher voice anymore. As you get older, you lose your voice.
No, but it wasn't on, so now you're on, and we can hear you. Thank you. Good morning.
Thank you. In a different capacity this morning, I am a member of the 1812 lineage group here in Corpus Christi, the old friends, the Old Bayview Friends Chapter. And we have today with us our members. We've got Gabby Hidaka, who is our president, Jackie Parabo. She went to Carroll, not Ray.
But a lot of Parabos went to Ray. A lot of Parabos.
They certainly did. She is our vice president. And Penny Pelak, who you also know, she is our secretary, and I'm their historian. So we like to remember this day. Could we have a picture?
We would love to. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. We'd love to have a photo. And I noticed that you're wearing your red, white, and blue, so how wonderful.
And they've got anchors.
And they have anchors. Fantastic. And I'm wondering, it's coming. Lorenzo's got the papers.
I have to say that. I always told our kiddos all of them.
It's got to get signed. Okay, but we can hold it up for the photo, and then you'll wait just a moment. We'll all sign it. Thank you.
Hold, let me get that tag off. I'm sorry.
It's all right.
Yeah.
Okay. Join us, ladies. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, ladies. Thank you all very much.
Thank you very much.
Okay. I'll let it go this way, John, and then come back. All right. That was a nice way to start our morning, and so what we're going to do now is call Kathy. I'm guessing Kathy, you're here to represent?
Yes, ma'am.
On general information reports, and talk to us about the Emergency Management Office and some of the projects that are under our item I-1.
Okay. Start out with the weather temperatures. Are hovering around 91 degrees with a heat index at 98. We have high humidity and a chance for thunderstorms. We have some small storms in the Atlantic, but nothing formidable. The Keach Bryman Drought Index is a minimum 71 and a maximum 370, which is very good. The average mean is 180. So we do have some moisture depletions in a few areas of the western Oasis County, but the remainder of the county looks good. Oasis County Office of Emergency Management is sponsoring three hazmat training classes for Oasis County in the Coastal Bend region. One is going to occur in October. It is a hazmat emergency response technician training that Teaks is coming down. We requested to have these taught. They were provided to us by TIDAM for your charge through a grant that they have. So we were very lucky. We got the three classes that we requested. The other one is a hazmat first responder awareness and operations that will be in December, and then a third class will be in March of 2023. That is a mass hazard and technical decontamination class, and it is a pro-board certification, which is very good for this region. So it's offered to all first responders, and they will take place at the Annaville Fire Department Number Two. So, and it is also good for public works to attend these for any city, as well as the county, because that provides us with quick responses, well as emergency management organizations across this Coastal Bend region. We have great news. Both Pfizer and Moderna bivalent boosters are now available at all health district vaccination locations. The Pfizer bivalent booster is available to persons three years of age and above, and the Moderna bivalent booster is available for 18 years and above. DHS has updated this bivalent vaccine. They are designed to protect the original COVID-19 strain, as well as the Omicron valent variant, and the new, and the new Omicron is responsible for a large amount of the COVID cases in the past month. So we hope that people will go out and start getting this. Please note that this may be difficult to get at your physician's office, so you may want to reach out to the health district and go to those locations, as well as your larger pharmacies will have this, because this is a new vaccine that was just released in the, we just received our doses in the last few days. COVID cases are at 72,166 total. We have 39 new cases, one death. Most of the COVID is from that BA5 lineage from Omicron, because it is very highly contagious, but with our county getting lots of boosters and getting lots of vaccinations, we're doing very well. And it is flu season. Flu season is more important than ever, because it spreads, and it's particularly hard on our elderly and our children. And people 65 ages or older can request what's called a high-dose flu vaccine option from their providers or the pharmacy. Anywhere you get a vaccination, those are available. You need to protect yourself and your children based on the DSHS recommendations, and urges everyone six months and above to be vaccinated for flu. And please note that you can get COVID and the flu together.
Thank you, Kathy.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any questions for Kathy? La Palmeramal is still a location. It's still open for these vaccinations, in case that is an easy place for you to take yourself to, or your family.
As well as Robstown, ma'am.
As well as the Robstown Clinic. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. No questions for Kathy? We'll go ahead and move on. Okay. All right. So you'll look and see in the, by the way, there's no minutes, Lorenzo. I guess it was too quick of a turnaround. I'm just making that note. We'll catch them next week. Okay. Board appointments, we'll move to J-1, and you'll see that it's Oasis County Animal Services Advisory Committee up first.
Judge, I just had a
Excuse me? Yes?
Kind of a different motion I wanted to make on this. I wanted to put forth a motion that we tabled this with instruction to the county manager to do a detailed and independent analysis of the entire situation
Going on.
That's going on out there in regards to everything, and let her do those, do that, bring us back, and a recommendation on the entire system from facility to staff to board to just everything in no more than 90 days, and then bring back the appointments in regards or at that point.
Okay, I can take a motion for the tabling of the item, but I can't take a motion for all that other direction, because there's no proper notice of it. That's the only thing that I can do, because there's just, there's no notice to do any of that work or any discussion. To be honest with you, my concern is, is that September 30th, 2022, is the end of the expiration. However, as we all know, they would stay on
Correct.
As a rollover, so I would like to make that announcement that the board would stay in situ, exactly the way it is right now, if this table were to be successful. Do you concur, Commissioner Chesney?
All right, well, absolutely. Holdover laws are very clear.
Just want to make sure we're all
No question.
On the same page here.
I would ask, can I ask for
And again, we can talk about it in executive, and you could bring it back if you want to, but there's, there's just, all that's here is to approve the Animal Services Advisory Board, and, and so
The board or their members?
I'm just gonna ask you that.
Well, the vacancies, it's a, it's a, it's an opportunity to approve the reappointment of, there's four that are up. That would be Matt Stevens, Lisa Buchholz, Cynthia Winkley, and Selena Boggs. I just want to confirm, we've received letters on all of those for reappointment, and that was the expectation today. So if you're asking for it to be tabled, you can make that motion, but that's the only thing we can do at this time.
Jenny, do you not think this is related enough to be able to make direction? It's all about the, I mean, I can make it specific to the Animal Service Advisory Committee, if that makes it better, but I was trying to do it as an entire, I mean, if you want to just do it, and I can, I can then just make it succinct, or can make it specific to the advisory committee. I wanted to do everything, but I think I could at least make a motion related to anything to the advisory committee.
I believe you can do a table for 90 days, and then just have your administrative person do whatever background you would like to have in that time.
That's all I was trying to do, and I can make it more specific just to the advisory committee, Judge, but I was wanting to do it in and out. I mean, I can
I know, I know. I hear you, and what I'm saying is, is that I don't have a problem in the continuation of these, of this board, and you could still do what you needed to do, but it has to be noticed. You have to give people a chance. Otherwise, if they knew that they were going to have a review of the whole department, first of all, there's always review, right? If there's any issue that comes up, you have a court administrator, manager that has, you know, control over those department heads. That should be ongoing. Nothing that we say should ever limit or prevent a thorough review of staff, leadership, and advisory committees to bring back to us. That should be ongoing, and, and of course, I know what you're referring to, and that are some letters that were concerning about the committee's, some challenges happening in the committee, but those had already been referred with lots of time, like months and months before, to court administration.
No, Judge, they have not been, they have not been referred to her by this court, because
No, but I'm saying that she was included in the
Right. But until she gets instruction from the court, you know, it's one thing for me to say, hey, could you go investigate this, and she's gonna go, well, but you're one member of the court. I'm just trying to make it more clear that I think it's negligent not to have an investigation of any allegation, both sides to be heard on everything, and so my belief in it is that I can make this motion, and it was seconded, and the county attorney, I think, is saying we can do that. If you want to make it specific to the advisory board, I was trying to make it for the entire everything, but if you want to, I do think I can for sure make it specific to the advisory committee, because
Okay.
We're appointing the advisory committee.
All right.
So if you'd rather me narrow it
I would, because I think that notice is key here, and I think that's what the county attorney just said.
And that, go ahead.
My proposal is that you can just table it and direct her to proceed in the normal fashion, you know, that she would normally be doing these things, but specifically, you know, there's nothing noticed that there's going to be discussion about a review, I think is the issue, but I don't think you need to vote to direct her to do those things.
Agreed.
Okay, I mean, that's
So I'll take your table, and you have a second.
Okay, so my, my motion then, I guess, to focus it in
To table the item.
Would be to table, and then to instruct in regards to look in all the allegations on the advisory committee, and then I'll bring back, I guess, more notice for the rest of what I want to do out there. And then that would be the motion is to table, but
Okay.
And start the county manager to look into all these allegations and come back with a report in no more than 90 days.
Okay. All right.
A little more focused?
Okay. A little bit more streamlined
Okay.
A motion, and Commissioner Gonzalez, you seconded. Is there any discussion at all? All right, seeing as there's a motion to ta, actually, there's no table discussion, so just seeing that there's a motion and a second.
Right.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye. And then, Aidé, would you
And then all of you board members, opposed, same sign. All of the board members, in case you are listening, all of you will stay in your positions for the next 90 days. So there's no concern that you're not on this advisory board. You are.
And Judge, I would just ask then that this be put back on as, whatever wording Jenny wants, Aidé, to do the review for the entire thing, because I mean, as I say, it's spirit compromise, I'm, you know, I really wanted to do everything and do it very detailed, but it, but fair enough on the notice, so if we can put that back on, and I'll, I guess, make that motion then.
Yeah, why don't we just wait to see your motion then, and
Just put it on the agenda is what I'm saying, because we've got the committee part of it covered in this motion, but I want to do everything, so.
Okay. All right.
If the court agrees.
And you can provide backup documentation at that time, and funding, and throw in world peace, a motion so that Aidé can make certain that she, you can do world peace, right?
Throw in world peace. I don't know, it's just an analysis of the department.
I was just, I was just
What background?
I'm just wondering how the court manager is going to be tasked with something like this without any resources, but at any rate, you'll have that opportunity at some time later.
That's interesting. Okay, because it happens all the time. We analyze, I mean, we analyze what's going on in departments. What background would you like, Judge, for that motion, because it would just be a motion to go do
Anyway, we're gonna move on. We'll move on. We have it.
That'd be great.
We have the, we have your motion. We have your direction. We'll move on. Item J-2 is Oasis County Hospital District Board of Managers, and I'm going to make the motion to address the one-year vacancy first, and like to make the motion that it be filled for that one year by applicant Dr. Katie Rodriguez.
I'd like to nominate Art Granado.
Second on Art Granado.
Okay, Johnny, hold on just one second, just so I can get a procedural
I'm sorry, Judge, it's a two-year
A two-year, unexpired term.
Unexpired, yeah, not a one-year.
Okay, not a one-year. Thank you for that. Two-year, unexpired term. Okay, so there is a, just a procedural question. Shouldn't they have waited to get my second, to see if there was a second for my motion? I made the motion.
Well, yes, I think you should vote on that one first.
Right, okay.
If there's no second.
Correct. That's correct. So I have the motion for Dr. Katie Rodriguez, and I would ask for there to be a second. Okay, hearing no second for Dr. Rodriguez. There's a motion for Art Granado by Commissioner Brent Chesney, and a second by Commissioner Joe Gonzalez.
It was the other way around. He made it, and I seconded it.
Sorry.
That's okay.
For the record, Lorenzo, it's Commissioner Joe Gonzalez making the motion for Art Granado, and a second by Commissioner Chesney. And are there any discussion at all?
I'd like some discussion. I've brought this up before, and I don't know if we need to put it in our policies. I know we've looked at a lot of policy changes over the last year or so, but in any, I guess with our, the way we handle appointments is typically been motion and a second. I like the practice of being able to put out a name, not seeking or needing a second, and just putting a name, and then just casting your vote based on whatever names have been presented to the group. I know, believe that's still the practice on some local city councils. I'm not sure if that practice has changed because of state law or anything, but I feel that that's a much more reflective way, because there's good names that are out there, and there's not a second, then they would get a chance to vote, just because of procedural things. So I'll defer to our county attorney if that's something in our policy, or is that has just always been the standard that we do here in Commissioners Court as far as taking a motion, or taking a name, making a motion second, and then having a vote based on that motion alone. Like I said, if you look at, when I was in city council, you'd just give a name, and there's a list of several names up there, and then you would go and just be able to cast your vote for whatever name's been presented. There could be five different names, and then there would be a second round, and then ultimately, you would narrow down your vote. So I like that method better.
So you want to do it more like the job interviews?
I guess, well, job, well, when we've done our job interviews, it's a little bit different, because we're limiting how many names we've done. I mean, I don't think that's policy. So if we could just help me with some direction as far as what is policy, and what is just kind of standard practice that we've been doing, I think that's the first thing to figure out. And then second is, if this has just been something standard that we cannot find anywhere in policy, I'd like there to be able to be a policy that clearly states how we make appointments, because I think being able to cast any name that we want, not needing a second, is really important, just for, you know, the ability to have several individuals to vote for, rather than just make a motion in a second, and then that's how you shoot it up or down. I think that helps also with reappointments as well. So I just, there's a little bit of vagueness there that I think that we have, and so if we can just get some clarity for the future, that would be helpful, just for me, and I would hope for the court as well.
Okay, we're happy to look at that.
Okay, thank you.
John, if you just want to put that on as a proposal, I think you, I mean, it's
Yeah, no, I mean, Yeah, no, I mean, I want to first of all see, is that, is that even there? I, I haven't looked to see myself, but if it's something quickly we can find within, you know, but by next month, by our next meeting, then, then we know whether or not to get it put on as a policy change or not, but, um.
We, we, uh, go ahead and approve all the three reappointments?
Oh, wait, we gotta vote on this one first.
I have to vote on this one, Commissioner.
We didn't vote on this one yet, I don't think, right, yeah?
We have.
I don't think we voted yet.
I have not called for the vote, because I called for discussion, Commissioner Mottis came in, okay?
My bad.
All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Make a motion to reappoint all three, uh, reappointments.
Okay, there's a motion to approve, um, all three reappointments, is there a second?
Second, sorry.
Multiple seconds, okay? All those, any discussion? Okay, um, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. I'd like to recognize Dr. Vishnu Reddy, who's here with us. He took time out of his day. I don't have to explain to you how hard that is for the chief of the hospitalists at Corpus Christi Medical Center to do. Dr. Reddy, not only acknowledge your service, but just everything that, um, you bring to the hospital district board, your knowledge, expertise and compassion, we often don't get to say thank you. So allow us at this moment to congratulate you on your reappointment, but most, um, earnestly, thank you for the service. Because I know you have to clear your entire day for these board meetings, because Johnny keeps you there so long. Just kidding, Johnny, but I, I want to make sure that, that we do acknowledge you and, and we thank you for being here. It makes a big difference, so.
Judge, I just wanted to add to, and thank you, Dr. Reddy, I just wanted to add to.
To all of them, excuse me, to all of, I, I want to congratulate all of them, as, but Dr. Reddy happens to be here.
Right, and I was just gonna say, you know, I, I looked at, I was looking at this last night and, you know, we've always, we talk a lot about, um, diverse boards. I think this has got to be one of our, our most diverse boards and, and they do such a good job of coming together and putting aside different political views or whatever, community views and, and they really work very hard to, uh, to, um, to come together and do this. So I, I appreciate all of what you do and I appreciate, it's a very difficult job, but it's a super important job that a lot of people don't realize. You know, I don't mean to talk about this a lot, but, but this is a multi-multi-million dollar deal that we, we have to have good people on there. And I think having a mixture of, of doctors and, and social workers and, and, and community leaders and business people is, is really good and I think it's been a, a really strong board and I appreciate all that you've done, Dr. Reddy, and, and again, echoing what the judge said, what all the board members have done to, to do this. But I, 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 I look at this one and I always feel pretty good that this is a, you know, really diverse board that works together to, to do the right for the community, so I appreciate that very much. We can always do better, but I think we do pretty well on this one. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Doug.
I, I also, I also want to acknowledge the applicants and say, please, please do not be discouraged. Please continue to, um, apply for opportu- when opportunities arise on, on the health boards. Um, just incredible applicants that had medical backgrounds and wonderful letters. And so again, um, I very much appreciate, um, having that type of applicant pool and the, uh, and just the, when you see your applications online, you often don't know this, but the very bottom it says, explain why you're interested in serving. And so there's, there was wonderful insight in some of the applications. Okay, thank you so much. I will move on as soon as I put my book back together here. I'll move on to our consent agenda and I'll ask that, uh, we have some awareness for items A through P, A through P. And, uh, ask that, uh, there'll be a motion to approve, um, at this time.
Judge, I want to pull some items.
Tell me which ones.
I want to pull, uh, item A.
Item A.
And item D.
One more time, D.
Item D.
B as in boy.
No, D as in dog.
Got it? A and D, anything else, Commissioners? If not, I'd love to have a motion for all except for items A and D.
So moved, Judge.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor or any discussion? Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose same sign. Okay, now let's move to the ones that were pulled for clarity, item A.
Yes, Judge, I just need some kind of clarity on, on.
Can you get closer to your mic, Commissioner, I can't hear.
Yes, I'm sorry.
That's all right.
Uh, I just need some clarity on this item here, can someone explain to me?
Sure, would that be Dale? I'll ask Dale to do that.
These are just our regular check runs that we've done through the process that, that bring force this. If you see there's all mu- mu- multiple vendors, multiple items, this is what we consider a normal check register runs. It has, sometimes you're showing, you're showing three, uh, different periods, uh, nine twelve, nine eleven, uh, uh, nine two. So, uh, we're just doing the transaction, each of the vendors is reported separately. Uh, some of them have multiple items, we're showing you where the purchaser requests as well as the, the general information we received. I'll be glad to answer any question you have on any particular vendor, but this, this is our, our normal, uh, history of list of, of the checks we're in for that period.
Yeah, the one I'm, uh, looking at is, uh, Andy's Country Kitchen, six hundred and fifty for recruitment.
What show you talking about?
Uh, I don't have that, I just have my notes. I'm assuming it's the sheriff's department did some recruitment or something.
Thirteen twenty-four, that is the inmate benefit fine, that is correct.
And that's the way it works, right?
Can you use the money for however they fit and this is recruitment for, for their degree issue, yes.
Uh, thank you, that's all I wanted to be cleared on and then it would be, uh, item D.
Uh, well, let's have a motion then, would you make your motion, please, to approve item A, given you have your question?
Uh, I make a motion to approve item A.
All right, and there's a second by Gonzalez. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all right. And then on item D, this is the group health insurance claims for Boone Chapman.
These are the checks we received from our third party minister.
Yeah, I apologize, I've got a cold and my vision is blurry. I'm talking about, uh.
Okay, so you don't have a problem with D?
Well, I'm confused here now. I, uh, authorized the payment of bills, special motion, uh, and it's concerning land, L A N, for six hundred and seventy-two dollars.
Okay, so then there's, so give me a second. We pulled item D, will you please make a motion to approve item D since you have no issue with it?
You want, you want to go back to B, Commissioner?
Uh, yes.
Yeah, I know how to do it, thanks, I appreciate your help, but I, item D, Commissioner. If we can just.
Well, I apologize for the mix-up again.
That's all right, I, I understand.
My vision is blurry, because I do have.
I just need a motion for item D.
I make the motion to approve item D.
Okay, second, and there's a motion and a second, any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Commissioner, we approved item C, is that the one you had a question on?
Uh, yes, it is.
All right, so, um.
Motion to reconsider C, Judge?
All right, is there a second to motion to consider? All right, and all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay, out of courtesy, we'll go into item C for you, which one is it?
Uh, the one I have here, uh, where they're asking for land to get paid six hundred and seventy-two dollars. A while back, I had asked for a land to, uh, refrain from billing us at the Hilltop project. They're not involved. I can't see why they're billing us for six hundred and seventy-two dollars.
Uh, Dale.
I'll tell you this, this is, uh, from eight six to eight nineteen, since maybe before this was, they were suspended from, from the, from the contract, but we'll definitely pull the contract to determine what, what that's for.
All righty, I appreciate, because, uh, they were supposed to be reframing from, uh, billing Hilltop.
But this is like, the, the invoice was from August the sixth to Au- August nineteenth.
So it was prior to, Commissioner?
Yes.
Well, I just want to make sure it is.
Well, that's what Dale's telling you.
Yes, ma'am, I understand.
Can you, can we please pass it subject to the confirmation that it occurred prior to, please? So that we can get these bills paid?
Yes, ma'am, we'll do it, subject to.
Subject to confirmation.
Confirmation.
All right, and is there a second?
Second.
All right, and all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, now that does complete the consent agenda and we'll move into the regular agenda. Uh, coming into regular agenda, you'll look to see, we have item number one, which is receive a presentation regarding the tax reinvestment zone number two, discuss and consider the recommendation of the expansion of TERS number two geographical area and the extension of the TERS number two in our local agreement with the city of Corpus Christi. And I think we have a PowerPoint here. Okay, um, so I appreciate if you could minimize only so that, there we go. Okay, um, Aidé, do we want to roll through this together and for those of you that, that don't know, um, the TERS number two has been in existence since two thousand and two. It is a twenty-year TERS, the TERS is an acronym for the Tax Increment Reinvestment Zone. And, um, uh, we, as Commissioners Court, uh, have, had authorized back in two thousand and two the, uh, participation by the county and Commissioner Chesney and I currently sit as current board members. And in November of this year, uh, it will expire and therefore on a upcoming agenda, we will be asked to, um, consider reauthorization. And so it is presented to you for the opportunity to understand that this, um, is an important economic tool that's been utilized for public infrastructure, namely Pakory Channel, uh, and Park Road twenty-two on the island. The island has, um, benefited by this public infrastructure. Uh, when I last looked and it may show it here, the county participates to the tune of approximately one point six million dollars per year. Think of it as a savings account, if you will. Uh, also participating is the city of Corpus Christi and, um, Delmar Brent, Delmar College in this one, not in this one.
They're, they're thinking about getting it.
They're thinking about it, right, but they're not in it currently. Brent?
I think that's correct, because I understand they've been approached.
They've been approached, okay, but currently, so this was a city originated TERS, uh, which means that the entire council is actually their board members. We only have, we have some community members and we have, um, my, as I said, Commissioner Chesney and myself. So let's go to the next, um, the next one. Commissioner Chesney, you're welcome to jump in, this is considered one of the top priorities of the island. Um, we can go to the next one, it's just a, a generalized, I love all these beautiful slides with the wildlife. Here are the TERS boundaries and, um, this is where I think, um, we could, and again, this is, um, provided to us by the city of Corpus Christi, Brent. I do not represent that our folks, uh, did it, but this is the, the one that was provided by the city.
I think they did this at our board meeting at one point.
They did.
Right.
They, they absolutely did and so the, 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 the wish is for our participation for consideration and I should just come out quickly and say I do support this economic tool. It's excellent to allow for public infrastructure to be, um, allocated for geographical area. It not only does good for the residents, but it almost guarantees that, that the taxpayer uh, gets that which they bargained for when they pay their county taxes. So you'll notice that by expanding the boundaries, we could include, uh, the area that is what we know as coastal parks. And we could benefit greatly by seeing in the future with the reauthorization of the TERS, the Briscoe King Pavilion, for instance, to be able to be eligible for such funding. In addition to the one point six million dollars that we put in every year, um, the TERS has the ability to bond. Um, and it also has a very healthy, um, cash reserves in it right now. It could afford, for instance, to write a check for a major improvement in public infrastructure, um, inside the geographical boundary. So, Commissioner, my wish here is, uh, oh, go ahead and continue, we'll go to the next slide. Here are the allowed uses and the original purpose. I said November, it expires December, sorry about that.
Right.
It's actually a fiscal year. Um, but of course, it does take time to allow for the, you know, for the documents to be, um, I think the wish for the, for the city was November because it would allow for the lawyers the opportunity to continue to, uh, draft the new, uh, documents. But again, public infrastructure, public improvements, capital maintenance and, um, programs that benefit the zone but would not occur but for the zone. Okay, by the way, um, it's talks about, um, uh, Delmar did participate, but it ended in two thousand and eleven. So you don't have to necessarily be in it for all twenty years, you can be in it for ten years, like Delmar did. So that's also an option. And of course, the hospital district originally, um, Johnny, you can confirm, uh, you were in it originally in TERS number two. Okay, all right, the next slide, please. These are some of the, um, projects that, um, have been included in the project for your review. Commissioner Chesney, anything here you want to highlight?
Judge, um, where are, let me just try to catch up.
It's just the, the projects that were included in the project?
No, I think one of the things that, um, we, we need to have discussion at the TERS board is, you know, uh, the expansion of the boundaries and the, um, um, and additional representation on the, um.
On the board itself.
From the county's perspective, uh, those are things that I have suggested, um, as well, I'm sure you have too and, um.
What were you thinking, Commissioner, on the, um, boundaries and on the, um?
Well, and I think that's where we need to get, um, Jay Gardner and some of those ISAC folks because I believe, if I'm not mistaken, uh, there are some limitations on the boundaries, but there's, and I, so I may have misspoke. I think what I've been, been told is the boundary issue is a, a problem, but we could have an MOU, for example, that county projects could be, even though county projects are eligible anyway, to have a more distinct, um, document that's clearly articulates for the next ten or twenty years or whatever we knew this for, that, that county projects will also be in- included. Uh, for example, I had put forth a suggestion that, uh, that maybe Briscoe King Pavilion be one of the things we, we fund and, um, so we just really need to get to the TERS board and, and kind of hash this out, um, so. But that, that was kind of some of the stuff that I was.
And what, how many, um, people were you thinking, like an additional two members?
Something, I really, yeah, you know, it's still gonna be, it's still gonna be city dominated, because it's just, that's just.
Well, it's a city originated, TERS, except for this. Now we have the power co- by constitution to originate our own county TERS.
Or just to opt in on.
Or to opt in and unfortunately, um, you know, that just was a, had given to us a year ago. So that's why we didn't do it back in two thousand and two. So if you'll go to the next slide and the next one. Um, these tax increment zones are defined by the Texas Tax Code and, um, so you'll see that what you do, uh, Commissioner, and this is what I think is important, is you basically provide notice, Jenny. You have a hearing, you know, all of these would have to be, you know, had. Uh, and that's why I put it on, because we're already at the end of September. You have to have time to do all of these things, this takes planning. And, um, uh, there is an opinion that the TERS could be extended using the steps defined in three eleven point oh oh seven. So again, uh, three eleven oh oh seven is the controlling, so remember the twenty years, we've already gone through it. So how do you extend or would you recreate, right? And so the extension based upon the city's, um, legal opinion, Jenny, from, I don't know this gentleman, but from Brown and Ortiz, apparently specializing in land use planning, uh, said that if we follow the steps defined in three eleven oh oh seven, we would have the ability to extend. And then, um, I mean, you can read the rest for yourself, we'll go to the next slide. This is the part I like, the TERS boundaries can be revised at any time, parcels do need to be contiguous. Um, and if boundaries are revised to include new parcels, these parcels would have a base of the year. They are added, so the increment would begin at zero. Okay, so you, you re- you recalibrate and you're at zero, uh, which is another issue to figure out. Um, is, uh, Dale, you can remind us about the percentages that we're currently at, but we don't have to stay at those percentages.
Yes, Sharon, that was what we're issuing, is the, the base value and how, how much we contribute to each of the TERS, these, these TERS values. That's where it's consideration, as you said, we, we contribute over a million dollars and we know the, the area on, on the island areas is, is a very high. And we know the area on, on the island areas is a very high property where they can go up as many, as well as new properties. So, we just need to make sure our base values correctly, so we don't contribute more than we should.
Right. And our current contribution is a percentage basis?
Yes.
Okay. And that percentage basis...
I'll have to work with the tax office. Tax office knows the exact number shifts.
Okay.
Judge, one of the advantages to doing this, too, is in some of the discussions that have kind of gone on, in the meetings that you have attended, is, you know, not necessarily keeping these TERS at the 100% level.
Correct.
Because this was designed for 20 years. All these TERS are going to come up, right, at some point. So, we're going to have to have kind of a decision as a court, you know, where we want to go on these things, based on the funding mechanisms and the percentages that go along with it. Because the advantage to doing this is, if we don't do it 100%, we will then get new revenue that we don't currently have. If we do it at 100%, then we won't. And so, I don't advocate, and I don't think you do either, I'm not speaking for you, but I think I've heard you say this, too, is that I don't advocate keeping the 100% number there for any of these TERS going forward that have to be renewed. Because I think we have to start looking at new revenue sources and not continuing to lose all of this. And I don't think anybody that I've heard on the TERS Board is advocating. I think the city's looking at it the same way. They're looking at new revenue.
Seventy-five, I think.
Yeah. I've heard 50, I've heard 75. And so, I think we, as a court, need to kind of take some time and really think about this, because this will set a precedent, really, for the ones coming up. Right? I don't know when the others renew. We may not, but there may not be any more renewing for a while. I don't know. But if they do, then we're kind of setting the standard here as, okay. We don't have to hold to it on every single one of them. But, but we should try to be consistent, in my opinion, that whatever percentage we come up with, 50, 60, 75, whatever it is, what we know is that's going to be new revenue for the entity that does that. That's exciting. And it's going to also be that continued savings account, as you call it. Just a good, that's a good name for the, for infrastructure. And we will be able to go and request some additional projects that we know we're going to need funding for on, on, on the island and in all of these TERS areas. So, I think this is a good, good process to go through.
Right. And I, I also think that, if you don't mind, we're just going to finish the slides real quick, just because...
Just before I make sure we get this straight, because we're talking about new, new revenue. Yes, it's not necessarily new tax, new revenue. It's just reducing the amount of contribution. So, our tax is still the same.
That's correct.
We just get to keep more taxes.
Right. It doesn't change to the taxpayer. We need to, we need to clarify that. It doesn't change the taxpayer at all. What it does is it changes the way that our revenue is allocated. And I think that something else that we need to consider is whether or not, and we've talked about this with the chairman, but he won't be with us next year because he's decided to retire. But the chairman understands the value of whether or not you keep the same base level, or whether you start new again. Right? Which is why that provision in the tax code of 311.007 is so relevant. So, we need to make some decisions to begin the conversation. I'm proposing the easy decisions today. And I propose the more difficult ones next court. But you have to make some, you've got to make some decisions to move forward. You can't just expect that all of this will get handled overnight. You've got to start now. Now, the city uses Ortiz. We've always used Bracewell. And so, again, Noe Inahosa, Estrada Inahosa can also help create some, some profiles for us. But let me just finish the next few slides. We'll be done. Again, kudos to whoever put it together. They get your mind all soothed, and then they give you the punch, right? So, here it is. Currently, 100% tax increment above the base year is contributed. So, as Commissioner Chesney said, there's discussion of whether we would approve 50% or 75% or 100%, right? The base year generates $555,000 in city tax revenue. And you can go on down there. This is, this is coming from the city, by the way. Okay? Recommend a contribution of less than 100% for all participating tax entities. So, when you see this, this presentation came from the city. So, their recommendation is a, is a recommendation of a contribution, Dale, of less than 100%, but it doesn't say what. Okay? Again, you can see where the general funds were allocated to. Okay? Go ahead. Here's where some important, you need to, as I say, take note. The ending fund balance for this year will be $7.8 million after the bond payment is made. They also have a bond reserve of $1.5 million, which will be released after the bond payment is made. That is a very hefty cash reserve for a increment reinvestment zone. The maintenance reserve also has a balance. It's been very fiscally managed very well. And the CIP fund has a balance of $4 million once dredging to the channel has completed. So, when we talk about needing Commissioner Chesney $3.5 to $4 million to do a fantastic Briscoe King, you can see that it not only meets the eligibility, as long as it's in the geographical boundary, but that there's plenty of money where you wouldn't even have to bond. If you wanted to bond, you could. But you could do it on balances alone. Okay?
What I've also been told is it doesn't even have to be in the geographical boundary to be eligible. Again, not verif, I'm not...
I wouldn't, I wouldn't, I wouldn't put that. I, I, I hear you.
I'm not saying that's...
And you and I are lawyers, and we need to change it so that there's never a, somebody who comes in and questions it. You know what I mean?
Right. Or some sort of MOU that clarifies it, if it's, whatever the case may be, whether it's extending the boundaries.
An MOU wouldn't, wouldn't help us, in my opinion. Because I think a taxpayer would have to see that the tax increment reinvestment zone had a geographical boundary. That was, I mean, if, if you're allowed to change it, put it in.
I'm not, and I'm not disagreeing with you. I'm just saying what has been relayed to me that we need to get hashed out. So, I believe that if the boundaries can be extended, they should be.
Good.
If the boundaries, if there's some legal glitch, and we have to do it in some other way, so that county projects are included, that's the key, is I don't want county projects to be included in some way. So, I'm not disagreeing with you. I'm saying that's just what has been relayed. I need to get more information on it.
Well, and that's what we can do here today.
Thinking we can get it extended, you know, it's always, these things come up here, and we're always have to stick with an, in an area that doesn't go out further out to the county. So, it doesn't really benefit the whole county. In a sense, it benefits a certain area of the county. But I think we need to be, again, look at it real careful to say, when extended, how much more can we go out? And how much more can we be able to do on our projects? It's going to help other areas of the county.
Yes, sir.
I'm always looking things and, you know, why are we stuck only in this area here, right? But, and I understand what the way it is right now, that we can't, we've got no choice. But I think we need to look at expansion and at extension.
Right. And just to remind you, Commissioner, we do do that. We have five TERS in the urban center. But just so you know, Commissioner, that's why this court and Chairman Canales fought for counties to have the right to create TERS, so that exactly what you said, so the same economic tools would be available to the rural communities, as well as the urban communities. We now have that right. If you want to propose a TERS in a rural community, we can do that as a county by constitutional amendment. We voted on a year ago. But having said that, just remember that the boundaries we're talking about extending makes sense to the TERS number two. We already have one on North Beach, one on Greenwood, one downtown. Help me out. I think that's it. Downtown, North Beach, Greenwood, and...
That's why we also have the one over by the college where they, they're building that big facility.
Okay. So, I mean, we have...
I think we have five or six.
We have five. I'm pretty sure, at least five. Anyway, the point is, is they are very spread out, but in the urban center. But until last year, until Chairman Canales fought that battle, we did not have the right as a county to do that. And we do now. And so, we can look to...
The western area?
Look to the western area, absolutely. Forgive me, but Johnny has something to say.
Commissioners, the hospital district is also, as you mentioned, judge a participant in this TERS.
Yes.
And we're interested in following the lead of the county in whatever you do, because we also forego revenue, like you do, that goes into the TERS. And so, I just want to say that we're interested in following the lead of the county, if y'all want to pursue a reduction or whatever. But we are supportive of those things.
Thank you.
Thank you, Johnny.
Thank you, Johnny. And, and again, we'll go to the last two slides here. They're all the money slides. Okay? So, this gives you a sense of where we are in our budget. I said 1.6, but it looks like it's more like 1.5. Some of my numbers are a little bit altered, but it might have been for the new tax year. But you can see what the city puts in, what the county puts in, what the hospital district puts in, what other revenue comes from. Total revenue is about $5 million a year. You can see how it grows, right? In 2002, look at the revenue, it was $163,000. So, it's experienced a 30% increase in tax revenue over the past five years and 2,400% in the past 20. So, island is definitely growing. And that's where a lot of that growth has transpired there. Okay? Go ahead. This is the futures, right? So, when Commissioner Chesney said they've been talking, this is the slide, Commissioner, that really gives you some choices. 75% or 50%? And again, I think that, Johnny, the conversations that we had with the city is that I think everybody recognizes that the, maybe 2002, healthcare was thought of in a certain way. But today, we believe that it's not the burden of the hospital district that's taking care of health of a community to philosophically be involved with public infrastructure. I just don't think that that's, you can see that it's not even on here. And I think that's probably a very wise decision for the city to advocate. And it's one that I would support. It means the county could participate. But we would allow the hospital district to make that revenue back. And guess what you could do for us? Then our taxes would even go lower.
I knew there would be a catch, Judge. So, anyway, this was the last TERS that the hospital district participated in. There was a law enacted by legislature, I forget to its year, that prohibits our hospital district, among others, from participating in these. But this is the last one that we were in before the law got passed. And so, Judge, that law goes exactly to what you said.
Yeah.
So, thank you.
Yeah. So, again, you get to see what it looks like with the 75%. And you can even do 75% for 10 years, and then 50% for the remaining 10 years. So, this is, this gives you a sense of what type of infrastructure. But again, when you really think about the opportunities that we could have if Delmar comes in, it looks pretty good for 75%, maybe for the first 10, and then 50% for the next 10, something like that. You could always change it to go higher. But it'd probably be really hard to get people to change it. You probably couldn't do that legally to go lower, so... And, and then I'll go back to... But let me just go run back real quick. So, if you look at our county tax revenue with 75%, we're still, we still would be contributing quite a bit of dollars, over a million dollars with 75%. And when we ran the numbers on what it would cost to do Briscoe King Pavilion, just with our dollars, you could easily bond with today's interest rates for about $400,000 a year, still leaving over $800,000 for other projects. So, again, this is, these are the decisions we have to make. And, and this is for your presentation. And I'm grateful to the city for having made this back in February, because this is the, the information that, that we need to make our decision. Go ahead. And go ahead. Again, just talking about the allowable uses. We could also use these funds for maintenance of Bob Hall Pier if needed. Go ahead. If the geography was changed. These are some of the identified needs in the future. Okay? Go ahead. I like this because the city recognizes that this is a living document, and it needs to reflect the current needs of the area. And the current needs of the area definitely demonstrate that a Briscoe King Pavilion update is highly needed and necessary. And the plan can be amended at any time with the recommendation of the TERS Board and the approval of City Council. And I think that's it. But double-check me here. Okay? Well, these are some of their projects. Capital maintenance for Pakory, mobility, revenue sharing for a master plan development. Notice that without our proposed projects, none of our county facilities are included. Okay? The next one? The next steps? Interesting, none of this happened. So, this is why I have it on the agenda. Okay? And the last step is questions. So, I would like to propose, as they said, the easy stuff today. And this gives us an opportunity to direct staff to bring back some real options for what I would call the harder decisions. So, again, I would like to make a motion to continue, to make a motion that we recommend to the TERS Board, the extension of the TERS number two in our local agreement with the city of Corpus Christi pursuant to the law, Texas Tax Code 311.007. And that that would be recommended for the next 20 years.
And Judge, you're just going to keep it general and not specific at this point?
Very general, Commissioner. Just, it's a recommendation from our court, so that when you and I go in there, and we have to vote on this, we know that our court is fully informed. We need a recommendation from this court to the TERS that would say, we are in favor of extending this TERS. If you only want to do it for 10 years, we can do it for 10. My motion is for 20. And then we can move, you know, we have to start at the ceiling, and then we can move down.
I think if we just make it general, for whatever, just to make it 10, 20, I'm...
Well, how about just the extension of the TERS?
Right. That's what I was just going to say, so that we can get the numbers firmed up to where we're like in unison with what...
That's fine.
All the other bodies are doing.
That's fine.
You know, that kind of thing.
Right. How about, how about I'll, I'll, I'll amend and say that my motion is for this court to support the extension of the TERS pursuant to the law and the code that's been provided to us by the city, and that we would vote to enter into that new interlocal agreement. And that's just really phase one, is the extension. And I would look for you, Commissioner Chesney, to be my second.
Yes, ma'am. And that's, and discussion would just, and I am, yes. And discussion would just be, that we'll bring back to the court once we go to the TERS Board and get some specifics, so that you have specifics to vote on.
That's right. We're going to have to figure out.
This is just to move forward with the concept.
This is to actually say, we, the county, are in favor of the extension. And we've got to go do that. And, and in, and I have a call to action. We need, and we've been promised this on the agenda for the TERS number two all summer. We haven't been able to do that. It absolutely needs to be on. This is important to the island. This is important to our community. And I believe that time is of the essence. So, with that, if there's no more discussion, again, this would be to support the extension of the TERS. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post same sign. The second piece is also very general, Commissioner. And I would look to, Jenny's going to go, oh, my goodness. But, but she can certainly get GIS help or, you know, map help. But I would look for a motion to expand the geographical area that is the intent of this court, that in the, in the new TERS, that our geographical boundaries be extended to include Pakory Channel Nature Park, Commissioner Chesney, that's in desperate need of a road, as well as the geographical area that would include Padre Baye Park facilities. And I would leave it at that generally.
Judge, could, would you add language to your motion? Judge, could, would you add language to your motion?
Yes.
That just says, "And/or includes all county projects"? I don't want to, if there is a legal glitch, did I?
That's fine.
"And/or includes all county projects in the area"?
Perfect. "And/or includes all county projects", Lorenzo.
Then I would second...
I just, a lot of people forget about our Packery Channel Nature Park.
No, no, I just want to make it as broad as possible so that we're not limited in our discussion.
I agree. All right.
So I would second that with the amendment.
All right. And there any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye? Aye. Post same sign. Okay, I'm also going to say, in related matters, Iday, you've been very helpful in getting the city to get this presentation attached. I believe in your packets, you'll see the old contract, Jenny, the old. It's 20 years old, Jenny. I know your plate is full, but we have to have somebody start looking at it.
So you mentioned Noe Hinaosa and others who had been retained in the past. Is it the court's intention to have them retained on this matter now?
So Noe doesn't do anything in the Scrivener, but he is already on, he is our financial advisor. It couldn't, shouldn't cost us a dollar to get him to do the estimates of 75%, 50% into the future. And I would ask Iday to reach out to him and say, "What would it look at?" I would run them all, Commissioner Chesney. What do you think? Run them at 75, run them at 50?
I'd run them at 60, 65. I mean, I don't know why.
Well, not too many, just how about?
No, no, I'm just saying because it, because there's a big difference between 50 and 75 that it might be somewhere 62.5.
All right, how about, how about between 50 and 75 to run them?
I'd like to see all those.
Every five, 5% increment?
Yeah, I mean, can't hurt.
Well, then if the court wants to have this completed before December 31st of this year, then there are going to have to be projects that are not handled by our office
Yes.
in, in order to put this at the top of the list.
I don't think it'll be coming from, I think it'll be...
I think it'll be the city.
The city and you'll just review.
That's correct.
You're not going to have to instigate documents, is what I understand.
That's, that's correct. That is correct, Jenny. The only thing I would say is that in addition to Strade Hinaosa giving us the 50 to 75%, we have to make certain, Iday, that he also runs it. Are you keeping the same base or not? Okay, so it's really, it's really A and B. And then the other thing is, what else? Hold on. Oh. On the geography, on the language regarding the geography, that might be something to let Bracewell look at because they've done all our TERS before. But that's so limited, Jenny. And again, we need to describe it with particularity. We'll look to see how they describe their meets and bounds and we'll describe ours, you know? And then we'll see how that, how that comes in. For now, the court's direction is county projects. It still would have to have very specific geography, but we can work on that. Okay, I think we're good there. Again, we still have quite a bit to, to work on as far as the financial pieces. But I would also like to ask Iday to look at the calendar. We would have to have a public hearing and a public notice be given. I am unsure, but typically it does require, what, 30 days typically? All I'm saying to you is that go ahead and bring to the court a concept of a public hearing and a, sorry, when public notice would be given by, for the county and public hearing. Okay? All right. And again, this is setting the template for how we address the next one, Brent, which I think is going to be, remember, four and five just got created in our tenure. So you're not going to have to worry about those for a while. You need to worry about three, the downtown one. I'm not sure, but I think it's still got some life in it. Okay. Well, at any rate, we'll move on and we'll receive item number two. Thank you for your patience. I hope you can see that that's a really important exercise in understanding the complexities of county government. Receive a presentation from Armor Correctional Health Services regarding its provision of medical services at the Duessis County Jail and related matters. And so here we are. Nice to see you.
How are you guys? Good morning.
We're good. Do you have a PowerPoint that needs to be loaded? If not, no worries.
I believe they have it.
Okay, just give us a chance to get it up on screen and then you may begin when you see it. Okay.
Perfect, thank you. So, good morning and thank you guys for giving us the opportunity to give you an update. I'm Manny Fernandez, the Chief Operating Officer at Armor. Dr. Fernandez and Mr. Campo send their best wishes. They apologize that they weren't here with me today. And with that, I'll jump right in. So first off, you'll see on the next slide, if you can switch, just a quick clinical update in partnership with the sheriff and his team. I'm happy to update you all that we are caught up on all of our clinical metrics, operational metrics inside of the facility and that's chronic care visits, sick call visits, behavioral health visits. And I say thank you to the sheriff because it's crucial, crucial inside the facility to have that patient movement. It's a challenge across the country with the shortage of staffing on both sides. But here, I'm happy to announce again that we are caught up and it's again, thanks to the sheriff and his team being able to provide us those patients when we need them down in the clinic. Secondly, and if you can scroll down to the next slide, I think you all are very familiar with Armor and our obsession with data. I'm happy again to announce that our data analytics, our platform, our dashboards are all operational specific for Nuasis County. I've included a screenshot here of what your dashboard looks like. I'd be happy to share these dashboards with you all. If you recall, we try to present in a dashboard actionable items such as an admission rate. If you look on the dashboard there in the top middle, there's a 30% marker and that's telling us that we're sending about 30% of our patients to the hospital are actually getting admitted. We track that closely because that's a statistic that tells us very easily if we're truly, truly treating the patients onsite at the facility or if we're just referring everything to the hospital. This dashboard overall is just one that focuses in on off-site utilization, so utilization outside of the facility. That's it, whether they're going to see a specialist, whether they're going to the hospital. And then down the right side, what you see is your high utilizers. We've obviously removed those names, but you'll see there the referrals for the patients that have gone outside of the facility for care, highest utilizers down to the lowest utilizers. Again, I'd be happy to share these with you guys. Everything is obviously username and password protected because of HIPAA. If so, please let me know and I'll make sure to get you guys your own personal, unique username and passwords. It's not only offsite, as you'll see down the left there, we have pharmacy information, emergency room visit information. So there's a whole list of them that we can review if you'd like. Next slide, please.
And we've never had this before.
With Armor, you're saying, or prior to Armor?
Prior.
Not that I'm familiar with. I don't believe so.
It's great data.
Thank you. So obviously staffing, I think, when we look at staffing inside of the facility and if you can scroll down a little bit more, but the number is 4.6, we currently have 4.6 vacant positions out of the 31.1 that we're contracted for, which gives us a 15% vacancy rate inside of the facility. Given today's nature, it doesn't sound terrible. However, if you dig in a little bit and you look at it on a position basis, you'll see on the right side of your screen there that if you look at the registered nurses, we have close to a 40% vacancy rate. Next slide, please. So we obviously dug into that 40% and what we found is our rates that we're offering or our rates that are part of the contract have not kept up with the demand out in the field. So on the left side of your screen, what you'll see is in the red column, on average, a nurse, a license or LPN or LVN is getting paid on average at Armor $25 in Nuasis County. The market rate, which is a rate that we have pulled from a partner of ours, which is the Economic Research Institute, which we call ERI, tells us that the market rate in Nuasis County should be 26.02. The way they provide us that rate is they go out into specific zip codes throughout the country and gather data on what actual nurses are getting paid. It provides us a rate based on years of experience and it also provides us a high, medium and low rate. So we now know exactly what nurses in Nuasis County are being paid. We typically like to position ourselves around that 75th percentile, knowing that if we offer the mean or the average, we're going to be competing with the hospitals and nursing homes and if most times, 10 times out, 10 times out of 10 unfortunately, if a nurse has to pick between a hospital and a jail, they're going to pick the hospital if the rates are the same. So we like to position ourselves above the average so that we truly give ourselves a chance to hire and not only hire, but retain nurses long-term. And then the third column is the rejected ask and we call it the rejected ask and that is when a nurse rejects an offer that we've made at the $25 rate, they're coming back and saying on average that they would like to be paid $27.50. On the right side of the screen is our registered nurses. If you recall, our registered nurses have roughly a 40% vacancy rate. And here, you'll see the disparity between what Armor is paying and the market rate is a little larger than on the LPN side where it's only a dollar. Here, our RNs inside of the facility are getting paid on average $35 an hour. The market rate, again, from that ERI analysis is saying that an RN on average should be paid $43 an hour. The rejected ask there from the nurses that we're actually making offers to is $45. So again, that disparity there from 35 to 43 is a little bit larger, therefore causing us to have more vacancies on the RN side. Next slide, please. So we went back and again, we look at everything we have, all the data and we saw that on average at Armor, when we make 10 offers to nurses or candidates out in the field, we usually get nine out of 10 to accept those offers, which is consistent through all of our sites. If we pull out Nuasis County and we look at the offers that being extended here, roughly five out of 10 are accepting. So 54% acceptance rate compared to 89 at Armor. So we again, drill down into that to see what is it that's causing these candidates to deny these offers? And on the right side of the screen, you'll see that 56% of the candidates denying offers are because of pay, which makes sense when we look at that disparity we're off, five or $6. 26% of them is scheduling. I think the toughest slot or shift to fill inside of the facility is obviously that weekend shift or that weekend night shift. It's the hardest shift to fill everywhere. It's not specific to this. So that's common. That number doesn't really shock me, the 26. And then 19% is no response. So we never heard back from the candidate once we made the offer. Next slide, please. So given all that, there's a 15% vacancy. However, I do want to report that of the 31.1 contracted positions, we have filled 96% of the shifts over the last 12 months. How have we done that? If you look on the right side of the screen, I put three different ways that we've assisted to make sure that we're able to fill those vacant positions. So ad comps is what we call it. Really what it is, is a shift premium. If we have a vacant shift on a Saturday, we'll go to our nurses and offer them $100, sometimes $2, $3, $400 to come in and work that shift on top of their regular pay plus overtime pay. The second column is what we call agency. Agency is just a subcontracted company that provides us agency nurses at a way higher rate, but we know we need to fill those rates so we've gone above and beyond to make sure that we fill all of our shifts on the weekend or on that night shift. And then the last one is just overtime. We've been able to pull our nurses to work overtime and fill those additional shifts. I'll pause there and see if there's any questions. Okay, next slide. So our current contract started on December 1st, 2020. We're wrapping up year two here at the end of November. Part of our contract was that it was a fixed three-year contract where the price remained the same over the course of the three years. Like I said, we're wrapping up year two. Again, part of the contract, the way the billings work is that on the first of the month, we'll send an invoice over to Nuasis County. 60 days later is when we receive payment on that invoice. So within those 60 days, what happens is that we obviously have to cover payroll, which within that timeframe can be anywhere from four to five payrolls depending on the month, plus all the other charges that are coming in throughout those two months. Currently, our contract calls for a performance bond. The performance bond that the contract calls for is 100% of the contract value. The contract value is $4.238 million or $4.3 million. The way these contracts, these performance bonds work is we, Armor, need to go through a surety company to post this bond of $4.2 million. This surety company comes to us and says, "Hey, Armor, we need to hold in escrow a certain amount of money while we post this bond." So think of it as a security deposit. We have put into a security deposit $500,000 to post that $4.2 million. Again, these performance bonds are not industry standard. I think in my lifetime at Armor, which is 10-plus years, I've seen maybe a handful of these, over 100 contracts that I've been involved with. Next slide, please. So although I know this isn't an action item, our ask, I think in the future, would be to reduce the amount of that performance bond. I'm not asking to remove it. I'm asking to reduce it down to 20%, which is a contract, if you do that based off the contract value, would be a bond of roughly $850,000. Doing so allows us to get some money back from that security deposit that the surety company is holding, which would probably, based off my estimates, be roughly $350,000. What we're committing to do with that $350,000 is reinvest back into the contract on an annual basis, really $75,000 to $80,000 specifically to pay our nurses so that we can fill those vacancies. And I think the question is, why would Armor do that? I think if you go back three or four slides, I just showed you the amount of money we were spending above and beyond on additional compensation, overtime and agency, where I'd rather have my staff receiving that money long-term and it helps me with retention as well. So again, if we put in $75,000 over the course of this contract year, we still have two more years after this next year left. So that would be $75,000 this year, $80,000 year two and $90,000 to $100,000 on year three.
And have you done, have you run the numbers? Would that allow, with this initial investment of $75,000, would that allow for the market rate to be achieved for both the LPNs and the...
So it would get us close. I think if you look at our contract, the bigger, like I said, first of all, the bigger spread is on the RN side.
It is.
However, if you look at the contract, we're only contracted to have seven RNs. So we're contracted, I think it's 14.1 for LPNs and seven for RNs. And given that's a 40% vacancy rate on the RNs, I would focus probably more so on those RNs, given that they're even the higher level clinician, I would like to fill that. So that's where I would probably focus most of those funds. But obviously, I would like to give it to the LPNs as well because retention is equally as important.
Right. If you don't get to market rate, it's not going to help you.
Yeah.
Because your agency is still going to stay at the same level unless your market rate is market rate.
Yes.
So really, you're not asking for any additional monies. You're just going to use your own money to lower the bond and you'd be using that money to upgrade the pay of the RNs and the LPN rate, so...
You're using some of it. You're using some of it.
Yeah, some of it, but still, I mean, you're not asking...
Well, we would be using some of it this year because if I say I'm going to give you $350,000 this year over the course of the contract, that adds up to roughly $1.2 million. Because once I commit to giving a nurse an additional $3, I don't adjust their pay at the end of the next contract year. I am going to continue to pay that nurse those extra $3 for the next three years. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Yeah, but, go ahead. I'll let you finish.
Yeah, I just want to, I just, again, just to make sure. So we're not eliminating the bond at all. It'd just still be 20% left on the bond, right? That will be the contract value of $847,000.
Correct.
So yeah, I guess I'd have to ask, why'd you agree to this if you're going to come back and want to reduce it? I mean, why in the world would I, with a $4.2 million performance bond, want to reduce it to $847,000 and incur an additional 3-point something million dollars of potential liability for Nuasis County just because you might, because you're going to give the nurses a little more money? I mean, I, this is a stunning request. I mean, you signed the contract. If you thought this was so unusual when you did it and you haven't seen a lot of these, I mean, for gosh sakes, the county finally ended up on the favorable side of a contract for the first time for five years. Every time we turn around, we're saying we're on the unfavorable side and we're on the favorable side. And now respectfully, you want to come in and ask us to reduce from 4.2 million to $847,000? And somehow that's a, no offense, but somehow that's a reasonable request in someone's mind? I mean, it's a great, it's a great effort to come in and say, "Hey, but we're going to use some of this money to pay nurses more." That's a great approach because you put us all on, "Oh, gosh, man, we can pay nurses more." But then you want us to reduce our liability by 3.3 million. So that is, you know, I'd rather figure out a way to come up with the $3 for the nurses than to reduce your bond on this thing because holy cow, this is, like I said, we finally have a contract that we can go, "Woo-hoo, we won one", you know? So I don't, I don't, I'm not favorable. I'm not, I don't, I mean, I know it's not a motion today because it's just discussion, but just know when you come back in, I'm only, I mean, I'm only one. You might win 4-1, but I'm not going to agree to reduce the county's liability from $4.2 million to $847,000 and leave us hanging for 3.3 million. That makes no sense to me. Sorry. That's, you know, you...
Well, there's no action item today. This is just a presentation.
I mean, you can work everybody else and see if you can get everybody else to change their mind.
But the peer and all that's...
I appreciate you coming in and giving us this presentation because I'll tell you, a lot of times the way that we work here is it's given all in one lump sum. Take it or leave it. It's all done at one meeting. So the fact that you or staff or whoever has asked to put this has given some forethought to, yes, this is a big ask. And so maybe you realize that. Hopefully you will see that I think that a majority of us will have some concern on the dollar amount. I totally agree on the cost. If you look at the state, the state pays pretty well for nurses and dental hygienists in prisons because of the setting. They have to pay pretty well. So I get that. I mean, just go look at the job boards for Texas Department of Corrections. They, when those positions open up, they pay... They, when those positions open up, they pay a lot better than you would find out kind of on the street or at the hospital, because you have to.
That's right.
And so, I get that part of it. And I get the part of requesting less for the performance bond. I'd like to see maybe what would happen if it were a smaller ask. You still are be able to reinvest in nurses and give them a higher rate to make it a more attractive position, but also that we're not decreasing what I think is an important dollar amount, especially as we're dealing with all this. I love the data, that's where you all sold me, two years ago. I was going to say last year, I was like, oh my gosh, it's already been two.
Two years, yep.
Two years, so I'm glad you said twenty twenty. That was a crazy year for us, but, for everyone. But that, that fact that you have that data, right, that dashboard that you have, I know I'd like it, I don't know if you just want to make something available for the entire court. Everyone wants access to that. Or we can sit online, even just virtually, to walk me through it, because I know.
Yeah, I'd love to do that.
It was presented very well back before this vote, and so that, like I said, that's what I really liked about it. And I want to be able to kind of compare, you know, apples to apples, right? You know, this is so progressive in its approach compared to what we've had before, right? I think it's hard. You are the baseline. You're showing us where you started, but compared to what we've had, it's, there's no comparison, right? And I really want to be able to see how that data is justified. How, how well are we doing now in responding to, to the inmates when they have those needs for medical care? Where is that saving us on, on labor hours put in, on transporting issues? Because it's one thing you hear from the sheriff, on this issue or any other, transporting is a very dangerous time for him and for his corrections officers, because you're handling the inmate and moving them out to the public or to a non-secure, or less secure setting than a jail setting. So, I want to be able to see all of that. I want to be able to, be able to understand how, why we picked you in the first place. And I still know why, and I know, like I said, this is a big ask, and I hope, I hope that you are shooting high, knowing that we're probably going to ask for maybe something more in the middle, right? That can easily be reached, that we're reducing the request, but that there's still a sizable amount of performance bond that's still being allocated, and you can still reinvest the dollar amounts that you're talking about to be able to attract or retain these RNs or LPNs. So, that's what I'm kind of going to be looking for.
Okay.
Before you come back to us again. So hopefully, they will work on that, and whoever else with our staff can help bring that back.
Absolutely.
Because I agree, I think it's a, it's a big, that's a big difference, and if we just go off of what you're presenting, even one of your strongest supporters from, you know, from the initial presentation and adoption of your contract to now, that's a big price difference. But if we can find somewhere that's a little bit easier to work through, I would be much more in favor of. But if you can get, get me that access to the data, I'd love to be able to look at it, just to be able to understand it a little bit better. I mean, the presentation that you gave us today, I think, has really helped see the numbers, see the kind of the more frequent users. All of that that you presented has been truly helpful, and that's, that's what I think, obviously, what, what healthcare for jails are now across the board throughout the country. And that goes to show that we are hopefully being cutting-edge here in Oasis County, because we need to, because it brings the cost down, and it's better for the inmate, it's better for the county on liability. It's just that, that performance bond that I do have some concerns with, but.
Absolutely.
We'll work on it, and do we, did we say at time when we're coming back with this?
October.
Can I ask one more set of questions? I forgot. Judge, is that okay?
Absolutely.
John, were you done? Making sure? So, I need to, and I forgot, because I got so caught up on this performance bond. When, again, when you signed the contract, why did, why did these rates for the nurses get quoted if we knew they were low? Why wouldn't that factor in also at that point? Why wasn't there a CPI put in? Why, I mean, you guys do hundreds of these, so tell me why we're in this position to where we're so much lower. Why wouldn't this address when we signed the contract?
Absolutely, so.
Or when the hospital district signed the contract. It's actually a third-party agreement, too, just to make sure it's not completely up to us here, so.
Understood. So when we originally signed the contract, it's a three-year fixed contract. However, built into that three-year fixed fee, we do have increases year over year. If you go back and look at the historical CPI, you'll see that on average, rates have gone up anywhere from two to three percent. We all know what the CPI rate has been over the last two, three months. It's nine percent, eight percent. So, what happens is that year over year, internally, within the contract, we have these increases of two to three percent given to our nurses. However, the market is demanding that we increase eight to nine percent, which, back in 2020, we had no way of predicting that that was going to happen. Nothing like this has ever happened before, especially in the nursing market. We have nurses throughout the country where they're demanding they get paid sixty dollars an hour. I can tell you that four or five years ago, there were, the RNs, registered nurses, were getting paid less than thirty dollars an hour. So I think this is, never happened before, so really had nothing to base it off of to tell you that, hey, I knew that in the future, the rates were going to go up eight percent.
But in theory, in theory, you're contracted with the hospital district to take care of this, so you have to figure out how to do this. Again, not trying to be, but like I said, I'm so, we have so many unfavorable contracts in this court, and this is actually one that may be favorable, and it's a hospital district contract, so I mean, Johnny needs to weigh in, too, on what his thoughts are. But, I mean, so realistically, you have to figure out how to staff this. So we could say, you know what? You've got to go pay this, you've got to go find these nurses and pay them. I mean, are we obligated for that? If we are, then, then we would just pay for the extra nurses. If we're not, then you would have to figure that out under your contract amount, right?
No, correct, and that's why I included the slide that shows that we have gone above and beyond just whatever the contract says we need to do to make sure that we're filling those shifts.
Right, and I appreciate that, but what I'm saying is, in regards to these nurses, doesn't the contract say you've got to figure out how to?
Yes.
Fund these things? So, the contract currently says, so I want to make sure the court understands this, I think, and you're saying yes, you have to figure this mess out. You're coming back to, not a mess, it's not a mess you created, but it's a mess of the market, but you have to go figure this out and fund these nurses and pay them and get this thing staffed. And we've fulfilled our obligation by the, whatever the CPI increases were or whatever, so we've done everything we're supposed to do. So everything you're asking for today is an ask of this court that you would have to take care of if we just said we're not interested, right?
That's correct.
Okay, so I want the court to understand that, right? This is their obligation to figure this out. They're asking for us, no offense, I'm not using the words mean or anything, to bail them out of a contract that they signed, that they're under an obligation to fulfill by making it sound like they're going to go back and use this money for the performance bond for the nurses, when in effect, they have to do that whether we say yes or no. So they have to figure out how to staff this thing, whether we say yes or no. So we are getting nothing if we do this that I can see, other than just giving something away for nothing. We're not getting anything in return. They have to fund these nurses, they have to make sure it's staffed. If we agree to anything they're doing, or they're asking for, and again, you correct me if I'm wrong, we are saying, we are giving something away for absolutely zero and getting zero in return. I appreciate that you've gone above and beyond, you did what you needed to do, that's great, but I want the court to understand clearly, this isn't a, like, we're getting something here if we reduce the bond, we're getting zero. We're getting zero, because they have to do this. So, that's, Johnny and, I don't know how Johnny, I don't know how you all feel about this performance bond. This is, I mean, this is a staggering ask.
Just remember, there is no ask here, there's no agenda item here today.
No, but it is, he's telling me he's coming back and asking, Judge, I mean, I wouldn't miss.
Well, you may have, you may.
But he said, that's what the presentation said.
I just want to make sure that, we know that, we're just receiving information here today. Johnny?
Judge and Commissioner, in the interest of information, let me clarify a couple of things. One, in our agreement, and we're cross-checking this, but I'm pretty sure in our agreement that it stipulates the hours of nursing coverage they have to provide, does not stipulate the pay rate.
I'm sorry, just say it one more time.
It stipulates the hours of nursing coverage they must provide.
Correct.
But it does not stipulate their pay rate.
That's correct.
Okay, so that, that goes to Commissioner. Second, since the hospital district is a party to this agreement, we're not in favor of anything that creates risk or exposure that we don't already have to the parties. So to the degree you reduce the performance bond, you create risk for yourself and exposure. And so we're concerned about that. And I would just remind the court that Armor came to, not formally to the court, but informally back late last year and earlier this year, and asked to assign this contract to an entity that they, or a subsidiary they had, that at best we could determine at that time, did not have any assets. And so this is a continuing sort of presence, I guess, by Armor in wanting to redo the features of this agreement. And so the hospital district informally said back then that we were not in favor of reassigning this agreement to anyone else, because our agreement is with Armor, and that the company they suggested we reassign it didn't have any assets. So, in this case today, we're opposed to anything that, like I said, creates risk or exposure for the parties. I can't speak for the court, but I can speak for the hospital district, and we have concerns about the proposals that have been presented today.
Understood. Okay, anything further here? Can I move on?
You can move on, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. We're going to move on to item number three, discussing, consider approval of the supplemental agreement with Steve Bonner relating to intergovernmental support agreements with the Naval Air Station. Steve, you've been patient, you're online with us, and I know you're here as a resource. We have this item as part of the agenda, and just so you know, it has, it is included in our budget, so this is not an ask that would be extra. This is to continue services kind of on an on-needed basis. Iday, you helped make this, I guess, not to exceed.
Yeah, that's correct, Judge. This is part of the budget, and it's paid from the Department 1285.
And it's a not to exceed?
That's correct.
Twenty-seven thousand?
That's, the man requested is seventeen thousand, seven hundred and eighty.
I'm sorry, seventeen, forgive me, seventeen thousand.
With thirty-four cents, correct.
All right. Okay, and so I'll make the motion to approve, and.
I'm sorry, Judge, just, a second.
Thank you.
Sorry, sorry, sorry.
Motion and a second, and any other discussion?
And just, this is.
Sure.
You said this was just an extension of what we're currently doing.
This is for a whole year extension?
This is.
It's.
For the, it has to be.
I can't hear you.
I believe it's for the year, but it has a.
That's correct.
It has a not to exceed dollar amount, and so it's kind of when, it's not like something has to be.
Yeah, it's part, it's just the third supplemental agreement, yes, it's part already.
It's just so when we need it, it's there. For example, we're in the middle of finalizing that very first work authorization order. But again, after that gets done, unless, it's on needed basis, right?
What's the seven hundred and eighty travel, what's that for?
Well, it's for travel expenses, so when, when he has to come here to the base.
Okay, oh, he doesn't live, he's not living.
No, no.
Where does he live?
Steve, your residence is, are you?
He can't answer that.
Steve, are you still with us? I'm feeling like it's the Hill Country, but I could be wrong.
I want to get that info right now for you.
Yeah. I mean, originally, you know, he lived in Washington, but I'm pretty sure he's a Texan and lives here in Texas. Steve, are you with us? Okay, there's a motion and a second, and all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Okay, pose same sign, and I'll get you that answer to make sure. Okay. Okay, item number four is discussing, consider supplemental agreement with the, and these are all happening for the audience, is because we're at the end of a fiscal year, and so in some cases, it's to get us through the next time, and then, in this case, it was the expiration of a prior contract. Connie, did you have something?
Excuse me, Judge?
Yes, Steve Bonner just said that his Zoom is lagging, so he's trying to answer your question.
Oh, yes, sometimes that happens, it lags. He can put it in the chat room. Yes, Commissioner?
Yes, I was also waiting for Mr. Bonner's response.
Oh, sorry.
Okay, well, I'll get that for you here shortly. There is like a minute or two lag time. Steve, the question, if you can hear, is, are you a Texan? Do you have a residence here in Texas? I know he works for military bases all over the country, but I think he is, if you'll just tech, I can text him, too.
He says he lives in Warren, Texas.
That's what I thought, he's from Bernie.
Bernie, sorry.
That's the Hill Country, yeah. Bernie, Texas. Commissioner?
I'm an aye on that.
Okay, thank you. He's an aye? All those, okay, so we're going to move on. The next one is another agreement. It's to continue the work that we have with Patricia Shipton for services related to the eighty-eighth Texas Legislative Session, and consultant Joel Romo, also for services related to the eighty-eighth session. And for both, it includes strategic planning, consulting, and governmental relations services. And I'll make the motion to approve the supplemental agreement. All is the same, and the timeframe is through, help me out, next September.
Judge, I was going to, I wanted to extend, but I only wanted to extend through the end of this year, so I don't want to vote against, but I don't want to extend through September of twenty-three at this point. So, I'm interested in extending through the end of this year and doing it in that nature, but, so if I voted, if you got a second, I voted no, it was not because I don't want to extend them, it's just I don't want to extend them for this length of time.
Okay, but you do know there's a legislative session in January?
I get it.
And it's over when?
Pardon me?
And it's over when?
I would want to extend through December of twenty-two, and then revisit it again at the end of the year.
All right.
That would, I mean.
I mean.
But you made a motion, I wasn't trying to intercept your motion.
Yeah, if you don't mind, let me, let me go ahead and make it, and so, again, I don't want to have to come back here in December and start all over again. I mean, these guys need to make plans for the legislative session. I, I don't know, is there a concern that you would not want to have them for the legislative session?
I would extend, I'd be happy to do it through the end of the year, and we come back at the end of November, so that it's clear, so that we can clearly articulate that at the end of November.
December.
Or the first meeting in December, or whatever that might be. That's just.
All right.
But my question, Commissioner, is that if we do it to the end of December, then so we're going to come back January and approve from January to July or whatever it is?
Right. That's just what I'm proposing, so that we come back closer to the end of the year and see where we are, and get some more reports, and find out what's going on, and see where we go with it. But, I mean, that's just my idea, it doesn't have to be what everybody.
Well, let me, let me, let me try to get some more discussion, so I'm not, we're not wasting our breath here. Is that the will here of this court?
I think, my opinion is, it's, that's a tough time to try to regroup. I think that, you know, this will be going on my fourth, I think, session since getting on this court, and two of those times, I think, we're kind of scrambling to get a legislative agenda put together, and we did it before without really anyone helping work as a consultant or as a lobbyist for us. And I tell you, the time that we did, it was, I think, much better, and it was smoother. Putting, putting us, you know, at the start of a session, I think, is very difficult, I think, for those that, that were asking to enter into a contract for the next few months. And then, I'm sure there's always gonna be, you know, lobbyists that are willing to take on a group, you know, for work starting in January, but I, I'd really like to know what, what is, how does this work, you know, in our plan? I mean, I anticipate having a, a meeting on our legislative agenda really by next month. I mean, I would think October's the time to do it. I mean, some counties have already been doing it for quite a while now, in planning for what kind of bills, local bills, we would be in favor of that directly impact Nwessis County in our interest. So that, that kind of worries me on that, but, I mean, I'm, I'm gonna support the contract as presented, and then I'll, I'll listen to the rest of the court as well, so.
John, I just think you never know how statewide elections are gonna go, and we may have to make some changes on this, on this team. We have a certain amount of money budgeted. I think they both do a great job, but I think it's, I think we have to wait and see how these statewide elections go, just to be real candid, to see if we, if we're appropriately represented. I, I mean, that was all I was trying to do. I mean, they're gonna continue to work, that's why I said extend them through the end of the year, to continue to develop. Our legislative agenda is not going to change. It's going to matter, it's gonna be a matter of whether our legislative team changes. And you're exactly right, people take things like this on the fly. If we have our legislative agenda established and put forth, which we're not gonna stop doing that, that's why I wanted to extend them through December, and our agenda's not gonna change, but our, you know, all due respect, our team may have to. I mean, we need, we need to look and see how these statewide elections go, to see if we need to reposition ourselves.
I think it's, I think it's an interesting prediction...
Not a prediction. It is not a prediction.
That you've got, that our state leadership might change, but I will say...
No, it's not a prediction, Judge.
I know, but that's what you're saying, you say you may have to pivot.
We have to look at it. We have to look at everything. We have to be realistic.
Okay, well, my concern is, and I think that, I mean, you, you bring up a point, that it could be valid. Having said that, you know, because you've worked in the legislature, that bills that get filed early have the best chance of success. Our legislative team that we have now has a great relationship with our legislative delegation. That is who they'd be working with, and we work across the aisle. That's something that, that we do here in South Texas. This team knows our legislative delegation, they know their staff, they're already expecting an agenda so that that can be worked on. It would be strange to think that it would change in December, and that would really set us back. If you had new people to have to learn new staff and new relationships, I just think that's not in the best interest of Nwessis County. But, again, if you, if we will permit, we'll do it. Well, we've got the motion, and, and let us try it this way. I just feel like we all know that the bills that need to get filed, you know, and the motion, and the, the ones that you wanna jo- join in on, you know, are the ones that you do in the fall before the January. It's too late in January.
Well, I sure don't know why we would wanna go, I certainly don't know why we're gonna go to September of next year.
Well, I mean, we can change that.
That's five months past the session.
You can, you can change that. I think it was just, that's how it was presented, but it can be modified to the end of the session.
Yeah.
I would be happy with that.
End of the session makes sense.
I mean, a lot of people don't do it till later, because the governor doesn't sign the bills till later, right? And a lot of people don't do that, because there's a lot of cleanup, but we could do that, and that would be in keeping with our previous, usually we do it through June, I think, session usually ends...
Ends in May.
But then he signs in June, and, again, we could do that. We could have that look again and say that it ends June, what, fifteen? June, June five, I mean?
I, I like June, because also I think that gives us a chance for them to give us a, a wrap-up, right, to come in after the session to kind of have debrief and regroup, and it doesn't go all the way to September thirty. I like that, that it shortens it up. I like that idea. I mean, if...
I mean, we could, we could, I could, I'll amend to my motion, which is pending, that the supplemental agreement be amended to, is June fifteenth adequate? I mean, that gives us one court time to he- hear from the wrap-up. I'll just say June fifteenth.
That's more reasonable to me, Judge.
All right, I think it's reasonable.
Sounds good.
And motion, and John, will you read a second? Second from Commissioner Mattis. And all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Okay, where we going?
June fifteenth?
June fifteenth.
Of twenty-three.
So starting now to June fifteenth?
Yes.
Not to September next year, right?
All right.
Thank you. All right, pose same sign. And the next item is item number five. It's personal services contract with Tomas Duran for employee health insurance. Yes, sir?
To be clear, that was for Shipton and Romo.
That was for Lorenzo's purposes, yes.
Yeah, just to be clear.
One item, item number four. Thank you. Personal services contract with Tomas Duran for employee health insurance benefits management for fiscal, the new fiscal year, which, of course, begins on October one, so we're trying to get ready here. I don't believe there's any changes, as I saw in my bed, in my agenda book.
That's correct. That's correct, Judge.
No, no changes here.
Judge, just a clarification on that one?
Absolutely.
Um, and, and I'm, I'm moved to pass this too, just for, to get it on the discussion thing, but I think it's important to note, because I do get a couple of questions about this every once in a while. The reason we did this, or do you do this, is because we want to make sure that people aren't making, and I don't mean to be taking people, money out of people's pockets, but we, we did this with this, and we did this with property casualty, where now we're paying someone instead of paying commissions, so that we feel like we're getting the best prices, and we aren't getting something from someone that's getting a huge commission. So I get that this is a, a large amount of money, but I think it's, it's, it's well-earned, and I think it's like way more than paid for itself over the years, because we aren't paying, because with our property casualty, we were paying like hundreds of thousands of dollars in commissions until we changed that system to, to bring in the, the company we brought in there, and that was kind of on the heels of already having done it this way on, on, on our health. So I do think it's just kind of important to say that, so the constituents know, this, this saves us money. This has saved us money in the decisions we've made, this has saved us money in the commissions we don't pay. So I want to make sure everybody understands that, and that was all I wanted to say on that, Judge.
Thank you.
Still move.
Uh, I'll need a second, I'll, I'll second, and, oh, I'm sorry. Commissioner Chesney was the first, and his will be the second.
It's fine, didn't I?
Okay, Commissioner Gonzalez will be the second. And all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose same sign. Okay, great. Now, we're gonna have a little bit of discussion about the auxiliary court. This is a court that was funded from OCA, the Office of Court Administration. They gave a certain amount of funds to be able to establish an auxiliary court. Just think of it as an extra court, so that we could start moving the backlog of cases. We do not do anything with these funds, except for acknowledge that they're coming our way, and this comes from the state, Dale.
And how much was it, Judge? I don't have anything.
Was it like nine hundred thousand, Dale?
Nine hundred thousand, if I'm correct. It's, it's around that number of OCA.
Yeah.
So this was, help me, because I don't have anything in my packet, is this a, is this a new funding that we just got?
It's a new grant through the Office of Court Administration, they get some money from, from ARPA, as the, uh, the TIDC has received some funding, so, so they wanted to get this to, to give some of our, the larger courts that are, are, are behind us, as, as, as we, so set the money to, to try to catch up.
This is a one-time thing, this, if we, so we have to...
Well, we don't, and we don't, this is all outside our purvey. This is just, the only where it gets interesting is right where this agenda item is, is that we need to house them.
Right, but I'm just saying, this is a deal where, this is being run through the Board of Judges? No.
Well, Judge Maderi, as the presiding judge of the Fifth Administrative Region, applied for this, and OCA granted it, and again, this, this, it comes from ARPA funding, through the state, state through the agency, agency through the regions, and this is, they will be running the whole show.
Yeah, it is a one-year grant. It's a one-year grant.
It's a one, yeah.
And meaning, and I know that I'm sure...
We're gonna move cases for the next year to try to decrease the backlog, and then we'll see what, what this legislature does to continue the funding to OCA, because, of course, you know, one year's not enough.
Right, and, and included in this is money for this auxiliary court to be built, so we're gonna talk about spending some of that on...
The auxiliary court just covers the, the lawyers, the, the, the staff, it doesn't include any billing.
It doesn't, it doesn't, through the space. So, for example, the auxiliary court could be the fifth floor. You could say that the fifth floor courtroom is our auxiliary court.
And so, they're going to appoint a visiting judge?
Yes.
That's correct.
The visiting judge will be appointed, yes.
Okay, and, and then...
And this covers that, that cost as well.
Okay, because again, I just didn't have anything in my packet with any kind of background on it. I, I've talked to Judge Maderi about this a long time ago, but I didn't, I don't remember getting all the specifics, so, or, I mean, I remember back then, but it's been a while. So there's no financial obligation to this court today? This is just about saying we can let them use the fifth floor, which...
That is correct. There are no, there are no, no cash match to this grant, that's correct.
That's correct.
What, what do we, we can't use the fifth floor?
Well, we're just, we're, we're creating that awareness that you all like. We're creating the opportunity to have the awareness about the discussion of the auxiliary court. It is an important opportunity that we have here to move cases. What, what does that do? Decompress or diminish the amount of people that are in our jail? So it's a wonderful thing, but of course, we need to be ready for where this auxiliary court be placed. We wanted to make sure that you had the opportunity to have awareness, because if you'll remember, it came in the exact same week as the TIDC ARPA grant, and sometimes people go, well, I already know about that. Well...
This is different.
This is different.
That's why, that's what's bringing it up.
And again, we don't have anything to do with the mechanics of it, but we did want you to know that, that...
Well, also some of the discussion, maybe use the hundred-fifth this or quark, since he's only here half, half, you were between, he has a Clayberg, so...
That's correct. Judge Pulcher's courtroom, you know, is not always used.
Yeah, right, 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 because he's in Kingsville. So what, I, I mean, what are we...
So Aday...
So right now, he's just trying to decide if the fifth floor will be in agreement with the court to use, put right there the auxiliary court. And Juan is coming, because he already looked into it, and he estimated around twenty thousand to be able to, um, um, give the, the space. Yes, to allow to have the staff there.
Could you call him? Because I think it has to do with just the, nobody's really used that courtroom as, for a judge in a long time, Commissioner Chesney.
It's upgraded a little bit.
No, the courtroom is great. It's the, it's the facility of the judge.
Pretty cool.
That's correct.
The last case was about three years ago.
You what?
I believe the last case in that court was about three years ago.
Right.
But why is that? Because, I mean, it has a judge's room, and, I mean, I used it when I was on judge. I mean, it was cool.
It's very, it just needs small ADA stuff.
I just didn't know why it hadn't been used, is more what I was asking. Is it because of COVID, or...
Well, we used it. I'll be honest with you, I, we've used it quite a bit. I myself was a witness in a trial in, a year ago in that, in that courtroom.
I still think, you know, it got me wrong.
It does, it does get used.
I still think we ought to move that thing to where we use it as courtroom, and we move our offices over there, so we have some more security, but I know that's, that's on the wish list, so.
It's on the wish list.
Yeah, I know.
So Juan is here, because he looked into the space.
And again, the reason we want to put it on there is if there is money that's needed, then we want to make some appropriations. Okay, Juan, we're here to talk about the auxiliary courtroom, and there may be an opportunity where we may need to use the fifth floor, but also, just so you know, we may be using that hundred-and-fifth courtroom as well, but we want to make sure that if the fifth floor is needed, what would we need to do, Juan?
Are we talking about the same one?
The auxiliary court.
Uh, so are we talking with the one that we're cutting up the space into two, to two offices, or is this a different one?
This is the...
It's the fifth floor courtroom for the auxiliary court?
Yeah.
The one that you said, you estimated like twenty thousand.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I'm sorry. Okay, yes, this is a, a space in the fifth floor. It's a, it's an office space, or it's really a conference room, and what we're doing is, uh, what we had looked at with, with Aday and, and the other staff, is that we would build a wall and create an office space for the, for, I guess, for the, for the judge.
The visiting judge.
For the visiting judge, and also have a space for a court manager or the bailiff. And we're estimating about twenty...
That's correct.
We're estimating about twenty thousand to do.
Okay. And, um, okay?
So right now, we, we're looking into maybe the grant could cover the, the costs, but if not, we need to use funds from thirty-three hundred, that's a department that they'll provide to, to them?
Actually, we, we, last legislative session, the legislature passed a new law where we, we have a new fee coming in that's, that says court facility fees. We received about seventy-five thousand dollars, so we have funds there to cover it.
Okay, so I guess my motion would be that if needed, right? That the judges be, have the opportunity to use the fifth floor courtroom as needed, and that the work be commenced for the, you know, the, the visiting judge to have that space, along with a court manager or bailiff, and that the funds be used from this particular fee.
Yes, yes.
Which is fund thirty-three hundred.
No, no, thirty-three hundred is general fund. We have a special revenue fund, we're, we're now accounting for, which is called court facility funds.
Okay, for those, okay, so it's different. Court facilities.
What number is that fund?
I don't know the number, the, it's a new department in Fund thirteen, uh, because we just started receiving the funds, our, our court, what do we call it?
Let's call it court facilities fee.
It's called court facility fee, is what it's called.
Court facility fee fund.
Right, fee fund.
I second that motion.
Thank you, and all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, pose same sign.
Yes, ma'am.
We'll get, uh, we'll get Judge Maderi alerted, and she will probably have to initiate the, the request, you know, through the PO, in order to get that accomplished.
Yes, ma'am, I think the timeline is what, two to three weeks?
Two to three weeks, soon as you can.
Yes, ma'am, we're taking it. Thank you, Commissioner.
All right.
Juan, just work with my staff, we'll make sure you have the right, right department numbers.
The right department numbers?
Money.
Okay, all right, we're gonna move along to, for fear of jinxing it, we're doing great on time here. Discuss and consider interlocal agreement with Nwessis County, Nwessis Center for Mental Health and Intellectual Disabilities, providing the CIT officers and related matters. You'll remember that this one was...
I'd like to table this one here. I just got paperwork on it late yesterday afternoon, I was in the field. I just got it this morning, so, uh, I need to read the, the agreement, everything that's in there, because I would have asked them to send me a copy earlier, if they didn't, but I, I, we're talking here about the two officers that we provide. This is not the two additional officers, right?
Right.
Just the two.
Just two.
Just two.
Just two that we currently have.
That's correct.
And this is under M, M H I D, so I, I'd just like to have time to read the contract and everything. I'm not ready to vote on it today, so...
And I'm, can I just, before he makes his motion to table, can I just ask a question? So, Aday, when you were going through all this, I think there was some, well, not, not a motion, but some direction from the court that said, hey, we voted on all this?
That's correct.
And, and this should cover one hundred percent of the...
To the salaries and benefits, including benefits. That's correct. And that's what it changed right now, we included that, everything, and then...
Automobile, all what kind of, what about stuff like that? Like everything that goes with these officers, like.
That's correct. So that includes if we go to, oh, let me see.
Should be.
No, I I I know it should. I just I want to make sure it's clear.
And while she's looking for that for clarity, Jenny, this is the one that we were waiting on. You were, you've been, you've reviewed this document, you helped.
We've been coordinating between um, the constable and between M H I D.
Yeah.
I don't know that an actual additional vehicle is covered.
Yeah, that's not part of it.
Fuel and benefits is covered.
Right. The vehicle comes from our general pool of vehicles that we have. So when you need a vehicle and you're inside law enforcement, we have that mechanism and it's with our fleet.
Well, but still, if, I mean, that should be should be covered, whether it's the cost of the the amount. Because we pay for those. We well, we pay for those those vehicles through a leasing program. So when we add something, that adds to the cost of leasing. So it may only be five hundred dollars a month or something, whatever we lease these programs for, I don't know. But to me, if if these are going to be one hundred percent mental health officers, then they need to be one hundred percent paid by in mental health. And again, what was reflected by Johnny Hip when he was here was there are, there's enough money in those funds to cover this.
Are vehicles allowed to be covered under your?
Under this agreement, commissioners, there is payment of mileage. The mileage was intended to cover the the mileage in the vehicle and the cost of the vehicle. And the officers, commissioners are, they're not full time. I mean, when they're not doing CIT work, they're doing law enforcement work.
No, they're full time. They better be full time. That was the deal. It's supposed to be full time.
Yeah, no, they're.
There's a full time, that's correct.
Maybe I'll let Constable talk about it because the Constable was to go. I sat through the meeting where M H I D and the Constable worked out the terms of this agreement. But I probably don't want to get too off, too far off the road. And maybe they need to talk about the details.
This is acceptable, actually. That's an acceptable because that that is wear and tear on the vehicles. And and that to me is is that I didn't, that's why I was asking. So that would be something that instead of, then you could do mileage. But but yeah, I want to hear from the Constable too because clearly, what I've been told repeatedly is that this is one hundred percent mental health officers. And he's shaking his head, yes.
And I'm and I'm seeing corrected.
Okay.
To the extent if the officers are used for something else, M H I D is not going to be responsible for that amount of time. I am assured, however, that there is plenty of work to keep them occupied completely.
Right, so, right. So then, I don't know what, where the ex, I guess if, God forbid, like some catastrophic, but I mean, it shouldn't be anything other than like really catastrophic. I mean, because you're saying there, you've got plenty of work for these mental health officers, right?
Correct.
So you're you're using them one hundred percent for mental health.
Hundred percent, yes, sir.
Okay.
So the only, the only way they would be pulled off is a shooting.
Yeah, I mean.
Something catastrophic.
Yeah, I mean, it had, yeah, but.
And myself and Mark had worked out the detail, I'm sorry. So the maintenance and the fuel is covered in in the site, I believe it's sixty-two and a half cents a mile.
So can you speak a little?
The uh, the compensation for the the fuel and maintenance, I believe it's like sixty-two point five cents.
It's with the state, so it it allows with the state. And if it stay increases, it's going to be the same. Yeah, they're going to be increasing that one. That's correct.
Language in here.
Yes, it's on page ten of ten, uh, seven, I'm sorry, seven or ten. It's a compensation.
So it covers the salary of both officers. It covers the incidentals, the fringe benefits, insurance, stuff like that. And I believe the number is one fifty-five, one hundred fifty-five thousand and change.
It's only one car for both officers, right?
No, it's a vehicle for each officer.
Why would they work, they work different shifts? Why can't they use the same car?
Because we already have two vehicles assigned to them.
That's not the, that's not the question. Uh, if if we got two officers and one works in the daytime, one works in the evening, why can't they use the same equipped vehicle?
Well, they could. It's just getting the vehicle to each officer.
In other words, they take them home and back. So they just come in and, right, I mean, they get home and back.
They're correct. They are take home vehicles.
Right, they they take them home, they take them back, they come and go. But I mean, as long as.
Again.
According to what I hear, Mr. Hip.
It's covered under the agreement.
As long as I hear Mr. Hip saying, everything's covered.
Correct, that's correct.
Yeah, we work on that.
Right. So I'd like to be able to, again, the whole concern here is we don't have a scheduled meeting, although I hope that changes before October twelfth. We have a new fiscal year coming up. I'd like to pass this subject to. If you have any concerns, Commissioner Gonzalez, with the details uh, in the contract, this you can, we can address those immediately with the county attorney.
Yeah, we'll be subject to.
All right, I'll be happy to do that, subject to.
We did just get it, I mean, to confirm. I mean, I just, I just got it too, so I mean, it was not, I didn't have time to read it last night, so I'm sorry. I tried. I think we just, anyway.
Okay, so I will make a motion uh, to pass this supplemental agreement. I'm sorry, it's called an interlocal agreement between two agencies, between mental health and intellectual disabilities and the CIT officers. And I'd like a second.
And Judge.
And I'm sorry, subject to the review of of the contract. If you have any issues, we would, we would stipulate that we would bring those back and and address them at the time.
Judge, could we do it this way instead? Could we give maybe a timeframe to where that way it doesn't delay the signing too much more than it has to? But you don't sign it and we have to bring it back? I don't know, whatever, whatever timeframe is.
I think seven days is beyond adequate.
No, no, I, to where like, um, what's today? Today's the.
I'll just say next week, next Wednesday.
I was just going to put a date.
In other words, Constable, I will, I will not, I'll, I'll sign and they'll hold, okay? So that it's it's sitting here, it will not get processed until there, a week's time. That'll give Commissioner Gonzalez a chance to read the entire document and ask Jenny Dorsey, you know, to
Yeah.
any questions he might have.
Say by five P M. on Wednesday, a week from now?
That's right.
Okay.
That's that's fair.
That would be part of the motion, so.
And that is part of the motion, Lodenso. And then you'll second it?
Yes.
Okay. And all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Again, Jenny, I want to, I mean, I I appreciate you all working on this because this is a, this is a big difference in where we were at this time last week. So thank you, Constable Iday, Jenny. I know it was a lot of work to get this ready in a week. And whoever else worked on, I'm not trying to leave anybody out.
Weeks, yeah.
Judge, whoever know it, Maggie, everybody, I'm just saying thank you to everybody who did it. Because um, this was a, this is a huge difference from last week and this week. And I know Iday and I had several conversations during the week to talk about it as well. And I know Commissioner Gonzalez made phone call. I mean, so everybody really got involved in this and got it done in a week. And so I I understand why we didn't get the contract till late. And I will definitely be able to go back and have time to read that as well.
Your Honor, on this issue, we need to make sure that, because my staff will be the one that will be billing the M H I D that we need to work with the Constable to make sure we have a mileage log if mileage is an issue. Have a what? Mileage log.
There is on beginning of shift and end of shift, there's a mileage log on our.
You'll have to provide that to my staff.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you, Constable. Um, next, this is the, remember, we had our public hearing first. Now we're going to have the uh, actual agenda item that deals with the adoption of the order approving the county clerk records, management archival preservation and restoration plan for twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three. Lodenso, I'll I'll refer to you. Anything here that um.
Judge, so moved.
All right, thank you.
Second.
I've got a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. The next one is related. This puts the fee in place for the fiscal year. Again, we do this every year.
Second.
And I'll need to reflect for the record that it's Texas Government Code Section one eighteen oh two five that allows such a fee. I've got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Wow, very good, very quick here. I know a bathroom break is imminent, but I'm going to try to get a few more done, okay? Um, I was thinking page six, if that might lead you guys to to being so inclined to to recess there. So item number ten, I see Ida coming to the podium.
Judge, motion to pass.
Thank you. Look, Ida, leave quick. Motion to pass and a second by Gonzalez. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. The only thing I want to say on the record is it's important, Iday wants me to say it, is that it's coming from C O. twenty fifteen, from my C O.'s.
Right.
And I, this gives me a chance, gentlemen, to remind everybody that because of I R S rules and regulations, let's make sure we really tackle the old stuff, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Um, item number eleven is discuss and consider the funding of the developmental, I'm sorry, the Nuances County Development Commission staff. We have one um, employee there. It's a senior clerk, not sure, is it, is it a two, Dale?
What was the question, Your Honor?
The senior clerk at the N C D C, is it's a clerk position?
Yes.
One position. And and you'll recall that it's not in the budget to put any county dollars in. But I believe they'll have enough money to um, without our dollars. But she's still a county employee. So my hope here is a motion to uh, direct um, you know, to have her stay as a county employee, just recognition that she wouldn't be paid from the general fund. It has to come from the funds that that they have in place, right? And there's still dollars for her available through December?
Yes.
Okay.
So who?
One person only. She's a clerk.
So but there's dollars available through December, I thought.
Through December. Yeah, I just need to make sure because it's not in the budget. We needed to make sure that there was clarity that, because you know, she's got a county.
No, but you're just saying to.
Make sure that those funds pay her through December.
Which, okay, why wouldn't they? I don't, I mean, I'm not, I'm not sure why we, maybe I'm just not understanding why we need this.
Because it's not part of the budget, the transfer for the N C D C.
Well, so is this additional money?
Yeah. Yeah, so this is, so this is an additional funds because we already have, uh, what that is what Dale is saying that we have some funds right there, so we're going to pay her through December with those funds.
So these are not budgeted funds for next year? These are just extra funds you're using?
Well, we actually have the budget in the Fund thirteen to cover this for for one year up to the one hundred twenty-five thousand from the port. But if they don't receive any additional funding, then that's where it'll fall short.
All right, so we carry it through December. This is just to make sure everybody's on the same page that.
So we're not adding any funds, but we're just.
This is awareness, making sure that we've got, it it's a little bit of a cleanup because you're not in the budget. But we're going to make sure that we're going to train, I mean, Iday gave me the number.
The person can can continue to be through December.
I don't have any backup in my in my agenda, so I don't want to feel like everybody feel like I'm asking silly questions. But I have nothing, again, in my agenda, so I'm having to ask these questions.
Yeah, I understand.
So.
Understand.
So the.
So what we can do is like, I can gather all the info, all the information, you know, to show the the data, you know, the funds that are available and how much is going to be through December.
So Dale, where are these funds? Tell me again, I'm sorry, but where are these funds coming from?
The funds that we received for the our development commission are the the money we received from the port of the hundred and twenty-five thousand. And then if they do any fundraising for the period of time, any additional funds they receive for that time, because they're a five oh one C three.
But right now, we we're trying to prove it till December, so we're going to get those funds.
The funds come from the port.
They're in the fund already. This is just awareness that you're not paying for, with any general funds at all. Just the funds that are transferred in the account.
The port.
So we really don't have to do?
You don't do anything, but again, we're trying to make sure that everybody is on the same page here.
Okay, so if we don't have to do anything, let's just move forward. I I don't want to.
All right, that's fine.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's okay, motion to table, I guess, to be.
Well, well, that I I think that you don't want to table it because you want to make sure that
Well, there's no action.
There's no action item. I think that's a better thing to say. There's no action, Dale, just to make sure that Dale knows that she still gets paid because there's still funds there. All right, okay. All right, mo, do you mind, uh, it's eleven forty. I know the staff has had no breaks. How about a motion to recess for the next, you know, just a bathroom break? Please come right back. It's not a, it's not a lunch break, just a quick, quick facilities break. I've got a motion, you'll second. Well, yes, you will second.
Ten, ten, ten minutes?
Ten minutes.
Okay, second, motion, whatever you need.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Judge Madas, it's eleven fifty-six A M. still. And our next item is going to be the sheriff and constable fees for twenty twenty-three. It's pursuant to Section one eighteen, one thirty-one of the government code. We also have to set these fees every year. And basically, you'll recall from last last week, we um, you know, we tabled the item to get some more information. As I understand it, we're allowed to set the fees so that we can recover our costs. No more than that, but to be able to recover costs. And so in that vein, there was no recommendation given to us at the time last week that any fees were being recommended to be changed. But what we know is that there had been a study done previously and we had made some changes so that week was, this week was the opportunity to see if we could, you know, move these fees into what we know is the right dollar amount to cover our costs. And so that's what we'll be looking at. And I'm looking for some experts here to kind of guide us, Dale.
My staff and I went through some different evaluations. At no time will we be able to do a hundred percent of costs. We were still looking at some information, trying to get from the sheriff's office and Constable on 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 actual serving of these papers' value. But we did went in and did a comparison between our our fees and those of Cameron County, Fort Bend County, Galveston County and Williamson County, which are those kinds similar to our size, a little bit smaller, sometimes a little bit bigger. As you see from the list, we have most of our fees are higher and some are significantly higher than most of the majority of the counties. And with this evaluation, we believe the fees that we have set at the moment right now for Nuance County are are valid and we don't believe an increase is necessary.
Okay, so you you looked at everything, you looked at everybody and you think we're on par?
Yes.
Do you think we're covering the cost of doing business?
We're never cover, we're never going to cover the cost.
Yeah, we're going to do that.
Well, I think that that's our.
So how do we, I mean, how do you figure we're on, I mean, how do you figure then not, we shouldn't be raising anything then? So we're going to lose, continue to lose money on these things?
Well, we we actually talked about the the, because we we didn't get a full number of the actual serving of papers because we get, we have the total cost of the of the Constable's time. And we had to try to evaluate how that time, how much of the time is actually of the serving of the papers, which is what what we're trying to to accomplish. And we're working with the sheriff's office, Constable's office, we were never able to get a full evaluation of their time spent on these serving papers. So without that particular uh, variable, we didn't fill, we had the true uh, variable of what we have. So we went in and did a comparison of counties similar to our size and determined what our fees are compared to what their fees are. And most of our fees are higher than the majority of the counties we 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 surveyed.
And which counties were those?
Cameron County, Fort Bend County, Galveston County and Williamson County.
Any of those done any evaluations of how much the cost analysis is?
We we reached out and they they saw they were providing us a list. They haven't, didn't tell us when the last time they did a review. But if they're similar to Nuances County, the sheriff and Constable have to evaluate these every year.
I I just, we continue to do this at a loss and not deal with it. But if that's the will.
Well, I I have an idea if if we know, if you can certify to the court that we're not covering our costs, what if we were to um, you know, go up by ten percent across the board?
I think that's pretty conservative and I would support that. I mean, I, and I think it's still going to be way less than what we're.
It's still, and then we really need to do a review. Um, so that we can really see. I I mean, I hear you. It may be that we set a trend at the other counties, um, but um.
I would, that's a motion, Judge, I'll second it.
Okay, a motion and a second. As long as you can tell us, Dale, that 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 there's not a, that we're not covering costs currently.
Well, again, we have to make sure we would have to track every time if a a Constable or sheriff's officer actually serve papers from when they received it, when they distributed, to know that much of the time, how much time they spent, so.
It's hard.
So it's very, very difficult.
But as long as we're making a judicious decision here, that if, okay, all right, well, then I make that motion.
Second.
And there's a second.
Like more like five to ten dollars a rate?
Well, it would be the the highest fee we charge.
If we, if a two twenty-five fee, that would go up two dollars, twenty thousand cents.
No, twenty-two dollars and fifty cents.
Twenty-two dollars, ten, ten percent, yes.
Lodenso, you have some things to add.
I'm sorry, uh, just clarify the motion.
Sure, it's it's to increase by ten percent across the board?
The fees.
To cover the, to cover the cost of life and doing business here in Nuances County?
Well, to cover some of the cost.
Right.
Not, nowhere near all of the cost.
It's because we're not covering the cost, the true cost.
Covering something, something better than that.
Yeah, so the most, the most we're going up would be twenty-two dollars and fifty cents. And I mean, this is a, an ask, but maybe you can help us later uh, track so that we know, you know, by mid-year what we were able to to bring in revenue wise. And also, you know, this does help offset some of the needs that come mid-year that we don't know. There's always costs that come mid-year inside our law enforcement. I want us to, I want us to have a real savings, um, a real reinvestment in 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 our law enforcement with these fees. Law enforcement services. Okay, well, any other discussion? Chief Cook, um, you're agnostic about it, it's okay to, thank you, sir. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, post same sign. Okay. All right, um, in that case, we're going to move on to item number thirteen. This is a second amendment with forensic pathology staffing for continuation of reports for the medical examiner's office. Uh, I'll I'll yield to Iday and Jenny, everything I know is in order legally. But this is to extend the the timeframe. Is that correct?
That's correct, Judge.
In other words, I'm coming to the mic. In other words, it gives them more time to complete their work.
Yeah, and assist them with, I mean, providing more assistance to the medical examiner.
Okay, all right, and I'll make the motion to accept the Second Amendment?
And again, I'm sorry, I...
Go ahead.
This is the one that, that was working on the other cases before?
This is the one that we, with the company that we have for, take, get licensed cases, that's correct.
Was there supplemental information, does any, I don't have this on my agenda either.
The contract, you don't?
I think it's in there, I've got it, it's Amendment Number Two.
Number eight, 13, right?
Um, yes, that's correct.
So just so you know, Commissioner, it takes us to the, takes us to behind page 13, tab 13?
Yeah, so I'm on. Can I just, can we just hold till the end of the meeting, I'll just come back to it? I'll look at it, but it's not long, I'd just like to read it real quick, that's okay?
Sure, and also, can you represent, I don't believe there's any changes that are substantive, Jenny, to add to this agreement, there's nothing, no change from the First Amendment to the Second?
No, this takes us through...
September 23?
Yeah.
Right, but I mean, just the clauses?
No.
Right, it's just a time, Commissioner Chesney, all the other ones I can represent to you are the same, it's just a timeframe.
I just, I'll have it done before the end of the meeting.
You got it.
And then, and that way, the forest could be here to explain, expand more.
Yeah, that's fine. I just want everyone to know, it's really just a matter of, we're extending their contract with time, okay. Item, we're going to hold on that one, Lorenzo.
Excuse me, Judge?
Yes.
I just got a request, can we do 14 and 22 at the same time, public works as other matters on hand? I thought I did, I'm sorry.
I heard it, I'm, that's fine, as long as that's fine.
Okay.
Okay. I just got to double-check something real quick. Is item 22, anything, Jenny, that needs to go to executive, or are we all good here?
I think we're all good.
That's all I needed to know, I appreciate that. So the answer is yes, we can, for the interest of their time, we'll handle 14 and 22, back-to-back, out of order, obviously, for 22.
Thank you, Judge.
So this is a item that has to do with the acceptance of a warranty deed from Epic Crew Terminal Company. It is for the, what we're calling the Robstown-Pecos Lane Extension, and this is a 1.83-acre road, along with, well, I see, it's a 1, it's a 1.83-acre road boundary and a 1.03-acre boundary, out of a particular survey that's known as the Gregorio Farias Abstract, that's just the legal description of it. And so the issue is that we need to consider completing the connection to Pecos Lane from County Road 48, or if they need some assistance, this would give the court the opportunity to fund a third-party contractor to complete County Road 48 to the Pecos Lane Extension. The purpose of this is to get that emergency road open, that was part and parcel of this court making a determination that we needed to have an emergency route of egress, given the industrial corridor that flanks a neighborhood. And so this gives that certainty that there is an emergency access road out there for the part of Epic, they are done, and we need to finish this County Road 48. Juan is here, do you need assistance to finish County Road 48, and would you like funding for that?
Yes, ma'am, in regards to the first item, Judge, we are recommending the acceptance of the warranty deed.
Okay.
Is that okay?
Sure, that's, that's what you want to do, that, let's do that right now. I'll motion to accept the warranty deed as recommended. Is there a second? Okay, all those in favor signify by saying, I'm sorry, any discussion or questions? Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose same sign. Okay, and now the completion so that we can actually open the road, do you need some assistance there?
Yes, ma'am, on that one, Judge, I know we've been, we have three miles of road right now that we have open, and we need, we're trying to finish up those roads, we're finding, we're having constituents call us and farmers call us to, for us to, when is it, when are we going to complete it? But as we all know, the rain events have, has pushed us back on our, on our schedule, and it depends on when the court wants to get this road completed. Our timeline right now is maybe two, maybe three months out. I've been talking to Jerry to try and see when we can really get to it, and right now we've got a few roads out there that need to be completed, and also, we're also trying to keep up with the drainage improvements, especially now with these rain events, we're out there cleaning ditches and trying to, trying to clean some of these outfalls so that way the water can, can drain also.
Do you, I know it's hard to estimate, but could you provide an estimation as to, so that we could address funding?
Judge, I would, if I can, I mean, if I, I would need to put a pencil to it, Judge, I wasn't...
I guess, could you get, could you guide me if it's going to be over $50,000 or under $50,000?
You're about 100, about 100,000, between 50 and 100,000.
Okay, so it would need a procurement then?
Yes, ma'am, because the plan, well, probably would need a procurement. The plan was also, I know we've been coordinating with Commissioner Hernandez, with these improvements that Epic has done on the, on the ditches that they, that they've done on their road, we had a plan to excavate the ditches, and had some photos, but if you want to, I have a, a...
You can give it to Leah.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
But the bottom line is, you're saying it's the road plus?
Yes, ma'am, yes, ma'am.
Okay.
I want to do the road plus.
You want to do the road plus?
Yes, ma'am.
So, and, and so let me look how I worded, how would this worded. Okay, so what's nice is that we were very careful, and we did, we will be able to, first let me get one thing accomplished, which is a vote on the authorization of a method of procurement to get this done, and so...
This is 20.
So, and then we can talk about the scope in just a second, but, because let's, the, what Juan's going to say is that he's going to show us some pictures as to why we should do the connection plus, the plus is the drainage aspect of it.
Yeah.
So, is there, I'll make a motion to authorize the procurement of...
Is this still on 14, Judge?
Yes, it is. The completion of County Road 48, and we'll get to the scope in just a second, but this way Michael's put on notice that he'll have to get a, an RFP out to get this construction done.
Are you saying, Judge, a procurement?
No, he does not.
Judge, excuse me, are you saying to get a procurement for a contractor?
Well, yes, because Juan just said he couldn't do it, he needed some help.
No, no, what he said was it's going to take some time, and doesn't know when exactly they're going to get to it, because they have other work to be done, and there's not that much of a, of an emergency, all, in case of an emergency, although the fire department is perfectly able of removing the fence that's blocking the emergency road, but it's not that much of an emergency where we have to contract, a contractor to do that job when public works can take care of it.
And I think what you're going to show us now, the connection?
Yes, sir, yes, sir, I have an exhibit to kind of show what the plan is.
Yeah, let's take a look at your, let's, let's not disagree on the work, I mean, I don't think you're going to hear that anybody's disagreeing on the work that you're proposing. I'm disagreeing that there's not an emergency situation, it's been an emergency, we've been fortunate that nothing's happened, a gate, right now, there is no access, and people would be trapped, and we need to address that, we can maybe address that through a different means, I'm sure you can maybe come up with an alternative, but we shouldn't wait for three months.
But that road can be used as an exit if they have to, the fire department can remove the, the screen that's there, they can use it, it won't be as smooth because the connection hasn't been done yet, but they can use it.
Well, then we need to have, we need to have a discussion about that, but it's not about waiting for a fire truck to escape, if there's an explosion immediately, nobody's waiting for anything, you're going to get the heck out of there.
Well, they will get, they will get the heck out of there, Judge, I mean, they want to, they will, it's an emergency.
Well, again, we just have a disagreement, we can agree to disagree, Commissioner, on what safety means in our county, but I think it means getting it done, and this has been waiting, this, we, this is the first I've heard of, we've been waiting on, you know, other county roads to finish, this one is a priority for the county because it basically is an emergency evacuation, there are 17 tanks, there are two fractionators, there are high-powered, I mean, high-pressured gas lines, I mean, this is shocking that we wouldn't want to come up with an alternative analysis beyond, we'll wait for the firemen to remove a chain-link fence, go ahead.
Judge, what I didn't hear was, can y'all do this, or did you need a contractor?
We can, we can do it, Commissioner, but right now, we're about two to three months out.
Oh, because you're, okay.
Yes, sir, we've, we've got some roads, three miles worth of roads and drainage stuff, so, we've been, I've been coordinating with Belinda and telling her that we've been busy.
No, that's okay, so are you asking for a contractor on this?
Well, I asked him...
I was just trying to, that's what I'm saying, so are you asking for a, what are you asking for?
If, if, if we can wait, Commissioner, till two to three months, we'll, we'll get to this road. Another reason is I wanted to show in the, in the aerial, that I have the presentation, I did a little quick presentation, Commissioner, to kind of show you what, what we were planning with Commissioner Hernandez, we've been bidding out there and driving and looking at the, at these improvements, and kind of what we recommend, I think you just, you had it on What you see in the red on that, on that, and that's fine, what you see on the red is the, is improved road, the subdivision, the suburban acres, which is on the, on the bottom part of the, of the red line, and the blue lines that I, that are shown on there, those would be improvements to the drainage within the subdivision, some of these coves need, are going to have to get reset, we're going to have to, we're going to plan on sending our surveyors out there so we can shoot some topo with our GPS, and that way we can tie in to the, to the improvements that Epic has done, which, which in this case is going to assist, help a lot out in this, alleviate some of these drainage problems out in the subdivision, and also help out with, with, with the drainage problems that they have out there. So, and that's sort of the reason why, we wanted to go out there, go do a topo survey, put something on paper so where we can have everything, grades, everything, so we could reset some of those coves that are out there, and that's the reason why we're thinking that probably by, you know, December, January timeframe, we'll be out there doing some construction on this road. We can put up, right now, there's a, there's a fence out there with, that says, that says do not enter, which, which, which I'm going to, which is great, we can also put some barricades out there with some, some sandbags, if, if, at the request of the commissioners of the court. The only thing about it is that, that road, you want to go to the next slide, I'm sorry, just to kind of give you a depict, this is, this is looking at the, at the new road, looking, looking north, the elevation difference is about eight inches in elevation difference, so we would have to come back and taper the road, probably all the way up to the intersection to give it a nice, smooth transition, next slide, please.
How many feet, isn't it just like 50 feet, though?
No, ma'am, this, in order to make it, to...
Forget the smooth, just what was the connection, what was the request? Wasn't, wasn't the request, how, do y'all hear something?
Yes.
Hold on, let us get that taken care of.
Give her...
Okay, so I'm, we're, I want to ask about the connection, just tell me what the connection is, what is it that we need you to do? I know the drainage is going to be wonderful, but that's, that is an enhancement.
Yes, ma'am.
What about the actual, get the road open, what about that connection?
I was going to say, Judge, you go to the next picture, please? That way, Commissioner, that's, that's looking south from the other road, this is the connection point, it's about eight, it's eight inches in difference in elevation, in order for, for a car to give a smooth transition, you would have to go out anywhere from 150 feet to 200 feet in order to give that smooth transition, in order to meet engineering standards, and at the same time, when we're planning on doing this, it's just...
It's going to be wonderful.
And, and, and...
What about the actual... All those on mute, on line, if you would please mute, go ahead and force the mute, go ahead.
So in order for us to, in order for us to, to make that transition, we would have to meet the requirement, so we would have to go about 150 feet to 200 feet, so that way when somebody's driving at 20, 30 miles an hour, they won't, they won't hit a hump on that road, so, and at the, and at the same time, we're going to do those ditch cleaning and, and get the water out to drain to the, to the north.
Right, but do you not have time to do just the road right now and then wait on the drainage later?
Judge, like I mentioned earlier, we have, we have all our staff right now, all our, our equipment right now is spread out between here and Bishop, I say Bishop, but in the County Road 16, Jerry, 12, and then Ford 45, we have it on, and 45, and we have our grade aws somewhere out, so in order for us to demobilize from a project, it's going to cost the county money, so that's the reason why we're trying to keep all that heavy equipment there to finish it up, and then we can move all our heavy equipment to this job site so we can get it done and, and turn it around, our, our goal is to turn this project around pretty quick, so...
So when I asked you, when you came in, I said, hey, do you need some help? You said, yes, now you're telling me no, I'm confused.
Well, Judge, I mean, you asked if I needed some help, I mean, I...
He needs time, Judge.
No, I, excuse me, I'm asking him, did you like the, is this, because is three months going to turn into, you understand that the issue here was that we promised two years ago to get this done, and we've been holding our breath to make sure nothing bad happened out there, I don't want this to be on us, that we did not finish, is this, can, can people have egress safely in case of an emergency? And what can you do to make that available easily, to get that done?
Right now, no, there's, there's a hump there, so anybody that's going to drive there, it's going to pretty much hit a hump and then go over the road, so, no, at this time, we can't. We, like I said, we can, it can probably, we can put some barricades up there, just in case there is some type of, hopefully it doesn't happen, but if there's an incident, then they can just move the barricades out. The only thing about that is that somebody will go over there and move our barricades out if they're not permanently tied down, so you'll probably have somebody go out there and just remove them, kind of like what we're doing on some other project, but, you know, we're, we're looking at, we're looking at two to three months before we can get to this project.
Juan?
Yes, sir.
Do you recommend leaving this fence up the way it is? I mean, it's not that bad, it can be moved easily, no?
It, it can be, it can be removed easily, somebody can go in there and just cut it off and...
You mean, you'd have to have wire cutters in the middle of an emergency?
No, no, Judge, no.
Or just remove that...
In the middle of an emergency, how can they do it, Juan?
Yeah, I mean, one would be just leave the, the fence up, option number two is for us to put barricades up, but at the same time, putting up those barricades, we've had people move barricades out of the way.
I like the barricades, I'm, I'm going to err on the side of, of safety here.
And, and the other thing, Judge, is that when people are driving in this area and they move those barricades, they're, and if somebody's flying through here, they're probably going to lose a tire, they're going to lose a motor, or flip, or flip over, so, you know, that's the chances that we're going to, somebody's got to be there to control the traffic if something like that happens.
Well, how long have we, how long has it been since we, we've, again, I mean, this wasn't like yesterday that we got this request, we've been waiting on it, that's why it's come up.
I'm thinking it's about a month ago, Judge.
A month, over a month ago.
Yeah, and we, and like I said, we have had heavy rain event, so it's, it's held us up on some of these other projects, Judge.
Well, I'm...
Stephen, Judge, as Commissioner of Precinct One, I, I like the way Juan is working, I approve, you know, everything he's done, and I approve everything he says, if anything happens, then I'll take the responsibility, it's my precinct.
Yeah, I'm, it, so you, just so you know, you're not in charge, thank God.
I know you're not.
I thank God every day, you're not in charge of health and safety in this county.
I'm not trying to make money for other people, I'm not trying to get a photo up for campaign, okay?
Hey, enough.
This is what you're doing.
Enough, you're out of order, as, every day.
I'm out of order because I'm telling you the truth.
No, you're just plain...
No, I'm not.
Out of order.
I kind of agree with Commissioner Hernandez, I, I think Juan, I went out there, I looked at it myself, too, and, you know, I mean, it's, it needs to work, you know, but I mean, I know when I went to County Road 45 or 22, and, you know, there's a lot of work that needs to be over there, too, and those were already out there because they're already mobilized, so we just, you know, we take the road as they come, I mean, you can't blame him for every time that it rains, and, you know, I got stuff, I can't move either because it rained, I got, I, you know, I got some, some fast play that, I'm, I'm behind, I wanted another extension because of the rain, because of the weather, you know, so, I mean, it's not, you know, you're trying to blame one person for something that we all have in trouble with.
There's no blame, I'm trying to help the person, there's no blame here.
The thing is, why waste the money if you can get to it? You know, I just, I mean, it's going to come in two months, and if case of an emergency does, Judge, I was out there, too, you know, there's a way to get through it, but you're going to have somebody out there directing traffic the way it is right now.
Well, at the end of the day, it's going to take two months to procure it and bid it and everything else, so I'd say let's put a 45-day time limit on it, Judge, and let's make sure they get it, get to it in the next 45 days or so, is that reasonable? Can we do a quick, because that's going to be faster than procurement.
Well, I did want to ask Michael, I think that he's nodding his head.
It's going to be a lot faster.
Because of the, of the 100,000, I was hoping that the...
Yeah, I, I believe what I understood from Juan is, he can do the work on the road, he doesn't need any funding from the county, he was up here asking for some additional time to get to it, and if the court wants to put a 45-day window, and that's acceptable to Juan, then...
Well, it's not...
But that, but that only takes care of getting the road fixed.
Right.
And then y'all started a discussion about what to do in the interim.
Right, let me ask you a question, is the $100,000 price tag, or, and I know you're not guaranteeing it because you're just saying it's, you've given me a range, but did that include the ditches and the drainage, or was that just road only?
That was just road.
Road only.
Yes, ma'am.
So, because what you're saying is you can, you can do this within your road and...
We can do it within our budget, Commissioner.
Or we can go out, I mean, I'm, I mean, I'm a little hesitant to go out and spend extra money if he can get it done within the budget he's got, too, but, and again, Michael, I mean, it would take, it's going to take two months at least to get this thing procured and back out, right? I mean...
I, I wondered if it would satisfy any other exception, Jenny, to the emergency, you know, the, the idea that, I mean, this is...
I believe there was the proposition that some caliche could be put in the meantime, so there was not...
Yeah, we can, we can put some caliche in the meantime, Jenny, but if we still, it's still going to have a hump there.
But I might, I mean, how, I don't underst, okay.
I mean, I just, I'm looking for like real alternate analysis here, I mean, what are, I mean, make, give us something that's good.
If you can give me 45 days, we'll, we'll try and finish up those other projects and, and so we can move up on this project.
And get started on that?
Yes.
Okay, I mean, that's faster than we can procure it.
Yes.
And plus, we don't have to spend 100,000 bucks.
Yeah, give him about 45 days, and we'll take, we'll, we'll...
200,000, right, okay, well, yeah.
All right, so in, within 45 days, you're going to start the project?
We're going to start...
No later than the 46th day?
About 45 days, we'll start, 45, on the 45th day, we'll start moving out.
Okay.
Moving out.
We're moving out.
Mobilization.
Mobilization.
Right.
Is that okay?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, you got it.
Is that your motion, Commissioner?
That's okay with y'all.
I move for that motion.
Second.
Go ahead, Jerry.
I wanted to say something on this, I mean, you know, I know we're going to look
I wanted to say something on this, I mean, you know, I know we're going to look at for forty-five days. I also mentioned to several people, weather permitting, okay? Because if the weather is not good, we cannot work there no matter what. That's all I wanted to address to you guys.
That's fair, I mean, it's got to give them weather days, if you get rained out of.
You know what, you just come back to court, we're going to keep the forty-five days. Come back to court, I mean, we're not going to have exceptions to the exception. I mean, or, or make a new motion, because I want to be, no, you just come back to court. If there's a problem, if you can't keep to the forty-five days due to weather, come bring it back to us.
That's fine.
Don't start, don't, I don't want to, I don't want to, I want to have the court agree on what the basis is. This is an emergency road that had a real interest in getting it done first.
But this is going to get it done faster and anybody's, I, I think you got to have a weather day.
I hear you on the procurement.
I think you got to have it in a weather day, so I mean, I.
Right, but you'll, we'll, we'll know whether or not, we agree that there hasn't been enough weather to make that determination. We're directing you, not the other way around. This court can choose to agree or to disagree on a plan, but we get to set the parameters, not the other way around. That's what's wrong here. We've got to make sure that this is of high priority. And if it's not, let's just say it, let's just not say it, let, you know, but I think this is, this is absolutely critical that we address this road. We knew it was going to be finished in a certain time, we should have made plans for it, we didn't, and now we're stuck. And it has nothing to do with anything except for what our desire and our will is. And I had to get it on an agenda to make sure that it gets completed. So I'll take your forty-five days and let's move forward.
Why is it so pressing now?
It's been pressing.
No, you've never, you've never talked about it before.
Oh, my gosh, I just, you are.
Has nothing to do with it, Judge, I mean.
Okay, Commissioner Hernandez, stick to the, stick to the, the parameters of the, of the venue.
All you want to do is make a photo.
Thank you, Commissioner Hernandez.
Thank you.
Jerry, you can step aside now, what we're going to do is vote on this. There's a motion to have this complete within, to have mobilization done in forty-five days, is there a second?
I think they already motioned.
They seconded it already, thanks, Lorenzo. Who was it, just so I know, for the record?
Hernandez and Gonzalez.
All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, pose same sign, okay.
Judge, can I, can we get like two minutes for everybody to go get?
Yes, of course.
Just to get that, please.
Motion to recess. Motion to recess, you know what, I'll just, it's just a hold.
Like two minutes, just, it's all in my office, that's all I need to do.
Um, it's, uh, twelve twenty-eight, just take us off the record, Leah, for just two, three minutes. We'll be right back, don't anybody move, as they say.
Nobody move.
All those in favor, right, signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I didn't see it. We are going to go on to item number fifteen. This is a funding, uh, discuss and consider funding public school communications project from the American Rescue Plan Act funds. This is a project with West Oso ISD and Banquete ISD.
I thought we were going to do twenty-two.
You're absolutely right. We are, we're going to do twenty-two. That is the discuss and consider removal of the driveway of County Road fifty-two at thirty-six forty-five County Road fifty-two B at Valley View Drive. We've discussed this a few times, it's back on the agenda. And Juan has some information for us, and Jenny's got some information. We also have, um, a resource in the room. The attorney for the owner is with us, and so, um, let us begin. Juan, what is your background and then your recommendation?
Uh, yes, Judge, um, uh, this, we've been coordinating with Mr. Miller for, since December of last year regarding a driveway that's, that's, or on a property that's not platted. Uh, the, the driveway was installed, uh, we've been requesting for Mr. Miller that, to remove the driveway because it is a hazard. Uh, I know we came to court about a month ago to recommend removing the driveway. Um, at this time, uh, at the request, uh, we informed Mr. Miller that, or we put barricades to, to barricade off the driveway. Uh, we put some sandbags on that, on those barricades. Uh, since then, uh, the property owner has gone out there and, and removed those barricades. Uh, he moved them out of the way, uh, moved the barric, moved the barricade closer to his fence line. Uh, and he's been accessing that driver, driveway ever since. Um, we're recommending to court, um, to have Mr. Miller remove the driveway within ten days. Um, if the driveway is not removed within ten days, uh, the, the county will go out there and remove the driveway, and we will be billing, uh, Mr. Miller, uh, for, uh, the maintenance and equipment and manpower that we're having to remove the driveway. Uh, this is a text dot, pretty much a text dot standard, uh, type of, um, letter. And, uh, we, we follow text dot, and, uh, we're giving, uh, we would like to give that notice to, to Mr. Miller. I had some photos, but, um, I know y'all looked at them before.
Okay.
I don't know if y'all want me to look, uh, especially where he moved the sandbags and just kind of tossed them to the site.
Okay, um, do you have a response on behalf of the owner? And would you mind addressing the court? Just give your name for the, full name for the record and who you represent and, uh.
Yes, Your Honor.
And don't forget to use that mic because it helps us with those that are online.
Okay.
Thank you.
And, uh, I'm Randy Hill, I'm an attorney here in Corpus Christi. I'm actually retained counsel by the title policy, the title underwriter, uh, Mr. Miller has made a claim on his title policy. Um, and so therefore, I am Mr. Miller's attorney in this matter. Um, I'm a little behind the eight ball because the claim was made a little late. I've only been here, I've only been involved for about a month, a month and a half. And unfortunately, I had a trial in the mid, in the mid, in the middle of all this. I think after the last hearing, we talked about trying to come up with some solution that, in the interim, that, um, we could have, limit our access to the property. The biggest problem we got here is, is that we've got a landlocked piece of property. Mr. Miller has no other access other than what is right now in place on, uh, going out on County Road fifty-two. And however this happened, in the closing, um, there was a survey done, and at the time, that was the, I guess, the shown access that he thought he was going to have. So I, uh, I, as I talked to Jenny, I talked to Jenny yesterday about this, I, when I found it was back on the agenda for today. Um, I mean, we're kind of in a, I think Mr. Miller's in a corner here, um, at a point where, and maybe what I need to do is file a TRO, a temporary restraining order, and have a district court determine the access. Um, I understand that the county's concerned. I, I, I think if we go in there and start digging up, you know, with bulldozers and digging up a, a clean caliche road at this point, or it's really just a drive, it's only being accessed by Mr. Miller. We've, we agreed, uh, we agreed with the county after the last meeting that there would be no night access, there'd be no, we, we haven't actually agreed to even come up with a timeframe of when they would access. The problem is, my client has no other access other than this, than this access that he has at this point. Um, it is a county road, it's not a text dot controlled road, and I, I talked to Jenny about this. I'm not really sure how we're getting to this point to where no one can access County Road fifty-two, um, along that road. I mean, the, the county purchased the, a sliver that basically is between the existing paved road and, uh, in basically extended County Road fifty-two, um, space. And, and the, the abutting, the abutting and adjoining property line of my client's south line basically abuts County Road fifty-two. And so, um, and so the way that we have it right now is, is that County Road fifty-two has been extended up to my client's property line. So I, I think there's a real issue there that we probably, maybe we need to have a court, a district court make that determination and, and, and that way, I guess, the county could be shielded by, by, you know, if some, I, I don't know exactly what the concern, if people are, there's other houses along there that are, that are driving out on fifty-two, and I, and I understand there was some discussion about, well, we have liability. Um, I mean, I don't know why the county would ever be sued if something, if somebody, if Mr. Miller was pulling out and, and negligently, you know, some, caused something. I don't know how that would be the negligence of the county. Um, but in any event, maybe, uh, maybe that's where we are. I mean, I, I, maybe we're at a point to where a lawsuit needs to be, I, I'm not really in favor of filing lawsuits. I know that's expensive, it's expensive for the county, uh, unless we come up with some other agreement. I do think that I probably have some authority, I don't, I don't have a specific amount, but obviously, a, a title company desires to get something resolved as opposed to paying my fee to, to represent its insured under a title policy. And I don't know whether there's some exception that can be made, or whether some express easement with specific terms that, you know, basically that would, no, no further, um, you know, only, only the landowner could have access, I don't, I don't know. The point is, is that we're kind of getting into a corner here. If, if the threat is, we're going to come out there with bulldozers and dig up, dig up the, what's there and create a bigger mess than what we, you know, really, we could create a big mud mess out there along fifty-two if that's what happens. And so, I, I don't know, I think we're at a point where I don't know whether we can get, I'd be glad to meet with Jenny. Um, I've got to be in Houston tomorrow, but I'd be glad to meet with her Monday, uh, when, uh, and, and try to come up with some, if there's some way that there could be an express, express easement with specific terms and indemnity issues maybe in the agreement. Um, we could do that, I just don't, I guess I'm at a point to where I'm trying to figure out, where am I? Am I at a point where I've got to follow TRO and, or?
So I have a couple of questions maybe to help us at least understand it a little bit better, because they're shaking their heads behind you here. So, number one, are you saying that, um, there are homes adjacent where there could be, the other people are accessing the road? And I thought maybe there might be a potential where you could have a agreement with a neighbor to utilize that road?
No, he's, I think he said other people were driving out on the road, and he was shaking his head no on that, or something is what I heard, so I'm shaking his head on.
Well, I mean, I, why don't you, if you don't mind, Mr. Hill, what, what about he, what he said, do you disagree with, Juan? Could you come to the mic, because he said that, um, the, you, what about the night access, is that accurate?
No, ma'am, no, I think.
Well, is that something that you did, Jenny?
They talked about limiting access, but the county never agreed that this is a time you may access.
I see, so the nighttime access, in their mind, is a, a term they would agree to. Um, the other thing that you said no to was the people around there?
There, there's no other driveways, uh, that are residential, uh, driveways that are accessing, accessing County Road fifty-two. Uh, we just got to remember that the east portion of County Road fifty-two is owned by the city of Corpus Christi. Uh, they do have access for, um, a couple of, uh, or one of the, a commercial, which is Hobby Lobby. But that, but that property has been platted, it's gone through the process of, of the, uh, of, of, through, through, through the city. Uh, design drawings were done, everything was, was, was reviewed. In this case, this is an illegal subdivision, a property that hasn't been platted, a property that was just deeded, and that's against our subdivision rules.
Okay, so now we're hearing more information, so I hope that helps you, Mr. Hill. So the, the argument is, is that it's a subdivision that hasn't been platted and therefore, but he doesn't have a home on it. Go ahead, is there a home on it, is he trying to get to his home?
Well, there is a, he did build a barn, it's a barn that basically has storage, he has stored his RV and boats, et cetera, in, in the, in other words, he's not living on it at this point. Um, honestly, last, yesterday when I talked to him, apparently him and his wife have separated, so he's, he's not living at his home anymore. He's thought about, but I don't, I, I think we can agree that nobody's going to live on it until we get this modern, this thing resolved.
Okay.
Nothing further is going to be built out there.
Right, and then I want you to hear again from Juan, because if you don't have enough information, it's kind of hard, but.
I think that's where this whole problem began, is that when this property was, this was owned originally, the lot in this subdivision was owned by the Casurics. Uh, I forgot their names. Uh, they basically had a home on this lot, and apparently, a year ago or so, or a year back in twenty twenty or twenty twenty-one, they sold their house in the north portion of their lot to, um, some people, basically, I can't remember their names. It was a, there was a deed to the north, they carved out, had a survey done, and they carved out like one point five acres around their house, and they sold the house. And then, three months later, the Casurics sold the south half of their lot to the Millers. And, and in the survey that was done by Medina Surveying, I don't, I don't know him here in town, they, they were basically, it was their understanding the access, and I, and I think the title company thought they had access onto fifty-two. And I will agree with you, Medina did not do a replat of that lot, I mean, that's the problem.
Well, maybe there's no intention to create a subdivision.
There was, oh, there's no, I don't think there's any intention to create a subdivision, but they should have done a replat. I mean, if they'd done a replat of that lot, then, in other words, divided it into two, then, then you would have had the normal chain of getting approval needed. That wasn't done, but there was a title policy issued to Mr. Miller when he purchased this south half, and that's where I come in, basically, that, that a claim was, you know, he's now, he's now being, there's, I have tried to see if I could negotiate with the owner. One is, I'd first try to negotiate with the owner of the house that they bought the, the Casurics sold that one acre, the north part of it.
Mm-hmm.
Is there some way that we can get access around? And, and there's no, the house, the way it's situated, there's no opportunity to do that, there's no way that, and they're not agreeing to it.
And that's what I was referring to when I asked the county attorney, because I had been told that you were going to try that, which is how, why we kind of got it tabled to today. It was an opportunity to see if there would be a negotiation or an interest between the two owners, but you're telling us the answer is no.
I'm, I'm not successful at this point. There, there is no consideration that they're willing to accept at this point to try to do that. And plus, they're just saying it can't be done. So I went to the, the neighbor to the, to the west, who has lot, I guess that's lot five, thinking, well, maybe there's some way, and there's no interest in, in, so far, there's no, no interest in any consideration or anything like that, which is, and I do, and then also, same thing on the other side. There, there, there are several, there's lots are all lined up there.
Mm-hmm.
Um, my client has apparently lot five, which is the adjoining lot, had some, I think y'all saw some pictures in the last hearing where there was a ruts coming down, and they basically were coming up on, on, on Mr. Miller's caliche road. That apparently, my understanding is, they've been told that is, they don't have, that, they don't have that right to use this caliche road. The only one that right now should be using it is Mr. Miller. And he's only using it, he's not living out, you know, he's not going in it, he's willing to limit that. But I, I guess where I'm, the point is, Mr. Miller is at a point to where we've exhausted those opportunities. When I was referring to other people accessing fifty-two, I'm talking about, and maybe it is in the city as opposed to county, but there are houses along fifty-two that have driveways that go out on fifty, but they're further east, down towards Hobby Lobby.
Okay.
So, I, I mean, I'm not, I'm not trying to misrepresent, but I do.
You're just saying that there's, there are, there are other examples of driveways that go out to fifty-two, further east?
Yes.
Okay, and then, and then, just to get us moving along here, Juan, go, if you don't come back, what is, what is the, um, what is the issue with regards to safety? You want to see this, this driveway, um, taken up because of a safety issue?
Yes, ma'am, and, and I.
So an easement wouldn't solve your problems?
No, ma'am, no, ma'am.
Okay, and then you have a text dot, um, rule?
It's pretty much a, a letter that from text dot.
Are you going to pass it out to us?
No, ma'am, that's just, that's just.
Okay, so, so what's your text dot rule, so Mr. Hill can hear it?
In other words, if there's, if there's an illegal driveway, this is about just an illegal driveway, not about a unplatted subdivision. Uh, it's an illegal, illegal driveway, uh, text out gives, gives them ten days before, uh, text out, text out goes out there. They give them two notices, in this case, we already gave Mr. Miller probably three or four notices. Um, but this is going to be the, probably the third or fourth notice to Mr. Miller. Uh, and this is going to be a, a ten day notice telling him that if he doesn't remove his driveway within, within ten days, the county's going to go out there and remove the driveway at the expense of the owner.
So Jenny, wasn't there a longer process? Um, what's the process for this notice? I thought you had mentioned thirty days.
We had asked for that, that time for the negotiation process. However, the way it's happened in the county in the past, my understanding is, they give this ten day letter, which has already been, I believe in January, the first one went out. Um, but instead, the county has been working with Mr. Miller and now with Mr. Hill for this additional time, whereas ordinarily, Mr. Juan Pimentel would just send out the letter, and ten days later, they would tear up the driveway. Uh, so this has been extended, um, we've asked for the court to wait so that they could do these negotiations, and this is where we are.
And, and Judge, just let the court know.
And you have the equipment, since you're really busy everywhere else, you can do this removal of the driveway?
Uh, just to answer that question, Judge, if, if we get to this point, I'm more sure that once we get to, if, if we get to within ten days, we're going to go ahead and schedule it to get it removed. But we'll notify.
How will you do that, since you're so busy?
Doesn't take much.
Why are you picking on Juan?
I'm just, I'm asking you, you just told us, hey, I'm just wondering how that's going to, you, I'm, I'm being honest. You just said you didn't have the maintenance crews or the great equipment, but I'm asking you, because he wants to know, are you, he just sat here and heard your previous presentation. So for this, you can move equipment and make sure that that driveway gets removed, because he needs to know.
It's just a piece, one piece of equipment.
Okay, so you'll be able to stop what you're doing in the other roads and come over here and do this, because that way he knows the seriousness of it.
You don't have to stop, Judge.
Hey, but I'm not speaking, um, I'm, I'm speaking, and you, you may not interrupt, I'll call on you in just a moment.
Judge, you, you have an engineering degree.
Excuse me, uh, please do not interrupt, please do not interrupt. Juan, the idea here is to let Mr. Hill know what your intentions are.
It's just one staff member, one piece of equipment. And then, and Judge, and Commissioners, um, just kind of like I mentioned earlier, we, we've been coordinating with Mr. Miller since December of last year. Uh, we sent out a letter in, if I'm not mistaken, in February, uh, we sent a letter to him and Mr. Casuric, and notified him, notified him that it wasn't going to be an illegal subdivision, uh, that they would have to get access to County Road fifty-two, which is Valley View. So I don't know if the attorney knows that, uh, 52B, I'm sorry. So we, we've been in coordination, uh, and I, and I, we've even, from probably worse, we've given him the opportunity and told him, hey, you know what, we'll give you 30 days to kinda handle whatever you need to take care of. That was back in December, then in February, and then, you know, we're trying to be a little bit lenient and say, you know, we're gonna give you a little more time. Uh, a few months after that, you know, we gotta, we, if, if we don't do this, Judge and Commissioners, you have others, other, you're gonna have other constituents out there that are gonna start building driveways illegally. And then we're gonna have to go out there and we're gonna go through this whole process again of having to come through Commissioners Court. Where normally, in the past, uh, with Jerry's been here for 40 something years, the, the, the county engineer would just direct, um, his employees to go remove the driveway. If it's an illegal driveway or an illegal structure, uh, it's been done before where the, where the county engineer, uh, just directs the, uh, the, his employees to go out there and remove the driveway. If it's an illegal.
Excuse me, Juan. Jerry, this question's for you. How many, how many, have you done any of these illegal driveways?
We've done, and prior, uh, engineers that's been here, I've done 12 removable's from one day to another. Never had come to court, never come to the Commissioners. The Public Works Director would take over and that's it. That's how it was done, real quick.
I remember that.
It just takes about an hour, an hour and a half, and we're out of there.
Okay, okay. Sounds good to me.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Hill, um, anything further, um, with regards to what you've, you've now heard what the, what the recommendation is of, of public works and the timeframe?
And I, and I think the issue is, is obviously, uh, this was not Mr. Miller just deciding this is the way he wanted to go. The problem is this is his only way to access, but we're, we're gonna end up with a landlocked piece of property. And so maybe, you know, that's what I told Jenny yesterday, we may be at a, at a, in a corner at this point. And that my recommendation is probably, I will probably be bringing a suit. Uh, that, and I'll coordinate with Jenny on that. I mean, it, it is what it is and we may need to have some. The circumstances are not a situation where, I understand they're making a claim, the, the claim of the, the county is, is that this is an illegal subdivision. It was a, it was really a, it's, it basically was a conveyance of the south half of, I mean, granted, I wish they would've replatted it. Though, though, I mean, if we could've avoided all this, I completely agree with that, but it is what it is. And I've got, I've got a, a client who basically is gonna end up with a landlocked piece of property, the way it is. And I don't know whether there's, you know, we, like, maybe that's the process we begin and maybe there's some way down the road that we can figure out some kind of an exception to where nobody is gonna, you're not gonna have people just building driveways realizing it's, it's a, it is a problem. I mean, it's an expensive, it's gonna be an expensive problem for both the county and my client and, and, and the carrier that's, that's insuring it to get it resolved.
Yeah, I, I wish we could resolve the matter, which is why we have been following the county attorney's counsel on this. And, you know, unfortunately, you can hear that you're not getting, um, you know.
Well, I, and I understand, I mean, I understand, there's always a, you know, there's a, there's obviously a dispute here. And, and really, maybe the district clerk, the district court is where that needs to be resolved. So I, as long as I can have some assurance that after the last meeting, I think it was the next day or the next, or whatever, they went out and dumped a bunch of dirt right on his road. And, but they took that off after I called Jenny about it. I was in the middle of the trial and, but as long as, as long as I got 10 days. I've gotta be in Houston tomorrow, but I think we'll have something going by first of next week, certainly within 10 days. And, um, in the meantime, I'll, I'll communicate with Jenny and, uh, you know, but I don't, honestly, at this point, I just don't see another avenue. And I hear, I understand Juan's position and the city, and the county's position. And so, um, as long as I have 10 days, uh, something, something will be moving one way or the other on the thing. Okay?
Um, Juan, what is your, um, how do you, what is the city's ability to have the driveways and not us? What, how do they, how do they deal with it?
Uh, if I'm not mistaken, Judge, I'm, I think we're talking about Hobby Lobby. The other residents that have been out there, the ones that, that attorney's talking about, those have been there for the past 40 years. So they already had a driveway before. Uh, and then I think when.
But aren't they, so they're only, they're not illegal because they have been there before?
Well, those have been there before, but they're in the city limits. So they're not, they're not in our, in our jurisdiction.
But I'm saying to you, but on the safety issue, how is their driveway any different than the county driveway?
I'm not sure. And, and that one is just more of a commercial driveway. They, they, I'm more sure they looked at it, they, they discussed it with the city, made sure that it had the right distances, the right, you know, everything. In this case, you know, it is an illegal subdivision. It is an illegal sub, uh, uh, I think what, if we, if we approve this driveway, Judge and Commissioners, again, we're, we're trying to follow the rules and regulations of the county for the subdivision rules. And if we don't follow the rules and subdivision, uh, the rules and regulations of the subdivision, we're gonna get a lot of people out there that are gonna start building whatever they want. And I think right now we have some residents out there that are building five houses in one, a lot, and we're trying to also deal with that one also here in the coming weeks. But, um, we, we have to, we have to, i- if, if we're not gonna follow rules and regulations, then why have them?
No, well, for starters, we, we are gonna follow rules and regulations. I'm trying to make certain that the rules and regulations are consistent. You had suggested that it was a safety issue. If down the street, there are four other driveways, I'm wondering how that puts us in a position of strength. I understand what you're saying about the illegal subdivision.
Judge, I guess we should call the city. That's not our jurisdiction.
Well, I'm, I'm, but I'm saying to you, if he thinks it's a safety, isn't it a safety all the way through? It's not a good argument for us to say safety. Maybe it's a better argument to say that it's an illegal subdivision. But my question to you is, um, is there not any way, shape or form for, if it were, if it were not illegal, say that it was? First of all, I don't see how it's a subdivision if it's a, if it's a barn. But anyway, if, if you, i- is there not anything you can think of to resolve this matter before the county has to go and, and fight this? That's my question to you. Is there anything you could recommend?
I'm not an attorney judge, but, but, but I'm not an attorney, but I, I'm more sure, we, we didn't tell him to, to buy a piece of property that.
Okay, I'm just wondering if there's any recommendation. If you don't have a recommendation, then I'm asking if there's anything you can think of.
Yes, ma'am. And in regards to the city, I know they go through the proper permitting process. They go through the padding process. They go through all their steps. And I'm more sure that's the reason why the city allowed him to have a driveway many years ago.
Right, but if we were to do that, if we were to create a policy like that, um.
I don't know, are we gonna create a special?
I don't think it's really a fair question for Juan. So Jenny, is there?
Is there anything Jenny that we could do here?
Well, so far we had been hoping, we'd tied our hopes to the adjoining neighbors selling a, an easement for him to have access. At this point, yes, I mean, we could branch out and look at other things, um.
But like what?
If I can, if I can interject, I think Jenny and I talked yesterday.
Hang on a second. Let me ask her. I've been sitting here listening to all this. And let me just say, like, I'm, I'm sorry, you've only been in this a month, but we've been doing this a year and plus. I mean, so I get that you've only been in a month and we're trying to give you some courtesy, but at the same time, this has gone on since December of last year and this is ridiculous. So, and I'm not saying that directed at you. I'm just saying this is, you know, you've only been in a month, but he's been dealing with it cert, for almost a year and that's ridiculous. And really frustrating part for me is it, yeah, it really felt like he was getting chastised for doing his job by, by, by part of this court. And that's not how I feel about it. I, I think you're coming in here trying to follow the, the rules and do what you're supposed to be doing. Now, my question though is Jenny, having said all that, even though I don't think, I think Juan was unduly chastised doing his job, is there something legally that can be done at this point, other than follow the rules? And that Juan has come forth and said, and, and you've been involved in this, so you ought to know, you know, where this is. So is there anything else that, I, I mean, I don't wanna.
I think we're gonna have to be innovative because yes, if, if there is no safe way, and, and we're also still looking at that with Juan. If there's no safe way to access that road, then there's, you know, his recourse may be against just the people, the title company, the.
Well, if I, Jenny, I think we talked yesterday about, I mean, obviously.
Title company can do is pay damages. And so, you know, all the title company's gonna be able to do is say, okay, county, you know, we'll, we'll pay your damages for landlocking this guy. Cause I, I, I don't know how the title company's gonna, that's what I'm trying to get to is, I don't know what the title company can do other than pay damages. That still doesn't get the guy a road. So I'm asking you, in, in your observation of this so far, is, have you seen or found anything yet that you think is, is even viable, that is even worth delaying this for five minutes? Cause I'm looking for something to hang my hat on from you, with all due respect, not to the council, for the title company, who's gonna hang his hat on whatever he can to get delayed. No, that's his job. I say that with great respect and he's a great lawyer, but I'm asking you, who represents us, is there anything you see right now that is worth delaying this for?
Well, there's a couple of different things. Either there is a type of driveway that could be engineered to satisfy the safety requirements that we just don't have or know about yet. That's gonna be a longer issue than the 10 days. Or perhaps they offer the amount of money that is adequate to the adjoining neighbors that will allow him to have that access, um, which could take slightly longer than 10 days. I don't know. Depends on how much they're willing to offer those people. And then beyond that, we don't have a solution carved out.
Okay, so, uh, as I sit here, I mean, he can go file his TRO, that's good. We, we have to defend it. And we're gonna ask for our attorney's fees for, all due respect, a frivolous TRO, no offense, but that, I mean, I get, that's what I'm gonna, you know, I, I'm listening to this stuff and I'm going, oh, sure, he's gotta do whatever. He's gotta do to protect his client, but at the end of the day, it's not frivolous. We're following the rules. I mean, we're not being frivolous. We're following the rules. We're doing anything we can. It isn't our fault that we're in this position, or they're in this position, but I, I get that he has, he may have to go file that. And then we're gonna ask for, you know, the attorney's fees and we're gonna ask the TR to go away and all that stuff. But, but I'm, I'm, I'm willing, if you think, not for long, cause I don't wanna go much longer on this either, cause it's ridiculous, to, to, to force him to a mediation or to, you know, do something to force everybody in the room one last time and, and make this motion subject to that happening first. And if that doesn't happen, then, you know, let him file his TRO. We're gonna, we're, we'll, we'll say it's a frivolous TRO and we'll see what the, the courts do, right? So I, I'm okay if you think there's even any way that we could come up with this specially designed driveway that the title company will agree to pay for, or the underwriter will agree to pay for. I mean, I, I think that's worth trying, if you think that's worth trying, but not very long. Like, I would be willing to make this subject to, like, having this quick settlement thing. And then if it doesn't happen, Katy bar the doors and, and let's just see what happens. I mean, if, if you, if you think there's a, a, even a scintilla of possibility that that's.
And we hadn't broached that with Juan yet, as far as a design of a driveway that might be adequate for the safety.
And he's gonna say, you're the lawyer, right? He's gonna, if you tell him he can do it, you know, it's not, we keep asking, you know, he keeps getting asked the wrong questions, you know? The question's gotta be to you. Okay, he's, if you tell him it's legal to go build this driveway and that's gonna satisfy, then he's gonna say, great, I'll go build the driveway. But until you sign off on it, you know, he's not, until we sign off, you sign off, right? So I would be willing to make a motion that, that would said, that we would, that we would do this, number 22, subject to there being a mediation prior to us putting this in effect within the next seven days between with the underwriter, with the owner, with the appropriate parties. And we either come up with a solution that you think is legal, that you can tell us, and if you don't, then he files his TRO and go on. So that's a very, I can, I'll tighten that motion up for you in a minute, but if, if.
I'll second it. Okay.
And, and if I can just add, Mr. Chesney, if I can just add one thing, is that something that we, I, we talked about yesterday is that, obviously, I mean, I've, I would be willing to, the land, this lot should've been replatted. And I think that that was something I suggested we could, I would be willing, more than willing to have it repl, you know, the expense of having it, this, this lot being replatted to where you have.
Y'all can do that in a settlement conference. Y'all can sit down and work all this out in one fell swoop or not.
The question is whether or not that would be, I mean, obviously, I, my, I don't think that, I'm not sure if I get a replat approved.
I don't think it was ever, I don't think it was ever replatted. I don't think it was ever platted.
Well, that's, that was the problem is that it's, it is in a subdivision. This lot is in a subdivision. But when it was separate, when it was cut into two, this lot was cut into two, there should've been a replat. And, and I agree with that. I mean, that would've been, I wouldn't be here today if there had been a replat and they've been approved by the county. But I guess what I can understand is that, is a county saying that they're never going to have a driveway out on 52 from a, from a piece of property on 52? I mean, I don't think, I haven't found anywhere where the county can say, we're never gonna have a driveway.
And I don't know, and that's what I'm saying. I don't wanna sit here and litigate this all afternoon, cause that's what we're kinda doing.
That was my question to Juan. Juan, do you see a way where they can have a legal driveway, the way it stands? I mean, coming out to County Road 52, or do they have to?
If, if, if the owner would've platted it properly, properly, the first time when he bought the piece of property, uh, it's, it's on the subdivision, their subdivision. Uh, they're supposed to have access from County Road 52B, which is Valley View.
Okay.
So that's, that's, that's the only, that's the only way that property could've been platted, if they would've gotten it platted. And I think there's, there was an email from Michael to that property owner or some discussion with that property owner that they would have to get access from County Road 52 initially. So I'm assuming that somebody, or 52B, I'm assuming that when that happened, they still just sold the property as a deed.
And then regardless, at the end of the day, are you guys still supposed to follow, uh, say, the state rules?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Doesn't make a difference if, you know, they wanna cut through there or not. I mean, you still have state regulations that tells you how things should be done, right?
Yes, sir.
Thanks.
Yeah, and again, I, I wanna emphasize too, I, I think Juan has a hundred percent done his job. I think Mr. Hill's trying to do his job. But unfortunately, your, your client, it took that long to file a claim and it's taken this long to get here, and that's unfortunate. But at the end of the day, we're wasting a lot of time just sitting here doing this this afternoon when, when this should've been resolved six or eight months ago. So again, I, I think, you know, it's gotta be a short timeframe and if, if you can't come up with something, then, you know, we, you know, the motion, and the motion, just to make, be clear, my motion is if, if in that seven day period, that, that we can't, that the county attorney can't come up with something that, that she can legally recommend to this court, that the driveway, we give them the 10 day notice and it's, we're done. I mean, we go on. I mean, we give it one last shot, everybody sits down, and if we can't do it, then the 10 day notice gets issued without having someone come back to court, nothing. And if he wants to file his TRO at that point, he can and we'll go deal with it at that point. I'm just, that's all I'm saying, is one, one last shot. I feel bad for the guy who's landlocked. That's not his fault either, no offense. That's, you know, somebody at the title company messed up. Glad it's not mine. Glad I'm not having to deal with it. But, you know, we've had our share of those things and different things too, they happen. So I can, I, I feel for the, I do feel for Mr. Hill's client, not the title company, but, but Mr. Hill's client that's landlocked. That's a bummer. But I think Juan and Jerry and Michael, they've all done their jobs and this just gives us, I mean, seven days to sit down. Jenny, I know that's a tight timeframe for you to put that all together, and that means Mr. Hill's gotta get the underwriter and you've gotta have time to do it. Is that enough time for you to do it? I, I should've asked you that first. I'm sorry.
Seven days might be tight, but I understand there's a, a stress with the, you know, perceived danger of having access, um.
The burden's on Mr. Hill. He's gotta come in and show you in seven days. In other words, I don't want you to go do research. I want him to prepare something for you that, that you say is legally sound or not. I want, I'm putting, I'm trying to put all the onus on Mr. Hill to provide you something that you can review and not go do a bunch of research on. I don't want you to do it. That's, so I wanna make sure. I mean, but it, but tell me if that's not a fair timeframe, I can, I mean, if you, I mean, it's really more of an onus on Mr. Hill.
Are you, are you suggesting?
Assuming we could get to a mediator, find one, get to one in the next.
Let's say settlement conference. How about that? I'm sorry. My, that's fair. Let's say settlement conference. I don't need a mediator. My bad.
Okay, then that, that does make it easier.
I'm sorry. That, that's the wrong term. So, so let me amend that motion. It would be, Judge, if that's okay with you, to be a settlement conference instead of a, a mediation.
Excuse me, Jenny, does this mean that he's not supposed to be coming in and out from that property as it stands right now? Does that still?
As it stands right now, it is, um, we still believe an illegal driveway. Now, the court in the prior, uh, meeting had described, um, barricades. I know there was an issue where there was dirt dumped so that abs, the access was absolute, right? But it was not, um, dirt dumping there was not, uh, you know, that was not discussed in the court and so the court did not vote on that.
To me, it was a barricade and we, I just wanted to make sure he wouldn't have in or out access. As, as we've seen, he has taken the liberty of moving the barricade to get in there and out. And, you know, I mean, an accident can happen at any time. And we're just trying to prevent that.
If we're talking about denying my client complete access at this, then I'll be down filing a TRO this afternoon.
I was gonna say, I, I wanna su- suggest that that was done without authority of this court. So. That was done without the authority of this court. I wanna go on record and protect the court. That was not authorized by.
We got it, we got it resolved and it basically was removed after they dumped the, the load of dirt there. So I, I.
I'm just finding out for the first time right now that he authorized that.
Of course, I've got nothing to hide, Judge.
Anyway, he authorized that. I just need you to know that, Mr. Hill.
During the interim, if the court would like to set some parameters during which there would be access, um, or would not definitely, definitely not be accessed, that might, I don't know, quiet some of the stress about the access.
I don't, I don't know what the, I don't really know what the access issue is. Again, I don't really know, but I don't.
I don't think we've had any issue, but.
Like, in other words, we couldn't. Like, in other words, we couldn't take the driveway away and the access away without the, before the ten-day notice anyway, right?
Correct.
How does that work?
That's correct.
I mean, or le, I guess that's not, maybe that's a Jenny question, not a Juan question. All right, sorry, Juan, that should probably be a Jenny question too, sorry.
As it stands right now, the barricades are there, they're supposed to stay there. Now, he has apparently, because it is still, we believe, an illegal driveway.
Okay.
So, any access is not actually permitted unless the court says, okay, between the hours of midnight and one A M., you may do this, or you may do this between the hours of such and such, because we do, I do believe he has accessed it. If you want to control when he may, then that might help.
Well, again, I think within this seven-day period, then it's a, it's a bit of a stay. After that, access denied, and he can file his T R O. If they can't get it resolved in that seven-day period, then, you, you know, you didn't, I, I'm just saying, let's just, I'm not saying, look, let's just give them seven days, let's see if they can work it out. If they can't, access denied, you go file your T R O, and on, on down the road we go. I mean, but, but I don't want to have to come back to court for this again, and, and anybody wait on it. So, if my motion's not clear enough, tell me now, so that I can make it clearer, but the intent is seven days, kind of like a stay, little seven-day stay, get to settlement conference, can't get it worked out, go barricade it back up, go file your T R O, we'll fight it out later.
And at that point, do you want the der barricades to be dirt, there's complete inaccessibility?
But I just remind you all that it only takes one accident, okay, for someone to come back at us, but, uh, if that's the way the court wants to go, then let's do it.
There's a motion, and, um-
What were you saying, Jenny? What were, I'm sorry.
At the end of that time, do you want it to be movable barricades, or do you want it to be loads of dirt that completely grant access, uh, no access?
Whatever, whatever we would normally do.
Barricades.
I don't want to go outside the-
Movable barricades.
Whatever they would, whatever not Juan would normally-
Why do they move the next day?
Then, then that is a fact issue that would create liability on them. That is what happens.
Whatever you, whatever you, if you, if, when you do these before, what do you normally do?
Uh, we put a barricade up, and then we put some cones up.
Right.
And then, uh, we, we put some sandbags on it, but as you've seen in the pictures, uh, Mr. Garrett has gone under, removed, relocated our barricade, thrown our sandbags to the side, and didn't put, I mean, or at least have the courtesy to put it back the way it was.
I think that warrants goes, I think that warrants, if that's the case, then that warrants going above and beyond what we normally do, if they're disregarding what we normally do, and I think you got to take more of a barricade, I mean-
Yes, sir, it's, it's, if somebody's gonna move, remove them, then they're not following, they're not following, you know?
I would concur, and if someone's mo- removing the barricades, then, you know, then I, I think you got to go ab- above and beyond what you would normally do.
Yes, sir.
So, you've got a motion, Lorenzo, although he may have to run it out, but I think he's, you think you got it? Okay, he's got it, and he says yes. He's got it. And a second for myself and all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. I'd encourage you-
Can I just have a little bit of clarification?
Yes.
That I understand that within seven days, Jenny and I will set up a settlement conference-
Oh, you'll be at a settlement conference.
I'll be in a settlement conference within seven days.
Yeah, within.
And then, and then, but the ten-day from today is the, is the rule as to when, basically, in other words, it's, it's, the ten-day period runs from today. Is that correct, or would it be run from the settlement conference date, the ten-day?
No, I, I, I think it would run, I think it can run from-
I thought you were replacing the ten days with the seven days.
I was saying ten days from the end of the settlement conference.
Oh, okay.
But, I mean, okay.
So, so it'd be-
That's how Lorenzo, um, has it.
Is that how you had it?
If no solution, uh, ten-day notice will be issued.
Right.
If no solution, then ten-day notice will be issued.
And it will be accepted-
Right.
-by me, and so, so that way, I'll, on the, the date, we'll, we'll have a settlement conference within seven days.
Right.
Okay.
And I would highly urge you to do as much due diligence as possible. That way, that your conference is fruitful and not-
Sure.
And not a delay of the court's time.
Sure, and, and hope we will not be back here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
That's all I had. Can we excuse?
Yes, you may.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Juan. Thank you, Jerry.
We'll move on to item number fifteen. Remember, we took twenty-two out of order, so if you're just joining us again, and we're going, you think we're going backwards, uh, we just took twenty-two out of order. The next one is a funding of public school communications project from American Rescue Plan Act funds. This would be the funding of, in the amount of one hundred thousand dollars. It would be focused on two school districts at this time. I hope to bring more back when the other schools fulfill their, um, the paperwork, so to speak. Right now, it's West Oso and Banquete, and it would be for, um, uh, school communication and technology, uh, for school safety. And, um, I can, uh, describe it more fully in executive session later, since it is a school safety project, but I would ask, um, I'd like to make the motion and ask for a second for your approval. Again, these are out of the county judge's ARPA funds.
Second.
And, and what is-
I, I'd like to tell you more about it in, in executive session. It's a, it's a school safety, um-
Okay, 'cause can we wait then and vote until, I mean, I just don't-
Sure, I, let me describe it this way.
Just have no backup again, sorry.
Yeah, will be for, for safety reasons. Basically, it is a technology that's available, uh, that would be provided to the schools, uh, for, uh, safety, and it has, uh, the ability to be utilized both inside the classroom and outside, so think bus drivers, and also think coaches, and, um, it's a technology that we have vetted with the schools and with their I T departments. It doesn't have a lot of, um, expensive, I would say, install, uh, so it's a, um, it's a very limited installation with, um, devices that would be provided to the school for school safety, and it's, it's from a, um, very reputable source, A T and T. And I can, I can tell you more. I'm trying to walk around it a little bit, but if you'll ask me questions, I can maybe answer them.
Well, I don't really want to ask something that's gonna, you know, mess up safety. Can we just go into executive session, and I'll come right, come right back out and just hear about it? I just don't, I'd rather, I don't want to-
Sure. How about if I-
You don't want to give away, and I, you're meaning like, from a safety standpoint, I understand that.
Yeah, well, I just felt like it'd probably not be a good idea to-
It's not what?
Tell the bad guys how we're doing it, right?
No, right, that's what I'm saying. So, can we just go into executive session?
Sure.
Okay.
Sure. I'll just keep the motion and the second, Lorenzo. We'll go to executive session at some point here, and, and, uh, we'll address it and come back up. Just don't let me forget, we got to bring it back up, okay? So, item number sixteen is to, um, also provide civil process software, again, from the American Rescue Plan Act. On this one, it's going to be a lot like the H Q, well, I shouldn't say even that. It was, it's going to be a lot like the process of the county managers, my goodness, the county attorney's software. We're not making a selection, we're just saying we're going to, uh, ask the court to allocate funds for this type of software, and then it would have to be procured, it would have to be brought back. This just allows us to let the folks know that are hoping to implement this in this fiscal year, how they need to begin this process. There's a scope that needs to be brought forth, I T needs to get involved. Uh, very similar to the way we did the, the, uh, office, you know, what I'm called, the case manager software. And for this, um, I'll have to go back to my notes, but Commissioner Modas and I were going to, is it fifty-fifty? I better not be making new deals here, but I believe it was fifty-fifty, uh, from our, our, our ARPA funds. And this is, again, for, for the, um, for the, for the process software that would be used countywide and would integrate with our, um, judiciary, as in our J P's, as well as our district clerk's office, as well as our jail. That is my understanding. And again, I need to get you the, let me turn to it, um-
Again, was there some backup in this?
Nope.
This is like, I can't-
Well, all this is, is us, there's no backup, because we don't know any, we don't know what the process, we don't have the, the R F P or anything like that. It's just to say, hey, we want to allocate some of our dollars in this regard, which would be for this process software.
So, we-
Otherwise, it's hard to plan. If we don't, if we don't know that these funds would be available. And again, they're, they're my funds from ARPA, and really, Commissioner Modas, if, if you're not ready at this time, that's fine. I just want to make sure that I have my funds that are, you know, allocated here, because my next one's going to be a big, a big one, and I'll be finishing with my ARPA, so I want to make sure I have them all allocated to the areas that I believe that-
So, we do it subject to finding out what the, what, how much is this, did you say? How much is the, you said, discuss and consider funding civil process software? How much are you, how much?
Well, I was going to just allocate, um, two hundred thousand dollars.
And that's gonna-
And that's just to guide them, so I mean, I don't have the R F P, right? So, I, I'd have to guide. Hold on.
Is there going to be more required than that two hundred thousand? Is that what you're saying, or no?
My, my understanding is a ballpark figure for this is around three fifty.
Okay, three fifty.
John is doing two, and, and you're doing-
Well, yeah, I was going to do two hundred from mine, and then I don't know what-
Yeah, that's the total. That was, that was like a total range, and then y'all divided it up however you all-
The total range is three fifty?
Divided up. Okay, so, I was thinking, okay, I was thinking four hundred, so three fifty, then if you wouldn't mind, I would reduce to one seventy-five.
So, are you saying you want, you and Commissioner Modas are going to allocate one seventy-five each, subject to explanation and articu, just as to create the funding source?
Yeah, I'm just creating a funding source, because remember the whole ob- object of create funding sources? Well, I'm creating a funding source so that therefore, an agenda item can be brought forth for the R F P for this.
Or, or whatever procurement-
Or whatever procurement Michael wants to bring forth, but without the funding, I'm, right now, I'm creating the funding source so this software can be, um, pursued. Michael doesn't want to waste time doing work that doesn't have the funding source, which is really part of the policy.
That was one of our new policies, too.
Right? That's all I'm doing here is parking dollars.
I just didn't have anything in the backup, Judge.
I, I understand, well, I'm-
I'm just asking.
Right, just a, it's a allocation, and we're going to take a wild guess, and I'm going to put one seventy-five from mine. And Commissioner, is that, is that how you see it, fifty-fifty?
Yes, up to that amount, yes.
So, that's, that's what I have, and I've got that, um, hopefully, Michael will bring back more direction in the next few months. Okay, so, that's my motion. Commissioner Modas, will you second that?
Second.
Okay, and all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right. Now, the next one is a renaming of a county road, actually, two roads, eighteen and forty-three, and Juan is here to tell us about that one.
Actually, Judge, I'm going to take that one.
Okay, go ahead.
Um, so, we had a contact from the, uh, um, a, a developer in this area that indicates that he wants to be annexed by the city of Corpus Christi, and the only way to be annexed by the city of Corpus Christi is to annex these two county roads that then would provide his property the ability to touch, if you will, um, the city limits, and then could be annexed. They, the city has indicated, um, through conversations with myself, with Juan, uh, a couple of council members that are involved, that their intent is to, to do that. So, that will be, the annexation part of it will be on the, uh, agenda next, uh, in, in October. Um, but bef- before we do this, um, my feeling was that since we were, these will no longer be county roads, and we want to distinguish that similarly to what we did on London Pirate Road, that we would rename a portion, and, and there's a, should be a diagram on your desk, a portion of County Road forty-three, and we have two County Road forty-threes, and so I was really looking at doing this anyway before this came out, because it's real confusing. We have two forty-threes, one off of Weber, and one off of Staples, so this kind of was fortuitous. Um, and then, uh, County Road eighteen, and the recommendations were to name those roads after two of our outstanding former commissioners, um, who served our, our community in our area so well, uh, naming County Road forty-three, uh, uh, after Commissioner, or former Commissioner Chuck Caslis, and then County Road eighteen after former Commissioner Betty Jean Longoria. And I've talked to both of them. They were both very appreciative of the opportunity to, um, have this put before the court, and so my motion would be to rename those two roads in that capacity.
And, uh, I'll second. When would that take place?
Well, I think we have to have another-
Another hearing?
Yeah, I think it has to come again. Yeah, we're gonna, so we're gonna have to-
Okay.
This is the first one, and then we'll come back in the second one, and then, but once this gets passed, then I can a- ask Juan to, to go ahead and order-
Signage.
The signage, and set up a ceremony, and do something nice. We won't, we won't do it until after we pass it the second time, but I can at least get the signage going if the court passes it today, and then set a, set a ceremony with both, so their families can be there, and give them proper notice, and get all that so that the court can be there, and do that sometime in October.
Okay, so, is there any other discussion? Since it'll come back, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right. I want to double-check, but I see items eighteen through twenty-one, through twenty-three, well, we've already done twenty-two, as being executive sessions.
Eighteen is not executive session. Eighteen is an open session.
Well, it, it has to do with attorney-client information. I want to take you to executive session first. So, I'll go to items twenty-four.
I don't think you should go to executive session.
Okay, well-
You can, you can, I know what you want, I know what I want, so this, this is already, everything's already out in the open in this thing here. And it, is it just about the attorney?
Okay, I'm, 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 I need to stop you right now. Jenny, I have a right to take it to executive session, don't I? To have the attorney join us in, in executive session?
Well, I mean-
I mean, I would think that it says here, discuss-
Open records.
Well, that, that has, we're going to come back out into open session, but I still have to discuss this in executive session. So, I mean-
I believe it would be prudent, at least, to go and hear whatever in executive first, if there's something that's-
Right, so you'll have a chance to, uh, do what, do, have your say-so in open session, but we're going to take that to executive session, because it's a legal matter, discussing with our attorney. And, uh, I'm going to move to number twenty-four, which is to approve Wednesdays as a day of the week that we'll meet pursuant to section eighty-one point oh oh five of the government code, and I'll make the motion that we do that. Is there a second to have Wednesdays as our court? Some day, by the way, some courts do Tuesdays, but because of council, we don't.
I think Wednesday's-
So, I think Wednesdays is what we normally do. Will you second it then, Commissioner Chesney?
Sure.
All right, any further discussion on Wednesdays as being our official day?
Just a question, when will some, will, and normally, we normally, uh, approve the calendar for the next year, will someone start generating that for us to look at any-
Yeah, we actually-
Okay, perfect, thank you.
I think I, we asked, and it comes, uh, as a matter, of course, in-
Between, um-
November?
November and December, yeah. By November, we should have it.
So, this is just for the next meeting, not, nothing else?
No, this is for the whole fiscal year, Wednesdays.
Consider next commissioner's court meeting.
Oh, no, he went to twenty-four.
We're not on that one yet.
He went to twenty-four. Yeah, it just means, like, Wednesday will be our normal day.
So, let's, let's go ahead and, um, vote on that. All those in favor of Wednesday being our normal day of the week for regular commissioners' court meetings signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Aye?
Aye.
Post same sign. Okay, and then the next one is discuss the next commissioner's court meeting date. And you'll notice on our regular calendar, we don't have anything, um, until October twelfth. So I looked at calendars and I would ask that you do this and ask that we could potentially reserve, um, September twenty-sixth. It means we'd be off next week and then back on again, maybe just for half-day reservation, just in case. Um, in the afternoon.
Okay, wait a minute. The next one is ten, twelve, twenty-two, right?
Right, that's a long time, more than a month.
Yeah, the next one is-
Well, about a month, I guess.
Will the, uh, Purple Heart Ceremony be complete?
In the morning, oh yeah. How about the afternoon?
It's, except from, uh, eleven and I don't know what time it's-
So what are we, but what are we?
What are you doing?
Yeah.
Eleven to one, what are we doing? Well, we'd be most likely paying bills and tack, tackling anything else that we need. For example, I know that there's a, a grant that we need to apply for that didn't get on here this time.
Okay, what day are you talking about?
I'm, I'm thinking the week of the twenty-sixth, Monday afternoon, um-
Can we, can we limit it to urgent items only in a very short period of time?
Yeah, how about just a few hours? Half-day?
Yes.
So-
One to five?
We have a Purple Heart Ceremony, yeah. One to five?
One to five on Monday? I would do it in the morning, but we already have the Purple Heart Cemetery designation.
Can we go two to five? I've got something till-
Two to five, all right, two to five.
And then just urgent items only?
Yes, I must, yeah. On the twenty-sixth, Monday twenty-sixth, two to five.
I mean, what day is that anyway?
That way we get lunch in as well.
Monday, twenty-sixth.
Okay, two to five on the twenty-sixth, that's okay with everybody?
Okay.
Like, two to five means really five, right?
Yeah.
Really.
Well, as you know.
Well, no, yeah.
Okay, all right, and there's a motion for that. Is there a second? Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Post same sign. Okay, is Anna here with us by Zoom? We've got two items that are, um, grants and I'll move real quickly through here. Um, this is a, uh, restore, uh, grant. It's an amendment. It extends the termination date only. Anna, do you recommend approval? Oh, here she is. I was looking online. Anna, we're, perfect timing, we're on, um, the grant award for the Restore Act for I.B. McGee Beach. It just said termination date extension, is that right?
Correct, um, I'm working with Scott. He's gonna provide a, an extension date so we can-
Okay.
Address it with them and submit it.
All right.
But he wasn't ready yet.
Okay, so, um, you wanna recommend, um-
Recommend approval for an extension, uh, for the observation date.
Thank you, okay. Is there a second? I'll make the motion. Is there a second?
Wait, tell me, I'm sorry Judge.
It's an extension on the termination, so when we have to file our reports, he needs, Scott needs more time. So it's an extension only for the termination date to the, to the agency.
I'm sorry, what number?
To U.S. Fish and Wildlife Agency. It's on B-one, grants.
I second that, too.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, great, and I've got a second by Commissioner Modas. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, post same sign. You also have a, uh, an agreement that you presented to us, kind of exciting regarding the Colonia Self-Help Center. You recommend?
Yes, I recommend approval. Uh, that's been in the works for, I think, over a year and it's finally come through for the contract for, uh, the Colonias, five Colonias, to be a self-help centers um, that were y'all approved in November of twenty-twenty-one, so like the five.
Okay, um, Commissioner Modas, would you like to, it's kind of a nice way to celebrate this finally moving forward. This was a bill that you started.
Yes, um, it's exciting, a reminder for the court and for the public. Uh, there was only seven self-help centers in the state of Texas prior to the twenty-twenty-one legislative session, thanks to Representative Abel Laredo and Senator, uh, Juan Chuihnojosa for pushing this on, uh, through the, the House and the Senate. Uh, this established Oasis County as having, uh, being the eighth Colonia Self-Help Center established through the Texas Department of Housing and Community Affairs. And we, um, fall within the hundred-and-fifty-mile boundary, uh, that allows for Colonias to be recognized in the state of Texas. Uh, but we are definitely the only one that are not part of a border, uh, community directly on the U.S.-Mexico border. So, a little bit of history there, a whole lot of work, uh, and thanks again to our staff for putting this all together. Anna coming on in the end and helping us put this together for work that was started, um, that could have easily been missed. So thanks to Idae and to Belinda on that as well, and to our legal department helping us with that. So, um, this is, just to get us, uh, moving forward to helping the five recognized Colonia, or five, uh, recognized areas in the county. Um, and, uh, Edward has a little bit more information on that, uh, Belinda does as well. But it's basically, uh, going to be a, a facility for now that helps, uh, communities of interest be able to utilize tools in helping, uh, fix up, uh, homes and other parts of, uh, of unincorporated areas in Oasis County. And so this funding will help us, uh, be able to actualize that without any cost to the taxpayers in Oasis County. So this is just really, uh, it's a good item all around. And, um, hopefully we, um, will, um, agree to this and, and move forward with the, um, uh, TDHCA uh, and, uh, the Colonial Help Self, Help Self, Help Centers to, uh, put this together.
And then this will be subject to the county attorney reviewing everything and making sure it's all in line, blah, 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 right?
Correct.
I don't mean to say blah, 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 sorry. I mean, we just have someone to sign off on it that it's legal.
Yes.
We would ask that in the future, items be brought to our office for timely review before they are placed on the court's agenda, just as a reminder.
Yeah, I think it's a nice thing out of courtesy, but, but we can still approve something. I know it's, seems backwards, but I appreciate the ask and I know we'll always try.
Okay, so, yeah, but I mean-
But it's not necessary.
No, it is, well, it is, I mean, and that's the problem is I hate-
It's the court's policy that the court voted on.
I hate these subject issues. I mean, we've had at least five or six items with no backup today. We're just winging and prayer and, and that's gotta stop. That's against our policy. I mean, I mean, I know I, I've got one of mine in late, but I got it in. So, I mean, this has got to stop. I mean, we're, this has been all day. I'm not picking on this side. I'm saying this has been all day. I've said at least five times, no backup, no backup, no backup. No backup even walked in this afternoon. I mean, I don't understand, we're really, I don't understand how an item gets on the agenda and then at least doesn't have backup at some point before we meet. I mean, there's gotta be some, like, you know, at least get it in on Friday or Saturday or something, something.
The agreement should have been attached.
Yeah, this is attached.
This is attached, yeah.
It is attached.
Yeah, the agreement is, is provided. It's just-
Hasn't been approved.
Making sure like-
Right, hadn't been approved.
That they, the county attorney needs to review all agreements as well. Yeah, that was with backup.
I get it, I'm, but then, a lot of the other ones didn't have, like, I had zero behind my, at least this had something.
Okay, and, um, Anna, um, so, okay, so all those, I, I think the, the motion is there in the, from Commissioner Modas, and I'll second, and it, it obviously is gonna get reviewed. Anna, so you'll coordinate with the county attorney. And, um, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. And since you're here, Anna, I'll give, I'll pass this to you cuz this looks like it belongs to you. So if you don't mind, Maggie, would you mind? Cuz not all of it belongs to Anna, but something she needs happens to be right here in front of me. Just go through that with her. And, um, now, Michael, we will work swiftly through here and get to executive session. Dale, I'll ask you to hold. I know that we have a lawyer here waiting, so I'll, I'll move quickly through, uh, but not too quickly, Michael, through purchasing. The first one is a IFB, uh, bid for a grade-one type-A flexible base.
So we're recommending to reject all bids. Uh, we put this bid out. We only received one bid.
Okay.
And so we'd like an opportunity to go out to the market again and see if it gets more interest.
All right, got a motion and a second. My discussion only is, do we have enough, uh, to do the work that we need? And how swift can we do this? Are we all right?
We have enough to do the work that we need and I've also spoken with Juan. We may have an opportunity to get this through a cooperative as well, so I may come back with a different solution on that.
Okay, all right, thank you, Michael. All, any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Okay, and then item number two is the supplemental number one, um, with, go ahead.
So this is for the, uh, HMAP Consulting Services. Uh, this is to, uh, replace the port with, uh, City of Driscoll. The port is gonna perform a separate, uh, hazard mitigation plan. And then also to extend the, uh, project closeout work date from March twenty-twenty-three to May twenty-twenty-three, uh, which is a couple of months there. No additional cost for this change and no change to the original contract expiration date of September thirty, twenty-twenty-three.
Right, all right, is there a motion then to approve this supplement? All right, I'll move to, to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, second. Okay, uh, again, this is no cost. This is taking the port out. You'll remember Danielle Hell came and explained why. They're gonna do their own and, uh, it's not gonna change the cost, but we're gonna insert the City of Driscoll. And that way they're included and, um, and then that's, that's how that works. And the reason the port is cuz they're gonna, they're gonna have San Pat participate in theirs as well. They, they represent the both jurisdictions.
And the Bankett I S D, that's included, uh, that's the only I S D included on this plan?
I believe so, Commissioner, because, um, because of the unincorporated nature. We look to the superintendent there, uh, much like we do for mayors for emergency management purposes. I think that's why it's styled that way.
Why wasn't the City of Driscoll, uh, unincorporated?
The City of Driscoll is, is being added because-
Being added.
There was an opportunity to put someone on when the port came off.
So they'll be on.
They're, they're gonna be on.
Yeah, and then you'll remember that there were some districts, like Drainage District, Water Districts. Um, there is a solution for them through another means, but I cannot remember, Michael. Have to go back to my notes, but at this time, it's just, it's the, it's the, the difference is one off, one on.
Yeah, that's it.
That's it. All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, post same sign. All right, and now, um, we've got a discuss and consider, Michael, for the sole source agreement with Thompson Reuters for Hi-Q Office Management Software.
Right, so the court had approved funding for this project. Uh, we've been working, uh, really closely with the folks at Hi-Q and the county attorney's office. And what we attached is monetarily the agreement. However, uh, there were some, uh, additional language that the county attorney had provided to Hi-Q, which related to, uh, required language from ARPA that we have to reference certain two CFR compliance documents. It's, I believe it's, it's, um, something that'll be, uh, received well by the legal folks at Hi-Q, but they got it yesterday, so they're gonna need a little time to come back to us and say, yeah, we're good with that language. Uh, but the monetary issue, there's no discussion on that. We're in agreement on the amount. And so I, I would like to recommend that the court approve it, subject to review and approval of the county attorney, um, when we get that, uh, confirmation on those additional terms.
Can we not table this till we get the confirmation?
This one is slightly different, uh, Commissioner. Um, whereas this is not something that we just haven't been provided. This is something we've been actively given. There's no challenge as far as the amounts. What we did was we added the CFR language to make sure that the ARPA funding would be appropriate because there are some things that we just must include. And so they acknowledged receipt of that and said that they would get it back to us very shortly. Uh, so it is something that is, it's not, they're not substantive changes, is what I'm trying to get at.
Okay, I'll make the motion then, subject to, to approve. Do we know the, the timeline for the county attorney? Is it gonna be available, available, um, hopefully for you by the beginning of the year?
Should be before the beginning of the, the next year.
And what was the funding source?
ARPA.
And this is, but this is a-
We had already done the, the funding.
If you look in the discussion section, I've detailed out where the funds are coming from for each of the five years of the contract. And in the first four years, it's a hundred percent ARPA. And in year five, which is, uh, fiscal twenty-six, twenty-seven, a portion is ARPA, uh, thirteen thousand, six, sixty-eight, thirty-six. And then the remaining sixty-eight, three, forty-one, eighty will come out of eleven-thirty general funds.
Okay, uh, and, yeah, and this is the one, but this is one of those ones, we jump off the cliff, but we wait five years, right? Cuz we have to pick it up after that. Okay, uh, what do you need a motion for, Judge?
I've just, I've got the motion to approve and I've got a second.
Subject to the county attorney's approval.
And, uh, subject to, um, and also a second by Commissioner Gonzalez. And any other discussion on this software? Okay, thanks to Daryl. He's sitting here. He has to review all these softwares, make sure they're good for the county, good for the implementation, but it's kind of exciting because it really represents the modernization of many of our offices. Kind of great, keep us posted. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, post same sign.
Okay, the, the last one we have is discuss and consider conditional selection for RFP thirty-one ninety-three dash twenty-two, which is the Enterprise Resource Planning System. Uh, we had presented some information in the previous court and, uh, I have some additional information to give the court for their consideration. And then I know we're gonna have some comments from Idae and Dale regarding the funding uh, cuz that was a question that had come up last time, too, so let me pass out these items.
And this is the one where we, this was that last one we did with no funding source?
Yes, sir.
This is the one that created the policy that, regarding funding source.
Yeah.
But you remember, this one was unique that you didn't know what the funding source would be until you knew the, the, the total.
Okay, so I'll just remind the court that the selection committee was Dale Achley, Daryl Earwood, uh, Idae and myself. So that's your county auditor, your purchasing agent, information technology director and commissioners' court administration manager. Uh, we reviewed all of this, uh, proposals that came in. And our, uh, recommendation from the committee was A-Lite Solutions, which is the Workday solution, which is the one that's highlighted in green. The, uh, addition on the pricing, uh, model that has been added is there in yellow and it shows the amounts that we are currently paying for a variety of systems to accomplish what this new ERP system would consolidate together in one, uh, solution. And the difference, uh, between the, uh, vendor that had the low price versus the vendor that has the, the Workday solution that we, uh, as a group, uh, liked is that it not only combines all of the features, but it also has a cloud solution. And what I tried to do for y'all is, is break out, so you can kinda see on a year-by-year basis what we're currently paying for our current system, which is going, uh, end of life. And we would either have to upgrade that system at additional costs. So the cost that you see in yellow would be higher, uh, in that upgrade model. And the, and, and that brings us even closer to where the costs are for the, the recommended choice. The, uh, the choice that we're not recommending, as you can see, is below the value of the cost of what we're paying for the systems today. And the only way, I, the only way I know how to kinda gel this for you guys is, let's just say the county has an old car and the transmission's about to go out on it. Do we wanna buy another used car with a used transmission in it? Or do we wanna buy a new car that has a warranty with it, with guaranteed uptime?
You're saying there's no warranty on the, on this one? Using your analogy, there's no warranty on the one that, cuz that's a pretty strong analogy.
Yeah, I know.
So there's no, there's no warranty?
Dale, you wanna speak to the warranty information that we were given from Workday?
Well, we have a different, uh, uh, our uptime for Workday because of the, uh, the, they, they have their own data center. They, they're guaranteeing us the ninety-nine percent work, workup time where-
Asked on Tyler, what I'm asking on Tyler, are, is, is there a, is there a warranty on that? Cuz he just said there isn't.
Well, I didn't say there's no warranty, period. What I'm trying to, what I'm trying to say is that-
You just did say that.
But the warranty was on the guaranteed uptime.
No, no, but you just said it's like buying a used car with no warranty. That was the analogy you used. So are you wanna take back that analogy?
Yeah, I'll backtrack that. I overstated, sorry.
Golly, come on, man. So now you can do it.
So what I wanna say is that we have a guaranteed uptime, uh, with Workday that we were not given with the other option. Um, we also have cloud-based computing, which we don't have that option with the other vendor. We also have, uh, a new, uh, part of this bid was related to time clock systems and-
How much?
We-
How much of the bid? What percentage? You don't have to give me the number, just the percentage. Cuz that was my next question.
Of the, the time clocks is gonna be, I think, nominal compared to the whole thing. I mean, it's, it's not a large-
Okay.
That's not the deal breaker is the cost of the time clocks. I, I think it's the features of the time clock system is what we're talking about. Um, Dale, do you wanna speak to the, to the time clock, uh, aspect?
The issue we have right now, we have roughly about fifty-five time clocks throughout the entire county and, uh, these all need to be replaced because of the age they are. So, and right now they're, they're estimating about four thousand dollars apiece. So we're probably talking anywhere, anywhere between two-hundred-and-fifty to three-hundred thousand dollars for replacing all time clocks. But then you have to work, then you have to coordinate everything together with the system we're using. Could require additional motives, could additional, uh, services to that. So, so theoretically about, about half a mi- half a million dollars for, for the time clocks that we have.
And, uh, Daryl has some words he wants to share, too.
So let me make sure I'm, I'm understanding this. The committee's belief is that this pro, this one that you're recommending is two times as good as the other one, since it's two times the price. I want you to think real hard about how you answer that cuz I'm holding you to it. It's just two times as good cuz it's two times the price. You're asking us to come in here and consider, uh, uh, some software- You're asking us to come in here and consider some software that's double. And we're not talking double in the thousands, folks. We're talking double in the millions over 10 years. So I want you to answer that question, and, and tell me what your answer is.
If I comment first, I would like to say that the, the recommended solution is a, an application that was, development was began back around 2005, so it was in the millennium. And it is a, a single application.
Is it two times better, Daryl?
I would expect it to be at least that.
And tell me why, tell me how.
From a technical perspective, for full functionality, the implementation method, the timeline it's gonna be done in, in that it's, for one thing, is a single timeline, and not two timelines, which shows you that if there's a double timeline or more than one timeline, that means you're implementing more than one application. Because what you have to look at, this is ERP, which goes across all functionality you could possibly have in a financial and business application. And you want seamless functionality to flow throughout all the separate modules of this. And that will happen with an application that was all developed on one single development platform, and optimized for running in the cloud. And this cloud is, is not handed off, it's actually an integral part of the vendor that's providing the service. So you, you can't have a fully integrated application with the seamlessness if what has happened in other ERP applications, where you have had acquisitions take place over time, and these acquisitions were just for pieces of ERP systems that were developed starting way before this, and just put together to create a kind of a hodgepodge, which we're, we're kind of dealing with right now. So the only integration is that they all access the same database. It doesn't mean that they're integrated modules with one another.
So this hodgepodge that we've been dealing with, how long has that system lasted us?
30 years.
Pretty good hodgepodge.
No, it's not a good system at all.
It's lasted for 30 years and it hadn't crashed?
But you can't, you don't have the functionality that you have in this. We're gonna be able to automate a lot more things, it can, it will lift your...
They ought to be able to, they ought to lace it with gold for that amount of different prices, okay.
But would you mind finishing that sentence? Because I'm interested. You said we're gonna have a lot more functionality with this, and then something?
Yes, in that we will be able to automate, and the, the flow of, you know, whenever you do something in one module, it can affect the other modules with the data and information that you're entering, so you never have to repeat things. It just ups the whole efficiency across all of your departments that use the system, which is really every department you have.
So it'll save human time, human capital?
Yes, yes, it will save that. And the, the problem with the, the existing system, and what I'm concerned with here is that, is the analytics of it. The, I don't, I don't have fun going through the system we're having right now, and I see the same concerns with not going into a fully integrated system that has all the functionality of it. And when you watch demos, you have to always remember that you have one person that's doing a demo to a lot of the people. But our real concern is with whatever we go with, that we're gonna have 100 to 200, however many employees across the county, that are accessing all the functionality within this application simultaneously. Now what do you have? If this system is not optimized for the cloud, and you want it in the cloud like this, because of the enormity of it, and the pieces that you don't want to have to maintain, which is all the hardware and such that it's running on, you, you don't have that. So you definitely want it in the cloud. But the tech, the technical term I'm gonna use is called in-memory, which is a huge thing, the fact that this is all one application, and that it operates in memory, which means that a lot of what you're doing is already ready to run out there, and that's where your optimization comes from. It'd be purely technical for me to get into a real deep discussion on that. I'm just speaking here on how IT views this, and, and my recommendation is purely technical, and that what I can see happening here, where, where you, you need my support on it. No matter what choice is made, you'll get the full involvement of IT, however much it is. But, but I can't give you any guarantees like, like the other one. And, you know, with looking at references and things like this, I still would recommend the Workday solution.
So, just to help, help us put it in perspective, and I'm glad we took the time from last time to this time, because when you only have price as a factor, the choice is obvious. What I'm hearing you say to the court is that price is not the story here. The story here is the automation, and the functionality, and the breadth of what we're getting, and therefore, because if it's just apples to apples, then we can make that choice based upon the economics. But in this case, the economics have, have a completely, I mean, we have to look at what the functionality is, what we're getting from the ground, right? In other words, what we're able to deploy immediately, and that that's the difference between, I prefer not to disparage any companies, call it A and B, but A being the less expensive company, A, very low price tag, but that is because it does not have the functionality that is in keeping with what this county needs. I, I'm trying to say it in a way that helps me, because I was one of the ones that said, no, I'm not gonna be able to give double if that's apples to apples. And that's why we asked you to come back, bridge it out till the 10. And I'm really glad we did that, because that didn't change anything, guys. When we came out 10, we were still two-to-one ratio. So now what I'm hearing you saying is, you would like, based on your recommendation, yes, it's obvious that there's a two-to-one ratio, but it is the entire, the way we're gonna use the system that gets you that double, the value? And that, and that company A doesn't get us all that we need, in many ways?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, I, that's, that's, you know, my, I wish I, I had more. We also have somebody from the company B, who has the functionality that you're recommending. And I would encourage some discussion or dialogue, in case you want to, as they say, there's only a couple of times in life where you get permission to promote and sell, and this is one of them. I mean, do you want to say something about the, the product itself, as to that particular piece, in support of, of the product?
And Judge, we still don't have a funding source.
Well, I was gonna address that, but I, but I think that I needed to provide you some information, but I was trying to get to the bad news in just a second. I just want to make sure that...
The bad, this is the worst news?
No, there's worse.
There's worse? Okay, great.
Sorry. Well, it's, it's news. Let's not call it anything but news. But, but Michael, the, the idea here is to make a selection, and then if we can't perform, we're giving notice right now that, because we didn't know the amount of money that was needed, we don't have the dollars today to commit to this. But obviously, we would, the court gets to make that decision as to how we would pursue that. This bid would be good for 60 days? 30 days? I'm, I'm asking, not, not telling you.
I believe, I believe we asked for 60.
60, that's what I kind of remember. So I guess what I'm saying is, is that it's a conditional selection. Okay, I've got somebody on...
Lisa O'Connor would like to speak, but she needs to step out where it's quieter, so...
Okay, she can, you let me know when, when she's back, okay? I guess what I'm saying is, um...
She's on.
Okay. Hi, Lisa. We'll, we'll recognize you. Go ahead.
I'm sorry, and, and just because I'm in the business that deals with software, it has a lot to do with my background. You know, cloud-based incorporates everything, and it's inclusive, so generally, it is priced higher. And what I was saying in the chat is that people don't account for the manual processes and tasks that are occurring today, and what's that costing as far as someone's hourly wage, and how long it's taking them to process whatever documents, or, you know, process they're going through. And you have to account for those things. And that's why companies like ours help with that assessment when we do these type of solutions. And I'm not trying to be in that arena, because I don't sell ERP, but I'm just trying to give you insight to what to look for when you're trying to make the comparisons. And maybe Daryl can go back to his vendor and ask for some real things. I'll give you an example, in some of the systems we do, typically, you can process 15 invoices a day manually. We can up that to 100 invoices a day by automating. So I'm sure this software is something similar to that. And that's why I wanted to add that, because the other thing that the lower price doesn't always factor in is the annual maintenance, and you'll have to account for that in the budget. So let's say you take ownership of it, not only is it the annual maintenance, you have to maintain a server and the updates, and somebody that has to do those updates, either with that company partner or on their own. And that's, again, an hourly wage, and how much time it's taking. And Daryl's experienced with these things, so he's aware of them, but to, to discuss it and have the hard numbers, it takes an analysis, which I would think the vendor would do, or have case studies that show this, and I would try to have those, and do the comparison with that as well. And that's just my input, from a neutral perspective.
Very good input, Lisa. Thank you for, for offering that. And so, just out of clarity, the cloud piece of it was one of her main points. Daryl also brought that up. Daryl, can you confirm that company A is not a cloud-based solution?
No, I cannot. The, the other solution uses the AWS cloud. They, they don't have their own. And in some cases, they, they allow on-premise in-your-own data center, in some cases, they do not. I do not think they would allow that here. But what you want to be careful with there is that when it goes into AWS, then it's not the same as something like Workday that's using their own cloud, that is, that is compliant with all the security. And with AWS, you, you only get so much from those cloud providers without spending a lot of money if you're gonna let them totally manage it.
Got it.
And that's not necessarily the case. And so with AWS, you're not gonna get any of the optimization that you're gonna be looking for. And so if there, if you have any difficulties with performance, or things not functioning properly, you could be in a bind where it may or may not get resolved. And so it's, it's, it's very careful. The other, the other is so straightforward, that I just don't foresee any of those types of problems taking place.
And I just wanted to point out, that's one of those distinctions that you're, that you're remarking on.
Yeah.
Okay, so commissioners, the, the recommendation by the committee is that selection for RFP 3193-22, for the ERP, that stands for the Enterprise Resource Planning System, for the auditor and replacement of time clocks, be awarded to, is it pronounced ALITE?
ALITE.
ALITE and Workday. And, and so, again, a conditional selection, because of course, Michael would have to...
Yes, so what that would, just to remind the court, when we do conditional selection, it just allows me to start conversations with that company, and begin negotiating what those contract terms might look like, get our, get our best and final tailoring of, of all the needs, and then come back to court with what that amount would be, after those, benefit of those discussions.
Right. And, and then here, you want, you ready for your news?
Sure.
So, we had been working with Teresa for the opportunity to have sort of a conversation about, hey, what money is out there that's not allocated? Remember that, from the COs?
Yes, I do.
So we checked with our bond counsel and financial advisor, and unfortunately, CO21s are not, NOT, applicable here for this ERP software. So I guess what I'm saying is, we had done a lot of good work in trying to shuffle, reshuffle the deck, you know, see where we could reallocate dollars. But that's not going to work. Idae has been in contact with Noe, and is prepared at our next court to come and give us some options.
To provide a plan, that's right.
To provide a plan.
Yeah, I heard that one.
That's all I got.
All right, that's fine.
And I think that there is a plan that's available, you know, to us, but I think our financial advisor's best suited to come in and, and talk about that. And what I was hoping is that, given the nature of, of the timing, that we could use the 26 for him to do, you know, he could get it to us quickly, you know? That way, we're not hearing it for the first time. He could get us the, the information through, to you, to us, and then he could do the public presentation quickly on the 26.
Yes.
And, and another thing, under the conditional selection option, there, there is no obligation of the county with that vendor, that there will be a contract. So in order to facilitate the discussions with Noe, it would be very helpful to me for the court to at least make a conditional selection.
Yes, I understand.
So that we can have those discussions, and then arrive at what real figures might be.
Understood. So, guys, is there a motion then for such conditional selection, based upon the recommendations that we've heard here today? No leap of faith? Hard to spend dollars?
It's hard to spend, yeah.
I'm gonna ask one question, and then I'll make the motion. Because I believe when I ask the question and I get the answer, sometimes you'll see that leadership requires action. Dale, this is, we've already heard, a 30-year-old software system that you're running. What are the repercussions to not having a replacement in a very short order?
As Michael was saying, we have a, a end-of-life for our current servers that we're currently working with. They are in the process of replacing those servers with newer servers, with their new version of the software. The new version of the software is so antiquated and difficult, that some of the largest companies that they had, and the financial system, have left. And it'll, but by doing, by migrating over to the new system, it'll cost us at least half a million. And then, then we'll have to get the, what we've been looking into, and what we've been testing on, to what used to take us five steps will take us 15.
Okay. But we are at end-of-life, is what I'm trying to get to here. We are at end-of-life.
Of the servers we're on, yes, at the, at the moment, yes.
Okay. So with that, I will make the motion to follow the recommendation the committee, given that, A, we're somewhat have some guardrails here, we're protected, that we've not made a final negotiated contract has not come forth, so we still have that opportunity. But it allows Michael in, in procurement to do his job, and gives us the time that we need to bring Noe back in two weeks. Will there, is there a second? And again, it would be to follow the recommendation of the committee, and provide the selection to Workday. All right, second by Commissioner Modis. Any further discussion from anybody?
Judge, I gotta tell you, I'm, I'm super uncomfortable with this.
Okay.
All due respect to, you know, to Daryl, I, I think we should hire some outside consultant or someone to really look at these things, and take them apart, piece by piece, because even, you know, I, I don't know how much Idae knows about IT, I don't know how much, I don't know who else is on the committee, no offense, I don't know how much Michael really knows about IT. So, so we're, we're making a, a potential $8 million decision, based on one person, no offense, but I'm, you know, I'm, I just, I can't support this as a, I just don't...
Well, I, I understand, but the good news is, is that we're not doing that today. The action today is just to, no, 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 no.
We were conditionally doing it, I mean, it's like, it's not just a pseudo-motion.
Right, we're selecting the...
Right. We're selecting the $8 million version versus the $4 million version.
Well, and again, the $4 million version is not the version that the county needs. It would be like saying, I'm going to, you know, buy...
I just want to reiterate that the committee didn't take this lightly, and we brought all our own expertise, whatever we had, to the table. We did check the references, and we've seen some issues come up with the lower-priced option, that caused us enough concern that we do not feel comfortable recommending that as one of our options. So we're, we're coming to you, telling you that the one that we really feel is gonna provide the county with the greatest value over the 10-year period going forward, and we're, are the 15th-largest county in, in the state, and I don't think we should be buying substandard equipment, and I'm not saying that they are, but I'm saying we have an option that's...
Tell me what expertise you have in IT. I mean, seriously, tell me what IT, what experience does Idae have in IT?
So what experience I have is I've been through a conversion before, in the micro-processing company, in AMD in Austin, Texas. And we went through this process, it took us two years... It took us two years to do an SAP conversion, and I know detailed about what it takes to convert from one software system to another. And this process is already going to be an 18-month process.
That's not what I'm asking. But what is your, what is your expertise in being able to analyze these two systems between the two? I know conversions take a long time.
So I have to restrict it to the areas that I touch, which is the purchasing side. So all the PO system, the invoicing, and all of our reporting, and all of the reporting that we do for medical billing is inside of here, too. The time clock system, I interact with that every week. So I'm in and out of the system every day. I'm at night approving POs in that system. I'm approving the invoices as they come through. We're also submitting any of the claims...
Every department head does a lot of that. I'm saying, what, like, what expertise? This is a specialized, a specialized deal. What expertise do you have, other than being in the systems, that every department head does exactly some of the stuff that you just talked about, the POs and issue? I mean, I'm saying, you're telling me that you can analyze based on your knowledge or Dale's knowledge or Iday's knowledge, that y'all know enough about IT to make a technical discussion, a technical recommendation on this without having outside expertise to come in and do this? Which is what I'm recommending, is we hire someone that has like, that's like an IT company that would be able to come in and analyze these two things? That would be better than, with all due respect, I mean...
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not saying that that's an idea that I'm against getting. What I'm just telling you is that we brought the experience that we had, like we always do to these things. And based on what we're seeing and what our interaction is with that software, this is the position that your county auditor, your IT director, your purchasing agent, and Iday all agreed was the best option for the county. And so that's the recommendation we have, and the court can decide to go with that or not go with it, but it doesn't change the recommendation that we have.
And there's a four-point difference in the scoring, right? Four-point difference? Okay, so 99 for one and 95 for the other, and a $4 million difference? Okay, I just want to make sure, that's a pretty, that's a pretty big ask to make to someone who spent four extra million bucks for four-point spread.
Commissioner, I need to make it clear that I don't work solo. I have consulted, I use a pretty hefty global consulting company that is totally unbiased because they don't sell products, and...
Do you have a report from them?
I can get one. I actually have a blueprint from them on implementing an ERP system that's more detailed than the bid specs even did.
I would have thought that might have been part of the backup, considering you know how controversial this was when we did this before, that everybody was so concerned about price.
Would you like, we can have him bring that back. What we can do is hold on this, okay, for, till the 26?
Yes, I'd like to.
But I'd love you, because those reports are probably thorough, why don't you go ahead and get those to us, you know, as soon as you can? And then we'll put this back on the agenda on the 26, and that'll give more opportunity. Again, I join with you on the concern of the price, but again, if it's like an asphalt road versus a concrete, they're both, they're both roads, they both get the cars there, but one is going to have a longer duration, a better maintenance, and a better utility long-term. That's what this, I have to be able to rely on our chief information officer. I hear you when you say you want to have that expertise, but look, by good fortune, he's got one. So let's, let's have a motion to table, Commissioner Chesney?
Yeah, I will, but can you also make sure...
Motion in a second.
Well, I can't make it yet, because I got to, I don't want to have discussion.
Okay, go ahead.
Let me just finish, so in this report, they'll be able, they'll analyze all three of these systems, or you can do the two, they'll analyze point by point these different systems, and you can get that to us pretty quickly, because I'm going to then take that to who I use for IT and say, okay, tell me what, poke the holes in it, but I need time to do that. I thought the 26 was just going to be for emergencies, we could be back, I mean, we're going to, I don't want to load this agenda back up either.
Well, okay, then it, I guess, it could wait until...
Please.
The 12th, but I do need to double-check with Michael that that's okay for the, for the bid process.
Plus, we still don't have a funding source, so we need some more time on that anyway. I don't, I just don't like, I don't like approving things conditionally, whether I like them or not, when there's no funding source. I mean, that's where I'm back to, too, is I'm as uncomfortable even making a contingent motion, knowing we don't have a funding source as we sit here today, plus my concern over the price. So I'm uncomfortable on more than one front in passing anything today. So I appreciate your offer to table, I'm going to take that up, but I really need a point-by-point analysis on these two companies, what the major difference is. Let me read those things, let me take them to the people I work with, and let me see what I come back with, if that's, and if you can get that to me as quickly as you've got it.
And I don't mean to be picky here, but please let us know who you do use, because if who you use is not a global software firm also experienced in this type of ERP software, it won't do you any good. It'd be nice to make sure that you also, who you're analyzing this with, would give you, you know, the same type of, has the same type of expertise in this field. Because there, you know, we use IT like we use the word internet in Zoom. I mean, there's, there's so many different components to IT. I just want to make sure that whoever you use does have a background in ERP software, because this is a very particular field. And I welcome any expertise that you have, that you would want to share with the court, but I think it's important that we know that if your expert says something, you know, says something like X or Y or Z, that...
I'd be happy to share, Judge.
You know, if you don't mind.
No, I don't know.
That way, Darryl can say, hey, you know, in fairness, your guy doesn't have...
Absolutely happy to share.
Okay, I think that's fair. In other words, let's make a written report comparable to a written report.
Sure.
Okay.
Infotech is the company that I use.
Infotech, okay.
Yeah, they are global.
And who do you use, Commissioner Chesney?
They are global, and I was talking to an ERP expert that has, actually has a whole team within Infotech.
Okay, good.
To consult with this.
Good, okay.
And I will work with Michael also. This is a bidding process, a little new for me, and I know there's, you know, can't say's and do's and things like that, but I'm going to talk to him about how much we can discuss references in open session as well.
Understood.
Okay.
Okay, but again, Michael, no real concern here, price-wise, changing if we wait till the 12th? Or yes, that's a concern?
Well, I mean, at the point we arrive at a decision, I'll have to reapproach the vendor that provided their pricing, because the pricing was based at the prices at the time that they submitted the bid, and they're good for a certain amount of time.
And what is that time?
And so we believe it was 60 days, and we're already going, we've discussed this before.
I know, this is the second time we punt.
We're coming back, and now we're punting about a month out, so we're going to be up against it probably at that point.
I understand. That's my concern. That was why I said the 26, if you could get this information. I mean, at some point, we'll just need to take a vote, is what I'm saying. I'm going to yield to the fact that we're understanding now the differences are not just price from your perspective as an information officer.
Right, and let's just say that we produce the results that are satisfactory to the court to say, yes, we like the system, but we still have the issue of funding. And that funding, depending on when that gets settled or figured out, will determine if the thing flies at all. I mean, because we have to have the funding in place, or I can't even do this.
Yeah, Judge, I'm okay with getting the funding thing back on the 26.
I appreciate that.
I just would rather...
That's fine.
Okay.
That's fine.
Okay, thank you for that.
Okay, thank you. So officially, Commissioner, you're, I'll take your...
Motion to table till...
In a second.
We have a motion on the floor right now.
Oh, yours. You made a motion.
You're right, I did.
You're right.
I have the floor. I get to think before I... I think the will of the court is to provide additional information. It's hard for me to argue with that, although I must caution that we must make a decision in a timely manner. So I'll withdraw my motion, and I'll ask Commissioner Modis if he would consider withdrawing the second. All right, we are withdrawn. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Oppose, same sign. Okay, Commissioner's got a motion to table.
Motion to table.
Will you renew? There's a second.
October 12.
All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye.
I guess, does the motion need to include providing the court with that report? I don't...
I think the directive is done.
That's, okay, fair.
Okay. We are now going to yield to executive session, given that I gave a 2 o'clock time and a lot of those folks are already in the room. I'm giving public notice this time that we're, Commissioner's court may elect to go into executive session, and we do. And it's authorized by provisions of the Open Meetings Act, Chapter 551 of the Texas Government Code. It's also in accordance with the government codes, burned in sections 551, 071, 72, 73, 74, 74, 5768, 687. We're going to go into executive session to consult with attorneys with, regarding matters relating to litigation, real property, personnel, termination, county advisory, these are all permissive, and security devices, economic development negotiations, and any other matter that may be discussed in executive session. Upon completion, we'll come back out into open session and take any action as appropriate on items discussed in executive session for the clerk. The time is 2:23 PM. And we'll ask anybody that's not here for...
No, I want everybody else.
For the matters in executive session to please clear the courtroom. If you're online, we'll ask you to go back into a waiting room. By 10:00 PM, and I'd like to have a motion to stay till, you know, maybe 15 more minutes. All right, and I'll second it, and all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Okay, so we're going to go back on the record after, I mean, we are back on the record after executive session, and we do have some action items to take. First, on item number 15, the funding of public school communications projects from the American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA funds. We're going to put together some funding here, and this will be for eligible projects inside public schools and for community safety. And so the amount of money that I wish to put forth at this time from my county judge's allocation is $100,000. And then there might be some others that might want to join in at this time. And then on next court, for October 12, what we can do is provide a little bit more detail as to which schools will be benefiting.
Is that a motion?
Yeah, just, do you want to put some more money in?
Yeah, I was going to make mine more specific.
No worries. In that case, I'll do mine for West Oso and Ben Kete at this time, and look forward to working with others in the future.
Second, Judge.
Thank you, and all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Commissioner Chesney?
Judge, I would like to set aside $225,000 of the ARPA funding that I've been provided for the Flower Bluff, Port Aransas, Seashore, and London school districts at this point for the same...
Technology?
Safety technology. I'll leave it at that.
Thank you. I'll second your motion, and all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign. They will be emailing you two items I sent to her. I did send them individually to you, Commissioner, just because I had them handy.
Thank you.
Okay. Another item that we have is item number...
13.
Thank you. 13. It's the Second Amendment with forensic pathology staffing. And is there a motion to approve such Second Amendment at this time? Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Hernandez. Okay, any further discussion? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. On item, let me find the corresponding. It's the ratification of council. Yes, it's item 23.
18, Judge, I think.
Yes, I'm going to come back to it. Item 23. I just happen to have this one. I was going by the executive session and order, so that one corresponds to 23. It's item C on executive, but item 23. It's the ratification of the engagement letter with the law firm of Hilliard Martinez-Gonzalez for attorney John Martinez to represent Nueces County.
So moved, Judge.
Thank you. And then a second, please. Second from Gonzalez. And all those, any discussion? Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Okay. And then going into item number 18, the motion is to extend for 30 more days to, for completion of work on the Padre Bahi Park matter. Is there, for Mr. Ernest Woultering? Is there a second?
Well, is it extended?
Or sooner?
Yeah, or sooner.
Or sooner.
With the understanding that after that, we can talk about termination.
Exactly. All right.
What was your, I couldn't hear you.
Motion is a 30-day or sooner, depending on his finishing, his work. And then after that 30 days, we would take formal action to...
Disengage or whatever.
Disengage or complete services.
So we're going to have to come back in 30 days?
Well...
Or you want it to stay after 30 days? I don't know what...
No, because 30 days, we'll be back.
We'll be back on October 12. So it's within the 30 days, in case there should be something that comes up. All right, and all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Commissioner Gonzalez? All right, and then we have another one?
I'm going to no on that.
All right, a no. Is there anything on item 19, forgive me, Jenny, that I have to do or not? No, nothing, right? Okay. And then on item, can you tell me the next one? Let's see, hold on one second.
What's 19?
Oh, on Hazel Baysmore Dog Park, there's a motion to continue negotiations. Is there a second on that matter? It's Hazel Baysmore Dog Park and ABM, it's item 21, motion to continue negotiations, for the county attorney, that is, to continue negotiations.
Second.
Okay, any other discussion?
No.
Okay, well, let me just say, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye?
No.
Okay, oppose, same sign? All right. And then what about item number 20?
Judge, I would make a motion that the county manager confers with the HR director as directed.
Motion, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Okay, no. All right, I don't have any more. How about...
Do it in 19.
How about you guys?
19? Did we vote on 19?
She said no action.
Yeah, we're good.
Yeah, there's no...
There's no...
Okay, because they're going to go automatically.
Right. No action needed there. So 19 is just sort of a pass, I guess, Lorenzo. No action required after consultation. I don't have any more, but I'm going to ask you guys to please look. What about any, tell me?
Auditor stuff.
The auditor stuff, absolutely. Right, but nothing else on the main agenda? Okay. So we have a financial report and a P-card report and a change order. I was going to say, in the interest of time, can you do the change order first so that you can finish with that business piece of it?
Yes, Your Honor.
And then work backwards, so to speak?
We're getting a little bit towards the end of fiscal year. You won't be seeing very many more of these for this fiscal year until we get to our last, once this is September, you'll probably have one more. So these are getting kind of larger. Some of the accounts are moving over time because of the vacancies they have. These are the departments, the juveniles, sheriff, and others are moving some costs. The funds are in these, the accounts are available to move the funds. The funds are in these accounts that are available to move the funds. My staff and I have gone through the accounts and didn't see anything abnormal. I'll be glad to answer any questions you might have. Otherwise, I'll submit budget change order twenty-one for your acceptance and approval.
All right, is there a motion to accept this change order?
So moved.
And I'll second, and all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. How about the P-card report for the month?
P-card report is a very, very large report, it's, it's got many transactions in there as we, as we see, it's very lengthy, it's, it's three, three-point-two million dollars for the nine-month period. It's about where we normally are, as we've done in the past, and the back, towards the back of that item, we show you any purchases that were done through the P-card that has anything to do with mills, and we attach to all the receipts. I'll be glad to answer any questions you might have for the P-card report as submitted for the month of June twenty-eighth.
Are there any questions of Dale on, are there any questions of Dale on this?
No.
Okay. In that case, I'd like a motion to approve this monthly report for June twenty-twenty-two.
P-card report.
P-card report, forgive me.
So moved.
All right, I'll second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, post same sign. I was just gonna ask you, how long, what do you need? I don't wanna gloss over it, but we're gonna meet on the twenty-sixth. Do you need a lot of time, or is this something you could go through swiftly?
I can go through it pretty swiftly.
All right, we'll take it then. So, financials for June of twenty-twenty-two.
The key items on page four and five is just your, your normal fund balances for all the funds. If you look on the charts on page eight and nine, you'll see where we're, we're about where we expected to be. We expected to be close to where we were last fiscal year at twenty-four, twenty-five million dollars. We'd like to have been more, but some of our loss of revenue were the points. On page ten and page eleven, show you our self-insurance fund. Right now, you see our group health and funds as a significant fund balance coming in, because we just transferred one-point-six million dollars to it, so it'll be going up from eight-hundred-eight thousand dollars to over two million dollars, so that's very, very important to do. And I was gonna go through the expenses, but there's only a few small departments that are over budget, but we already have budget change orders to fix those items on page sixty-one. You'll see where our remaining budget for the fiscal year is, is we, at thirty-six-point-two percent for the fiscal year, as this report is at twenty-five percent. So, we're about where we expected to be, around eleven percent budget, which is where we would like to be. Now, our reporting software has some errors in it, so the diabetes reports and the, our T A phone reports are incorrect. I apologize for that, we'll make sure we get that corrected before. I know this was a very quick report, I hope you had the chance to review and read it. I'll be glad to answer any questions. Otherwise, we submit the report for June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-two, for your acceptance.
Are there any questions with regards to this report for Dale?
No, move a sec, I move, acceptance.
Okay, and I'll second, and any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, post same sign.